Welcome to the May 27, 2025 BCC meeting here in the South Annex. Thank you all for being here. It looks like we have a nice full house. Appreciate you taking your time out of your day to come and join us. All the commissioners are present, and if Jason, if you would please come forward and lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Paul wrote to the Church at Ephesus. He said, "Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God that you may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. Therefore, take unto you the whole armor of God that you may be able to withstand in the evil day, and having done all, to stand." Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for your word. Thank you for your truth. Thank you for loving us. I ask that you would help us all as soldiers of the cross, that we would put on the whole armor of God and to stand in faith, believing that you're going to work for us and that you're with us, that you're an ever-present help in time of need. I pray that you would give us wisdom to be able to run this government efficiently and that you would touch every citizen, every commissioner, God, that we would find your willful arc counting and that we would pursue it with everything that's within us. And we just give you all the praise and all the glory for what you're going to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see. Do we have any elected officials out in the audience? I know we have Jim Bagby that is elected in Oakley County. Thank you for being here. Anyone else? Seeing none, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to recognize Destin's county, city administrator Larry Jones. He was our longtime administrator, a former county commissioner, and thank you for coming, Larry.
Hello, Larry. Nice to see you. Okay, wonderful. We've got a nice crowd. Any public comments? If there's going to be anything, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead of myself. We need to consider any additions or deletions. Does anyone have any additions or deletions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a few changes that we would like to request. Under citizen request, item number 25, Mr. Vinker, who wanted to speak about youth sports facilities, cannot be here today, so I believe he'll be joining us at the next meeting. So we would remove that. Item number 26 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign Amendment Number 1 to Contract 2433, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal with Waste Management, Inc. Mr. Atkinson and Waste Management's attorneys are still in negotiations and having discussions, and I believe they have a meeting tomorrow.
That's correct. He was in, unfortunately, he was in depositions all day today when we were in board meetings, so we will not be having an action item on that Amendment Number 1 at this time.
Which number was that?
That is 26.
Twenty-six.
Item 26. Also, item number 28 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a change order to a task order to DRMP, that number being 2102, for the Architectural and Civil Engineering Services to implement changes at the maintenance facility at Eagle Springs. We've taken a look at that. We believe that we can effect that change in the House, so we would request removal of that. Item 29 is a discussion regarding CASA Magnolia rec plate fees, and we are moving that to fall under Chair Jones.
I want to undermine you with a motion.
And those are our changes.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove 26, 25, 26, 28, and move 29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, any public comment? If you're not going to be here when something's going to be brought up during this meeting and you'd like to speak to it, now is the time to come forward. Is there anyone that would like to speak to any item that they will not be here for? Okay, seeing none? Any, pardon me? Okay. Items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we do have some recognition of employees.
Yes. Okay, I did jump ahead, didn't I? Okay. I would like to read one first and then pass it forward to you, if that's all right with you.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I know that we've already recognized Bobby Hope, who has been a deputy that has been in this courtroom and the courtroom in Defuniac Springs, and he's been with us for way longer than I have. I believe he's been with us for 17 years. So Bobby, I would, you look different when you're in civilian clothes. I would like to take an opportunity to read this plaque. Bobby Hope, "The Walton County Board of County Commissioners extends its heartfelt appreciation for your unwavering dedication to maintaining order at our meetings. Your steadfast commitment and courage have made a lasting impact. With deep gratitude, we celebrate your legacy and 17 years of service to the Walton County Board of County Commissioners." And thank you very much for all that you've done for us. We really appreciate it, and we already miss you. But we have a few more awards that we're going to announce, and then we'd like to take a picture with each one of you. Instead of us jumping up and down, we'll do it all at one time, okay? Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first recognition would be for Employee of the Quarter. I don't know if Mr. Franksman is here with Ms. Fain, but if so, I would have them approach the podium. I will briefly say that we went through a transition in leadership in the Human Resources Department during that period of time, and in the absence of a department director, Ms. Fain stepped up and carried the weight of the department. She went out of her way to coach, teach, mentor. She also modified her schedule and devoted extra time to the job to get us through. So I'll ask Mr. Franksman to make some comments about his employee, and we just want to recognize her and say thank you for your job well done.
Thank you, sir. Terry Franksman with Human Resources. Again, I'll shadow the examples that Stan just provided to everybody. She's pretty much carried the staff. There was issues prior to my coming on board. She kept the department running. She made sure that work was processed in a timely manner. She followed up with all the departments, and I've gotten nothing but accolades from all the directors on what a great job she did. And I think that just carried over to make her recommended for the Employee of the Quarter.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything?
Didn't really have anything prepared, but yes, you know, at the moment that we needed it the most, I felt like our team deserved. Everybody deserves this award in our department. We all worked really, really hard with the unprecedented times that we were in, and I couldn't have done it without any of their support. They all did very, very well throughout the process, so I appreciate them all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Terry.
Next, we have, and I'll just mention her name and what she's been recognized for, but she was unable to be here, so we will recognize her and present the plaque at the next meeting, but that would be Jennifer Anderson, and she is our Assistant County Veteran Services Officer, and she's being recognized or was chosen as Exceptional Customer Service Quarter One winner.
She's been with the county a very long time, and she's been excellent.
Twenty-two years, I believe, she told us.
Excellent. Excellent employee. Thank you.
So we'll give her her plaque at the next meeting.
Okay.
Next, we have Dave Sale. Dave Sale has been with the county for 22 years. He first began his career in TDC Beach Operations. Then he moved up to administration and filled the role of Risk and Training Manager, or Risk and Safety Manager, and most recently he has worked in facilities maintenance as a project manager. And so we want to say thank you to Dave for his service, and we'll allow his supervisor, Mr. Brad Alford, to make a few comments.
Well, Dave, like he said, has been with us for 22 years, and that's a major accomplishment. And I've had the honor of working with him for the last two years, and he's been a joy to work around. So in this well-deserved next chapter of your life, we wish you nothing but the best, and we love you.
Thank you. Don't go too far. We're going to come down there for pictures. Okay. I think there's one more.
And last is recognizing the retirement of Mr. Matt Carpenter as the Planning Director. I have a plaque here that we will give to Mr. Carpenter. It's in grateful recognition of 17 and a half years of dedicated service to the growth and betterment of Walton County. Your professionalism and contributions to our community will be remembered and appreciated with sincere gratitude of Walton County Board of County Commissioners.
And commissioners, if I could, you know I just can't come up here and not say something. I truly have enjoyed this last 18 years in service to my county and this board. We've done some tremendous work. We've had some trying times. Oil spill, Great Recession, and a whole host of other things. But I'm quite proud of the legacy that we build in this county. The tax roll we put together in the last 15 years is going to serve this county for a long, long time. I am so proud of the staff in this planning department. They work tremendously hard every day for our citizens, and they've supported me for all of these years, and for that, I'm truly grateful. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate everything that you have done for everybody here, all these people, including Larry Jones who fell from the hallway. You were here when he was here and long before that, too. So thank you very much for everything that you have done.
Thank you.
So well-deserved, and we look forward to having you pop in here every now and again, too. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. I knew I was going to do it. I left my glasses. Okay, I believe that we are at citizens' request now, and Ryan Memes from the Walton County Health Department, if you would like to come forward.
Hello.
Hello. Name Ryan Memes with the Department of Health in Walton County. Here to talk a little bit about Revive Awareness Day, and there's a proclamation for review and hopefully approval. Revive Awareness Day was put into effect by Governor DeSantis last year in 2024, and it is to kind of talk about the importance of naloxone. Naloxone, or also known as Narcan, is a life-saving tool that is available for individuals that are experiencing overdose, specifically for opioids. And I have a couple partners here as well, but I'm here representing, of course, Holly Holt, our fearless leader that's on scheduled leave. The proclamation just kind of shows that June 6, next Friday, is Revive Awareness Day. We're going to be having a couple of events in North Walton Doctors Hospital and as well as South Walton Fire District to train the community on how to implement and use naloxone or Narcan as a tool. It's very easy. It's a spray that goes into a nasal, and if someone is experiencing opioid overdose or reverse the effects of the overdose, it might take a couple of the sprays, but this is what it typically looks like, a box. And each box, it has two nasal sprays in there, and you would just kind of spray it up. Somebody's nose that is unresponsive, and you're kind of suspect an overdose or not sure. It won't do anything to, if they're not experiencing overdose, it won't have any negative effects on them as well. So having some training in advance next Friday, and we're just trying to observe this June 6 as Revive Awareness Day.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. What an important cause. So hopefully we'll save lives, and wonderful. Thank you very much. Did you want to read?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Do you want to read it before, or, yes, please?
Whereas Section 683, 3342 Florida statutes authorizes the governor to issue an annual proclamation designated June 6 as Revive Awareness Day to champion the widespread availability of opioid antagonists, and whereas Revive Awareness Day encourages community-based organizations to host events aimed at raising awareness regarding opioid overdoses and highlighting the accessibility and safe utilization of opioid antagonists to counteract the effects of opioids, and whereas in 2023, in a historic action, the United States Food and Drug Administration approved naloxone nasal spray as the first over-the-counter opioid antagonist, and whereas Walton County had 159 suspected overdoses in 2024, and whereas Walton County encourages residents to engage with community-based organizations to increase awareness regarding the hazards of opioids and the accessibility of naloxone as a mechanism for promptly reversing their effects, and whereas as an initiative of the Walton County Overdose Prevention Task Force, the public can receive naloxone for no cost at Lakeview Center, Walton County, Florida, Department of Health in Walton County, or North Walton Doctors Hospital. Now therefore be proclaimed by the BCC of Walton County, Florida, that on June 6, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Revive Awareness Day.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all the important work that you're doing. Thank you. Okay, I believe the next, under citizens' request, is not available. Is that correct?
People won't be with us today, so that takes us to item 26, which was deleted until the next meeting. Item number 27 is a request to approve an op-
Request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution establishing a county-approved allowance for residential container service at a rate of $17.49 per residential unit. Want to ask Mr. McKee to come up to get into the details, but broadly speaking, back in 2014, Mr. Jones, wherever he's at, was instrumental in this, and at the time, it was agreed upon that we allow multifamily condominium-type units and allowance of up to $11.93 per unit. And that's the last time that was changed, well, since its implementation, it's not been changed. We've now had a rate increase in Area A that is $17.49 per household, and so this request is to raise that for multifamily as well.
And this is done by resolution, so it will be separate than standalone amendment. I do recommend we go ahead and proceed with bringing this into conformity across the hall. Obviously, there's no functional difference, as we well established, between a residence if it's a condo versus a single-family residence, standalone home. So we do need a motion, and Mr. McKee certainly can add any questions, or answer any questions if you have any.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need to read this resolution?
We do not have to read the resolution. The record.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Ms. Morano?
Barbara Morano, I'd like to know when this goes into effect, and then will Waste Management contact either property managers of the condos of the increase in the amount?
Goes into effect immediately, and that's what they should do if they have standalone agreements with them, yes.
Okay. I also want to thank you for doing this. I'm president of the Hidden Lake Condominiums, and it was thanks to Mr. McKee, but also my knowledge, we went for almost a year without getting any credit. So it's important to find out new condos that have gotten on board as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harris?
Suzanne Harris. Clay. No, there you are. Does this include trash pickup?
This includes everything that residential rate gets. You get the same service as a condo that a single-family residence gets.
Okay, so if the single-family residents get trash and garbage, then the condos get trash and garbage.
And that is something we are working on as part of our overall clarifications in the contract to make sure that pickup days are scheduled. Obviously, I don't think you or anyone else wants to haul mattresses out of the corner of Scenic 98, but the same level of service should be provided in an agreed-upon fashion. So yes, ma'am, that's what, now, this resolution doesn't address that, but that is part of the contract that is a revision we are bringing forward for the board, and you'll be seeing it hopefully at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Do we have like some type of mathematical regression that shows what this service actually costs? Like, because to me, it's just an arbitrary, it's an arbitrary number, and I'm just trying to understand.
Well, it's part of the gross rate bid process you went through when you awarded the solid waste contract, but I'll let Mr. McKee talk about the calculation.
Billy McKee, for the record. Commissioner, there was, back in 2013, 2014, when this was originally put together, they did quite a bit of analysis utilizing census data and the, it's a, the data on the cost per cubic yard and conversions, there's a lot of math involved with it. And then also, they looked at the current rate at the time, which was kind of like Area A now. They utilized all of those data sets for how to charge for it, because it's a little unusual. Actually, they did factor out bulk waste, C and D, yard waste, those kind of things that typically are not collected in a multifamily residential complex. Usually, those are, you know, done through a landscape service or some other type of service. Kind of be unusual to have individual piles of yard waste piled up, up and down in the parking lot. I think the same would go for piles of bulk waste to be piled up in a parking lot. Contrarily, you know, if you had one out on the street, you can place it out by your mailbox. So there is some kind of configuration differences in the collection process that has to be taken into account, but the money, again, that was done through various mathematical calculations based on cubic yardage that's generated. There's a poundage. I think the United States is about 4.4 pounds per person per day is what they generate in municipal solid waste. I think the state of Florida at the time, the calculation on average is about 10.5 pounds per person per day or per household. So that's the type of thing they utilize, and then they did a conversion factor on the cubic yardage to poundage, and I think it was 225 pounds per cubic yard, which is kind of light, because the cubic yard's a pretty good little bit. But, you know, if it's just loose garbage, it's not compact, and so it's fairly light.
And Mr. McKee, the $17.49 is what we are already paying if you have a single-family standalone dwelling.
Correct.
So what we're doing, all we're doing is matching those two rates up. They were done at separate times originally, so we're just making sure that anybody that is treated as a resident- is treated as a resident or single-family resident who is entitled to this, based on the county's passing of small county surtax and the board's power obligation, everybody's getting the same rate.
It does bring some parity to what the folks on the street are getting versus what the container service folks, which typically would be a complex with more single-family units concentrated in the area. We think it would be fair to increase that to match.
Well, we need to because we've already said they constitute that. There's no legal basis to distinguish them.
Any further questions? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, 28 was already removed. 29 is being moved under my name, so we're at 30, which is an update on the short-term rental program. Josh?
Good afternoon, board. Joshua Allen, Tourism Liberty Lead Coordinator for Walton County. Thank you, Ms. Johns, for inviting me in to provide a brief update for the program. Happy to announce we are at 69, or 59, or 79%, excuse me, 79% compliance rate and climbing daily. We've actually added about 650 new properties since January, so we're getting more and more compliance as we're going along. We will be fiscally solvent for this upcoming FY, so the rate increase has helped bring us back into fiscal solvency. Some big coordination efforts were conducted this spring break with the Walton County Sheriff's Office to provide them with the local responsible party contact info, which helped them be able to respond to issues at some of the vacation rental properties. And from anecdotal evidence from Deputy Wendell, they've had a higher, they had a higher rate of expulsion this year due to people not following the rules that they were required to follow. Additionally, we were able to finally hire our two additional techs. So we're churning through applications at an increasing rate. The goal is to get up to close to 60 per day. And we just took our first set of non-compliant properties to magistrate last week. And these were properties that had not, like, we've sent them upwards of five notices over the past three years and they failed to respond, so they kind of forced our hand on it. We do have additional properties that we will be taking before the magistrate next month, towards the end of July. And just to give you a kind of where we're going, we do have a land development code update. After we went to the planning commission initially, we did some more refinement of it. So we have to go back to them first. We're scheduled to go back to them, I believe, second week of June. And then I have meetings with, I believe, you, Ms. Johnson, you, Mr. Glywell, Mr. Anderson, to go over the specifics of these updates and how we see the program in itself moving forward and then bring it to the board later in June as well. Pending any of your questions?
Well, first of all, I'm glad that you've finally got a couple of people hired to help because it is a load, I'm sure. But a couple of questions. Is it, is the process that the citizen, the applicant would use, is that more user-friendly than it has been in the past? Do you know?
Yes. And what we're doing is part of the, part of the process and part of the revision process. And we've been doing this in an iterative manner, is trying to identify, hey, where are the sticking points? What can we reduce in terms of like the requirements on the actual applicant in order to reduce the required time in order to put in application and for us to review? We've scaled stuff down and we're planning on even more refinements in the future and I'd be happy to get into those when we meet one-on-one.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Another question. What about the folks that are renting that have not gone through the process? What is the result for them if they start renting short-term without applying?
Sure. And it's the, it's the same across the board. Let me talk from a new property owner, right? A new property owner, they receive as part of their packet with the property appraiser information based upon, you know, from the TDT and from my office, saying, hey, if you're going to rent, you know, you have to have, you know, these things in line in order to rent. When we notice that they haven't, then of course, we issue them a informational letter saying, you know, you need to register, you need to comply with the law. If we continue to be disregarded or not listened to, then we then turn it over to code compliance because it is then a code issue. We try to give every single property owner as many chances as possible to get right before we send it to code because we just want compliance. We'd rather have compliance than having to take them through a legal process.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
First of all, good job because when you came in last time, the numbers were way lower than 79%. And I know you and your staff have worked extremely hard on that.
Yes, sir.
But I got a question in the sense of, is it Airbnbs and individuals that were not getting signed up? Or is there some rental companies that have worked in this area for years and are not signing up? Is it a combination of all of them?
Yes, sir. It's all the above. And I can go into specifics when we meet one-on-one and provide you some of those details.
Okay. All right. I was just curious. All right. Thank you, Josh.
Yes, sir. But I will say, you know, I thank the industry in terms of like the management companies for helping bring up these compliance numbers in the past few months since the last time I spoke to the board. We're there, we're getting there, even better. And as part of that, and we'll discuss this more one-on-one, but we think that there should be a reduction in the price point as, you know, we originally discussed when I requested the increase. I believe that we can do, we can achieve a reduction per unit as well as a better proportionate share in terms of pricing per unit as we move forward. But I'd be happy to get into those details when we meet one-on-one.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. TDC, stand.
Yeah, Mr. Algren, come on up. And I believe we have some representatives here from PGA. You want to introduce Matt and then call upon Mr. Day.
Chair Commissioners, Matt Algren, Walton County Tourism. Pleasure to be here today. As most of you are aware, we've been having these conversations with the PGA for quite a few months now regarding the opportunity to host a fall tournament in Walton County. So, you know, this can look a lot of different ways. I think that's part of the conversation we're going to have in terms of, you know, what we want a tournament to look like, if that is in fact something the board is interested in doing. This has been before the TDC Council. They put forth a unanimous recommendation at their April 1st meeting to move this forward to the BCC for consideration. So, just kind of a little quick frame there for you. But that said, I'd like to introduce Charles Hamrick from the PGA Tour to come up. He's going to share a presentation with you all and be able to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Yes, ma'am.
Charles Hamrick with the PGA Tour. Commissioners, thank you for the time. Before I go any farther, I just want to thank each one of you for the time that you've given me. Not just you guys, but the team from the TDC. I know I see a lot of you in the audience today, the staff, that's been incredible. I've learned more about Walton County in the last number of months, obviously than I did when I started, but I've learned a lot of things. I'm honored to be here on a day when you're honoring so many different people, taking photos with them. Congratulations to all the honorees that are here. It's, I've learned one thing, that you guys all care a lot about your county in very different ways, but you all create something that is really special. I've seen this county grow since times I've been vacationing here with my own family to what I've learned about the things that you're looking for in the future. So, it's an honor for me to stand here and talk to you guys about it. Seeing a room full of people continues to tell me that this county has something special. So hopefully you guys don't take that for granted, but you guys have done an incredible job in making it what it is today. So thank you before I go any further. So I want to take some time today to talk a little bit about what we're here to present from a title sponsorship standpoint and bringing an event in the fall to Walton County. There's a couple of different things that we'll go through. One is just golf and tourism as a whole. We want to understand the objectives of Walton County, how that impacts people that don't live here, how we get more people here promoting it to the audience that we want to promote to. How does that impact the resident of Walton County? What do you provide to them as a result of having this golf tournament here? And then the impact as a whole to Walton County, right? So we'll talk through all those things as we go. When we talk about objectives, I'm stealing a phrase from Commissioner Drake, who was talking about a different topic in one of our early commissioner, in one of our early TDC meetings. He said, "We want to do everything we can to put our best face forward to the world." I'm probably going to use that in different presentations, so appreciate that. But we've, we want to do that here. I think there's an opportunity to do that using the PGA Tour platform. Think of it as a white sheet of paper, right? We want to put something in front of you guys and work with you to build something special here in Walton County that can look and feel like Walton County. It's going to be a PGA Tour golf tournament, but I don't want it to feel like a PGA Tour golf tournament. I want it to feel like Walton County. And that's where Mike and his team, who we'll talk more about later, will help us do that alongside working with the staff and with your team to understand what that looks like across all of Walton County. This should drive interest to visitors, it should drive interest to people that don't know about Walton County, a golf audience that may not know about it, getting more and more people, a new type of audience here to Walton County. It should be helping all of the county. We should not be focused on a certain area. Just where the golf course is being played makes no difference. We want to make sure we incorporate different areas of the county. That's another thing I've learned about here, especially in the last, my last trip here when I visited with each one of the commissioners in their own office, I learned how spread out this was and how many miles I put on my rental car when I was here. But I appreciate the time and effort in getting able to see all the different areas of the county and ways that we can incorporate it as we're here. We'll provide unique experiences to all of the guests in Walton County, all of the residents, whether it's here in the south or in Dufuniac or in Freeport or anywhere that we've visited, right? There's this areas, there's so many great people here and I'll make sure they all have a hand in this and can be impacted by it. And then delivering that economic impact and the value back to the county as a whole. When we look at, I'm going to thank Downs and St. Germain. I don't know if there's a representative here from that group, but they've been great providing data to Matt and his team to help them make decisions. When I look at the audience that is visiting, the typical Walton County visitor, you can see the numbers here, right? 53 years old, average income of north of $150,000, six nights stay, and they spend a lot when they travel. I gave a challenge to our team to understand what the PGA Tour audience looks like and how close it was to that. I felt like it was close and it was a lot closer than I thought it was. You can see here, we're 59 years old, household income about the same. We stay a little bit longer and then we spend a lot on domestic vacations when we travel as well. So it's an audience that makes a lot of sense from who you're trying to attract from Walton County as a whole. And our audience, you might think, okay, well, they just play golf when they go places. Now, they do like playing golf. But the other thing that I looked at that Downs and St. Germain pulled together for the, for you guys and for Matt's team was what do, what do people do when they come to Walton County? What are some of the big activities that they do? So here's a number of the ones that were pulled together there. And when I look at the PGA Tour audience as well, they do a lot of these things. You can see the biggest number here is golf and tennis. Obviously, we play golf. That's a no-brainer. But when they're here, whether it's families or other times of day that they're doing things, they are doing a lot of the things that your team offers. It's not just the beach, right? It's hiking, it's spas, it's bike, it's biking, it's all sorts of things that this county has. The golf tourism as a whole, this is from the National Golf Foundation, provides a lot of revenue to the markets that they're in. So we want to make sure we tap into that to bring here to Walton County. You're attracting some of those people already just by the work of Matt and his team, but we want to make sure we can expand that to the pure golf audience that's watching the golf channel, that understands from the PGA Tour that's here and using the power of our brand in association with the beautiful land that you have here and the beautiful county you have to drive more people here. So when we think about the partnership opportunity as a whole, we really land on a few different topics that we'll walk through. One's the onsite brand exposure. And we use this to really, like I said earlier, a white sheet of paper, making sure that we are working with you guys to build something special here. What does it look like onsite? I want a fan to walk onsite that may not have ever been to Walton County and know everything that Walton County has to offer as a result of being here at a golf tournament. You'll never hear our team really talk about as a golf tournament, we call them events, right? And you guys know events better than anybody, right? I know you have a lot of events around the county throughout the year. That's what this is. We want to make sure we're building something. We use the extensive media that's attached to it to tell that story. And we also use those experiences onsite and the community impact. So I'll talk through each one of those very briefly, just to show you how they all work together. The onsite brand exposure, right? We're building this so when it shows up in the broadcast, it shows up in a way that highlights what you guys wanted to highlight. It's not highlighting, it is highlighting golfers in the play, right? But it's also highlighting what the county cares about, whether that's Eagle Springs Golf Course or hiking and trails or a beach project that you're working on, right? We can, we can work together to figure out how you want to highlight in the broadcast. And I've got an example of that in here is where, which will show you. We use the media, we understand we have a big media platform, whether that's digital, social or golf channel focused, and the attraction that comes from local media news outlets that are talking about it. It's not just people we have control over, but it's people that want to understand the sports landscape, right? The PGA Tour brand brings a lot with it and we'll make sure we use that to its fullest. The unique experiences piece, I could provide each of you a packet of the things that are included in a partnership with the PGA Tour. And one of those is hospitality elements, right? Whether that's hospitality on a golf course or pro-ams where you're playing alongside a professional, you guys have access to all of that as title sponsor. And we'd make sure we work with you. Mike and his team have done this with a lot of different organizations to make sure we're using it to the best of your ability. I think of the people that might be thinking about bringing their company to Walton County. Maybe they want to set up shop in Freeport and you want to host them to show them how great the county is. We use hospitality or pro-am team to give you that exclusive time with them, showing it at its best. So there's a lot of different ways to use that and we've got a playbook of how to do that. But, you know, group visits from other corporations, making sure we're driving more interest in people into the county. And I want to keep talking about the impact that it makes, whether it's volunteer hours and beach cleanup or volunteerism at the tournament and the impact that it brings just by bringing people into the county. It's an extremely special platform that we've built. And when you have a county and you work with an organization like yourself that leans in, you've got a baseline and then the county leans in and works with each one of you with your individual districts, with individuals in the crowd here today to really make this something that I can't really put a number on, but it can be extremely impactful, even more so than what we're going to talk about today. I'm going to go back a second. I hit a slide too quickly because I want to set up a video. You can go back to one. Sorry. Thank you. So the, I'm going to show here is just an example of how it could play in the broadcast to understand how you bring some of the different areas to life in different areas of Walton County. Eleven. Yep.
From its sugar white sand and turquoise waters to its crystal clear natural springs, lakes and trails, Walton County on the Amaran Coast is a dream destination for families, outdoor enthusiasts and everyone in between. And while Walton County's beautiful beaches offer limitless opportunities for creating lifelong memories, this week PGA Tour's best step converged on the northwest coast of Florida to create a lasting memory of their own, winning the inaugural Walton County Classic. But that extra ball is a nerve-wracking time of the year, full of storylines and consequence. Can he shoot a 62 with an eagle finish? A win or top finish here can cement a player's place on PGA Tour next year or even ensure the opportunity to compete in next year's signature events. With so much on the line today at the Walton County Classic, you can feel the pressure in the air. Who will rise to the occasion and claim glory? The final round of the Walton County Classic is next.
Very nice. Very nice.
Thank you. Look, our team does an incredible job putting those together, but I'm excited about doing it with you, right? Those are things that we can point to and say, what do you care about putting in there, highlighting certain areas? Just because you see it here on the broadcast, someone thought about that beforehand and when you lean in from each one of you, I think those are things we can create a very special broadcast with. In the video, it talked about the FedEx Cup Fall, right? I just want to make sure everyone understands where this falls in the ecosystem of the PGA Tour and the types of players that are going to be here. When you look at the PGA Tour season, you have the FedEx Cup regular season that runs January through July. It runs into the playoffs. And then the FedEx Cup Fall, in 2024, we changed this, right? It used to just be the fall event where people would come and play and there was, if you won, you got some things out of it, but there was no points, there was not a ton of points accumulation that made that much of an impact on your standing on the PGA Tour. What's happened now is we've put a lot more significance around who's playing in these fields because it can secure their spot on the PGA Tour the following season, right? If you end the season at a certain number of points and you can gather more in the fall, right? You can secure your spot in some of our early signature events and major championships. And you get a lot of these people that are playing and names that you'll recognize because they're trying to get as far up the leaderboard or the points ranking as possible so they can play in some of these big events in the early season. So there's no limit to who can play in this from the number one player in the world to the last person in the field. It's all based on how many points they want, they think they need to accumulate to get into some of those early season events. And when you look at how this plays out and the types of players that are here, you've got some strength of field. This is on average from last year's fall, right? So you've got players in the top ten, in the top thirty, in the top fifty. You've got sixty-one PGA Tour winners in the field on average. So you start to see people that you recognize that have won golf tournaments that are here. These are not nobodies, right? These are big names of the game. You see some of the names here from Max Homa, Ricky Fowler, Ludvig Berg, Wyndham Clark, Stuart Sink, major championship winners, top ten people that are playing in these fields, right? They know the importance of points and how many they need to get to secure themselves on the early part of the season next year. So we've seen a lot of success from the change here and we're really bullish on it moving forward just because of the significance that it's provided. So just want to make sure you guys understand the names that are here, again, household names that you'd recognize. And this will continue, right? The beautiful thing about golf is just because you're the number one player in the world now, that doesn't mean you can't have a bad year. And we want to provide as many opportunities for our guys to play and get as many points as possible. So they're always looking for points, so this is a good opportunity to do that. When we talk about, I'm going to jump back now, when we talk about the share of voice, right? We're much different than the other major sports leagues, right? We want to make sure that we are setting up the onsite experience to when you show up, you know exactly who the major partners of this event are and who it's highlighting. So that shows up in the broadcast as we talked about earlier. And ultimately, what that does is it brings media attention. It brings people hearing Walton County. Our goal is to have the name Walton County or whatever we call the event to show up as much as possible, and that drives media value. That gets people thinking about, where is Walton County? Maybe I should go visit. So on average from our fall events, our title sponsors are receiving eighty-four million dollars of impact just in media value. That's not counting an ad spot, that's not counting anything else. That's just where the name is showing up in the broadcast, where local news is talking about it, maybe an article is written online, social media. Those things all pulled together, Nielsen runs this report for us and has proven that eighty-four million, and this is, these are fall event averages. These are not full PGA Tour season event averages. These are apples-to-apples comparisons from events in the fall. So I want to talk about the tournament week. The other thing I learned from each one of you as I was talking is how important it is to incorporate all of Walton County. The beautiful thing about a golf tournament is how do you do that? This is not a one-day event, right? This is not just a college football game on a Saturday. This is a week-long event where we can incorporate a lot of different things, not just the four days of competition, right? We're going to show up, our players are going to start showing up on Monday. More than likely, they could show up earlier than that, knowing what kind of destination they're coming to. But we know they show up on Monday and they'll be here till Sunday. And that gives us an opportunity to talk about, that gives us an opportunity to build different things throughout the week. We had a lot of good ideas talking to each one of you, some of which we kind of brainstormed, some of which just came up naturally. But when I was here, I got to visit Eagle Springs Golf Course. It's a beautiful property. Again, the impact that you guys have made to that property is special. I've seen videos of what it was before and what it is now, just driving around even just the parking lot, I can see the impact that it's made. And when I hear how many rounds are being played there, it shows that the community really loves it too, especially when I know Commissioner Anderson drives up from the beach to play as well, right? So there's a lot of different people that are coming from all over Walton County to play in that property. That's something we need to be highlighting, right? There's a beautiful piece there. We're thinking about ways to do that, right? Mike and his team, and Mike Harmon's in the audience here, and Mike works for a company called Sport Five. And Sport Five operates golf tournaments across the world. They do a lot of other things, but for the sake of today, we're going to, we'll focus on the golf tournament operation. The beautiful thing about working with a team like Mike is that your staff doesn't need to worry about the operation of the golf tournament, right? Walton County is not running the golf tournament. Sport Five is running the golf tournament with the support of the PGA Tour and with input from the county, right? Input from commissioners to really build it how you want to build it. So when you look at the tournament week, one of the first things Michael want to do is sit down with each one of you and understand what's important and how you build that into a tournament week. When you look at Eagle Springs, let's bring some professionals out to Eagle Springs and have a junior clinic early in the week. Let's get all the kids from that area so they don't have to drive all the way to the beach to see something. Let's bring the tournament to them and have something up at Eagle Springs to highlight the tournament. We'll make sure cameras are there and capture it and highlight it in the broadcast later in the week, right? There's things that we can do throughout the week to do that. I think of high school pro-ams, getting all the high schools and golf teams around the community, right? Incorporating all of your high schools and middle schools and finding ways to get them engaged as well. You've got an incredible art scene here, food scene, right? Incorporating that from an event standpoint, music, there's things, ways to do that on Fridays during the tournament, even when things are happening. I know some of you have visited other golf tournaments and when you go onsite, there's a, there are people watching golf, but there's a whole lot of people that just aren't watching golf. They use it as a time to do other things and we'll make sure we give them an opportunity to use it as an event and highlighting other areas of the community. The other thing I wanted to touch on here, we talked about the food scene, the art show, high schools. Military appreciation is another giant piece here that we can incorporate. There's sustainability efforts that we do across the PGA Tour, right? You know, beach community, that's something that we can focus on. These are all ideas that we would sit down with, throw everything on a paper and understand what to focus on first and what's most important, and then build it over the years. As I talked about earlier, I have a small example of what, if we do something at Eagle Springs, what could that look like in the broadcast? How does that play back into the broadcast? So our team put together something to showcase how that would look.
A look at our leaderboard here at the Walton County Classic as Ricky Fowler continues to lead by one over Max Homa and Adam Hadrick with Maverick McNeely just two shots back. Earlier this week, a kids clinic was held just down the road at historic Eagle Springs Golf Course in Dufuniac Springs, Florida. We get to restore some three million emotional and tournament leader Ricky Fowler were on hand to entertain, teach some instruction, and teach valuable life lessons that sport golf promotes.
It's just fun when you get to see kids who are excited about the game. Brings back memories of us being kids and what we used to do to build happen not here with us. I know as a kid, I was a little soaked to build behind the tour road and their names keep getting better.
And we'll be right back.
Very nice.
Thank you. We use every area of our broadcast to highlight when we can, right? Our fans want to see golf shots, right? But when you have to go to commercial, we use those bumpers in and out to highlight things. I don't want to show just the golf course when we come back in from a commercial. I want to show an area of Walton County. I want to show something impactful that's being done. But you guys have stuff put in front of you every single week, every single day that's doing something different to improve the county. Let's focus on those things, right? This could change every single year. You don't have to highlight the same thing every year. That's the beauty of having a long-term partnership with the tour as well. So continue to think about this as a white sheet of paper. Hopefully, it gets your mind thinking a little bit about how you can build this into something that can be impactful for the entire county, not just where it's played and where the golf ball is teed up. But there's different areas that we can focus on and that's something we would dive in with you immediately once we move forward. We talked about the impact to Walton County. We're here today to talk about title sponsorship for Walton County taking on the major title sponsorship. So I want to talk about where that falls in and the impact that makes as a result. The major investment levels here, you have Walton County being the title sponsor, and this is similar across all of our tournaments. The PGA Tour puts its own investment in from helping with some of the TV rights and the purse as well, so you're not taking on that entire piece. And then Mike and his team go find local sponsors and tournament revenue here locally and in surrounding areas to whether it's hospitality tickets and tickets as a whole to signage on the golf course. The exclusivity comes from you guys having exclusive rights around, you know, he's not going to go find another tourism partner to come onsite as well, right? So there's exclusive nature there, but finding as many partners to partake here. So the give-back at the end of the day, right? Proceeds are distributed to local charities and the economic impact that's made in the county. So when we pay the purse, we pay the players, the staff, we build everything, right? The net proceeds at the end of the day are going back into the, we want to push them back into the local county, right? So that could go into charities that you guys help direct, right? We don't have a specific charity that we say this is where it has to go. We want to sit down with you and understand what that looks like. Same thing I said earlier, that could change every single year, making sure that, you know, whether you want to decide where it goes or we work with Matt and his team to do that or we work with individuals in the community, right? It could be a bunch of different charities. We've seen people that do just one, think of the FedEx St. Jude Classic, which everything goes to St. Jude. And then you have other organizations that may give it to thousands of charities at smaller numbers, right? So a lot of different ways we can look into that, but there's ways to impact the 501(c)(3) is in your area to really make an impact that way as well. We talk about the economic impact and who's coming. I know people like to talk about room nights. I'm not going to take a guess at the fan room nights, but who I know I have control over and who's coming, right? We did the math on players, caddies, families, staff, tournament staff, PGA Tour staff, rules officials, people that we know are here. Before a single fan shows up, right? This starts to accumulate twenty-eight hundred room nights just in the area. So then you start thinking about fans and bringing those on, that number just continues to grow. When you think about where are these people staying, right? We want to make sure that we're promoting that they're staying here in Walton County. All of the promotion from Matt's team, from our team on our website, the direction to our players, our players say, hey, where should I be staying? We'll make sure that we've got a list of all of the properties that make sense to be promoting to them. I know you have a lot of them, right? And there's a lot of individuals here that want to promote their own properties. We can give as many as we need to, right? And that can change each year as well. But we're not promoting things that are outside the county. We're going to make sure to continue to promote and get people to stay here inside Walton County as much as possible where we have that control. We talk about economic impact. I'll use the Myrtle Beach example as one for you guys to see. This is, again, this is kind of a baseline. This is their first year. When I look at what's happening in the first year in Myrtle Beach, it's a very similar tourism destination who's leaning in, seeing what it means to host a PGA Tour event. They're fifteen million dollars more of economic impact. Again, we believe that as you guys continue to lean in from, and how big your county is and the drivable markets that are around it, this number could continue to grow year over year and maybe even start higher, right? I'm not going to guess at it. We're just using examples that we think are close. I know Matt and his team have come up with others as well from Downs and St. Germain and they're a great resource to lean into for stuff like that. But the return here can be significant, right? From what you're putting in, you think about the media value, you think about the economic impact that's coming back to the county directly. Those are the things, and that's not even taking into account the impact that's being made from the assets that you get alongside this. So those are from a very high level. Those are the discussion points. Those are the impact that's being made. I'll go back to the objective, right? This should be an event for all of Walton County. This should be something that puts your best face forward to the world. We'll use everything at our disposal to do that, right? We have a playbook with other partners. Mike works with a number of them as well. We don't enter any of these partnerships and then step away and say, good luck, have fun, right? We lean in with you. If you are successful, we are successful. Part of my job is to find places that we are not currently playing golf that we should be. This has been at the top of our list for a long time. Walton County checks a lot of boxes and I still believe that with all of my heart. And I will do everything to keep proving that. And I know that if I could fast forward five years from now, you'll think this was a no-brainer. We just need to get it started. So thank you for your time. Happy to take any questions and discussion as we go.
Thank you very, very much. That was very, very informative and I personally am very excited. I did go to Jacksonville to look at the tournament there and I was so impressed by the way everything is handled. And I love the fact that you're talking about all-inclusive, so the entire county is included in this, whether they're doing, I think it's great to take and do some training for the kids up in Eagle Springs and different areas all throughout the county that can really benefit from this. And the fact that you didn't mention the volunteers that get to be on, at the course. And it's kind of a really exciting thing for people to be able to do that. People that volunteer to do that absolutely love it and it's something that they'll, you know, will be in their memory bank forever. So I personally think it's a fantastic idea. Yes, I realize it's a lot of money, but I think the return on investment is really, is really good as well. So any other, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Charles, as you and I talked when you met with me, a lot of people don't understand the limits players have in golf tournaments because they don't have enough points. And I've had some people ask me, well, it'll be in October and everybody'll be tired and there won't be any big-name players. But through some research and talking to you, if we played this tournament today, Jordan Spieth would be in it, Ricky Fowler would be in it, Daniel Berger would be in it, Max Homa would be in it. These are people that have all won, not majors, of course, Jordan Spieth's won majors several times. And the reason they would be playing would be, number one, to get a jump on next year and because they're down low this year. Number two is the top fifty, top fifty play in the Masters. And if you're anywhere from thirty-five to sixty or seventy, you're going to be trying to win that tournament. And right now, those players I mentioned are not in the top fifty. So in that, of course, that'll change every week. But I think, I'm back Commissioner Johns on this, I think that this is a rare opportunity for us. I think it will improve our tourism. I'm excited about the fact that the players are coming here. First of all, everybody on the PGA Tour is talented, but if you watch golf at all, you know who the top players are. Well, we have a chance to have top of the top, you know? If somebody has a bad year this year, then, you know, they're going to be playing in the fall. And I'm just very excited about it. I think it's a, I think it's a situation where we in Walton County have a chance to do something really unique and show our county as a whole. I also think that, I've been to numerous PGA events and they're well-run. There's no problems, there's, everybody gets along fine. It's just a professional and I would thank your friend over there for putting those on. But it's not like going out with a bunch of your buddies playing on Saturday afternoon. So I think it's a, I'm a hundred percent behind it and I think it's a great idea and thank you for coming.
Of course.
Commissioner Curry.
Appreciate you putting that in there with the Eagles Springs. We won't tell the story about my nine iron, but I hope you left that out. As I expressed to you too, I would like the benefits to flow over the entire county and that means every golf course. That means Windswept, that means Blackstone, that means all these other golf courses that are in Walton County. I would like to spread that type of wealth throughout the entire county. Morrison Springs, everything and some of these commercials or whatever you want to call that. And I think I'd express that to you also. I'm totally for this, but the little devil on my shoulder is going, well, where is this going to be played at and why don't they put some skin in the game? That's the only drawback that I have. If you have one entity that is primarily beneficial than others, then maybe they, I mean, is there an issue with having them kick some skin in the game? No pun intended, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Commissioner Gladwell.
It's an intriguing opportunity. The one thing that gives me pause is that's six million dollars a year for five years plus a kicker. And so what's that going to cost us somewhere else? What's the opportunity cost that this is going to incur? I mean, does this mean we lose a beach access or, you know, something along those lines? So while I'm intrigued, I'm still, the devil's in the details. Plus, I want to know where the money's coming from. the money's coming from.
Well, I believe that the return on investment, and I know there's no guarantee on the return on investment, but at the, at the minimum, I think at one time, Commissioner Anderson, you said somewhere between 15 and 25 million, that's a pretty good return on investment, and that'd certainly help us buy some more beachfront property.
Yeah, and, and, and Madam Chair, not to interrupt, Mr.
No, I'm good, I'm done.
The thing is, the tournament he was showing, the one in South Carolina or North Carolina, Myrtle Beach, Myrtle Beach, yeah, that's a tournament that's against another PGA event. It may not be local to Myrtle Beach, but it's still, people are going to be home watching it on TV. This event is not, there's no other event that week in the PGA. So I, I think 15 million is kind of low, really, but I, I think, I see the, I've seen the benefit of these for years, they used to have one at Pensacola, and you're too young to remember that, but I'm not. And people came from as far away as Atlanta, Tallahassee, further south, all from New Orleans, they came, they watched, they stayed the night. Heck, I went over there every year and rented a hotel room when I couldn't afford one, but I went. And I think, I think the return on investment is going to be tremendous.
Thank you. Commissioner Drake, did you have anything to add?
I can. If, if, if somebody's going to sell you a car, whatever that sticker price is, you don't want to pay that. So, you know, you're, as a steward of your own money, you're going to respond back with a counter offer, and, you know, as the one selling the product, they've got to defend either staying there or acquiesce into the customer. We haven't even done that yet. We're doing everything on the, on the terms of the one that is asking us to do this. I mean, why, so Commissioner Curry made a great point, it's not just one venue that stands to gain significantly from this type of event, there are dozens of, of vendor entities that would immediately see a financial reward, but nobody's beating down our door to, like, put some skin in the game, to offer, you know, shared risk in this venture. And I know why, because why do you do that if you don't have to? If the government's just going to give it to you for free, and you don't have to put anything in there, well, then you're just going to hunker down, you're not going to say anything, and then let us bear the burden and a majority of the risk, and then the benefits are all captured by those that fall under the, the umbrella. I mean, I think that we should put it out there for others to share in the risk. If they want to partner with us on this, then fine, $30 million, that's a significant investment. If you use the example of like Myrtle Beach, Myrtle Beach is a golf course community, people go to Myrtle Beach to play golf, people come to South Walton to go to the beach. So if we're going to take, if, we have to recognize what it is, what is our tourist, our tourism objective in this exercise? Is it to rebrand Walton County as a golf destination? If we do, there's a lot of risk in doing that because we're already, we're, we're beaches and we're sun, we, and we're good at both of those. I mean, we, we, we know what we're doing as far as getting people, offering them a quality product, they come here, they stay at nice restaurants, or nice hotels and go to nice restaurants. So what is it that our objective is? Is it to put heads in beds, is it to fill the empty spaces? I mean, our, our shoulder season's not what it used to be, it's bigger. It's, it's not just a couple of months out of the year now, it's almost all of the months out of the year. So if, if we improve the clientele or improve, improve the visitor quality by attracting the golf industry, you know, that's great, may get some bump on rates, you may max out the hotels, but if the hotels are already at close to maximum occupancy, what is the benefit to the county by doing that? I just feel like that there are other people, before we just go in and say, yeah, you, what's you're selling, we're buying, and we're ready to stroke the check, I think that we should look for, you know, partnerships to share that risk. And, and I don't, I don't know, I mean, we, we don't have to adhere to the terms in the first pass, you know, we could say, look, we'll try this out for two years, or we, or we'll try it out for one year. If we are the desired commodity, if we are the destination that is most desired, they're going to work with us. If we're number five, if we're competing with Biloxi, or Las Vegas, or somewhere in central Florida, or somewhere in central United States, and, and, and they're the desired commodity, well, then they might not be willing to work with us. But it looks like we're, we're, we're pretty top at the, we're pretty close to the top at the, in desirability for location, so why aren't we just giving it away? I think we need to negotiate this significantly, we need to ask, we need to find out the value of the contract. When we went through this garbage exercise with waste management, you know, we, we had to find out what the value was in rebidding, well, that bit us, that bit us, because had we not, had we decided that we would just continue and re-up and renew the contract that we have with that entity, it would have been a lot more fiscally prudent if, had we done that, had we paused, but we didn't. We, we, we just said, all right, we're, we're going to go and, so that's, you know, I mean, that's, that's done. I guess what I'm trying to stress is that this is a significant deal, this is a $30 million obligation, of which it's going to tie up 90% of our marketing resources to the golf industry, and, I mean, that's not what puts heads in beds down here, 11, 12 months out of the year, it's, it's sunshine and, and white beaches. So, I mean, that's, for your consideration, you know, what we decide, and my vote at the, at the TDC level was to put that decision up here, wasn't, my vote was not an endorsement of bringing the PGA here, it was, it was signifying that it should be at this level where all five of us get to make this decision. I don't, I mean, I don't know what the expectation is today, if we're supposed to pull the trigger, or if we're supposed to, you know, turn, vote it up, vote it down, have, have it negotiated. I don't know what the desire of the board is, and I don't know what, what direction we're headed.
Well, I think that there's an opportunity, if, if you're not interested in the five-year, to do a four-year or something like that, but I, I really believe that this is a great opportunity for us, and I believe that when I spoke with you all, that there was something said about commitment, about us being committed to wanting it to be successful, and that if we do like a one-year or a two-year, we might not be so committed to it, and it kind of made sense to me the way you put it. And, and I think that we do, we do have a lot of people to come to the beaches, but we have a lot of people to play golf as well. That's why we have so many people playing at Eagle Springs, is because, and that place is pretty much packed all the time. So we do have a lot of golfers here, and we do have a lot of people that enjoy that, and it's nice to be a little diverse, you know, have something besides just the beach. And so I, I, I really think it's a fantastic opportunity for us, and I think that we're definitely going to have a return on investment, there's no way not to. I mean, the restaurants are going to benefit from it, the stores are going to benefit from it, the hotels and Airbnbs and the short-term rental places, they're all going to benefit from it, and I think it's just a really great opportunity for us. And I, I can see where you might want to negotiate, you know, a year or two or something like that, and I don't, I mean, a year or two less, I don't mean a year or two. I mean, you know, if you wanted to try to go for four years instead of five, I could understand that, but I think we, if we're going to do this, I think that we, we should do it, and we should do it right. And anyway, that's, that's my feeling. And, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and Matt, you can tell us, this is the goal here for us to make a motion today, or is the goal here exactly what?
I think it's direction, to see what you all want to do moving forward and how you all want to proceed. Just, I was going to ask Charles if he wouldn't mind kind of elaborating a little bit on, you know, some of the conversation that revolves around sponsorships and co-sponsorships. I think, you know, maybe just for the good of the group, it might be worthwhile to, to touch on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Michael throws something at me if I say something that he's not comfortable with, so that's why I want to sit in the second row, I think. But we've seen historically, you can use Myrtle Beach as an example, you can see others as examples, for those partners that join us, that started, that put a tournament on the ground on the PGA Tour, that want a co-title, in the first year or two, you'll see it show up, and we, and we work with you in tandem to do that. Right, we're not, I said earlier, like, we're not just handing a tournament and stepping away and not engaging with it, we work alongside with you, the business development team at the PGA Tour, Mike and all of his contacts from here locally and across the country, understanding who's important, working with you guys to open doors to people that you may know that may be thinking about coming, who should we be talking to in the county that we're not already talking to? Those are things that we engage with you on, to understand from a co-title sponsorship standpoint, moving forward, who should we be talking to? That happens when you put something on the ground and have an asset to go sell, and so that's where we would start, right? Whether it's, you know, whether it's year one, year two, year three, that's where we're, we want to dive in as much as, as fast as we can. Mike knows, I know, the faster you get this to a point you guys are comfortable, the longer-term success this is going to have. There's not competition in the marketplace, right, Matt, his team, you guys are not trying to go find somebody, and, and Mike's out there selling a different property to them. Mike's going to start with, from a co-titleship standpoint, what makes the most sense, because he knows the success of this tournament is, is dependent on that. You know, hearing a lot of the conversations you guys have put in front of me, what, how's that look? Who do you go outreach to? So those are things we want to dive in with you on, similar to everything else about the golf tournament, but those are areas that we would, we would jump in on, and definitely open to that discussion. There's precedent in place that's been done in other markets. You'll never see two corporate entities on, on a tournament, from a titleship standpoint, but the unique position that you guys are in is that's your destination, and so we have the, a little bit of a unique ability to do that and work with you, if that's something that you desire, and from a lot of the conversations that I've had with individuals on the, on the board here, it is, and that's something we dive in with you on, for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drake said it so much better than I did, but he, he has similar concerns that I have. I don't know if the directions could be length of contract, negotiate the price, or come back with something that tells us, in this public-private partnership that we're going to have, what does that do to our bottom line? Does it bring it down? How much does it bring it down? So I think all of these things could come back to us so we could get a better concept of just showing us a car without giving us the keys to get in it and turn it, turn it.
Sure. If, if you're comfortable, I'm happy to touch on a couple of those now, if that's okay?
Okay.
From a, and I'll, I'll take them in the order I remember, I'm sorry, let me know if I missed one.
I said length, price, and then public-private.
Okay. From a length standpoint, Commissioner, we talked, we talked about this as well, we're, we're asking for a five-year commitment. We understand that's kind of a good timeline of how you, a partner really leans into it and really engages with it, knowing that you're going to be here for a long term, you can do things, knowing that they're going to continue to evolve, and you're really leaning into a partnership. If you said, hey, we'd like to try this for a year, that's, that's just not something. You look at all of our, our tournaments across the PGA Tour, we, we, we want to have, be here for long-term success. So if you said one to two years, that's probably not something we're going to go ask. I can go ask the question at three, I can probably say yes to four at the podium right now. I'm not a very good negotiator, so I'm sorry for that, but this is, I just know how it would play out in our building, doing enough of these. So we, we're going to start at five, because we think that's the most, the success rate is there. We're definitely open to talking about it, just knowing that farther down, Commissioner, to your point, we want to make sure that you're engaged and are committed to this for a long term, because we will be, Mike will be, and we should make sure everyone's in the same level.
Well, I like three, just to tell you right now, I like, I like three better than five.
Okay.
But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, you're, you're fine. From a price standpoint, we, we are, we know what it costs to run an event. Commissioner, I don't, I don't disagree with you. If I was buying a car, I would not buy the sticker price either. My last car, I did the same thing, right, to go and ask what's the best you can do. I'm going to be very honest, if I'm with another organization that has a much larger marketing budget than I'm trying to get as much, I may have started at seven to try and get to six. That's just not the case with you guys. That's going to take you believing me, and whether you do or not, I, that's up to you guys. But know that six is the number, we know what it takes to make this be effective, to be successful for the long term, so that's not something that we're, that we're able to move from. From the, and the third one, I apologize, Commissioner Curry.
That was a public-private, like, what would that benefit?
Sure, yes, perfect, great. And so I touched a little bit on that. Honestly, from a $6 million standpoint, it does not make a giant difference to us how that is broken up, if you've come on with a co-title sponsor. Right, so you could find someone three and three and split those assets up that you have, we're not adding more assets to the pile when you're doing that, you're just taking the current partnership that we've put in front of you and splitting it up equally. You could do that four and two, you could do that one and five, just kind of depends on the partnership that you have and what you're willing to go find, and what you're willing to give up from your assets. So we would work with you on that as well, maybe there's somebody that cares more about the media than cares about the hospitality on site, and you can figure out where that looks, but that looks a little bit different for each partner. There's some flexibility there, and that would obviously decrease your investment if you found someone that was splitting it with you, right? That's, you know, over five years, that's a $15 million difference versus a...
But, but why would they when we're getting ready to just stroke the check ourselves? That's what I'm getting at. I mean, you're, you're already counting the votes, you know how close you are to victory lane, I, I just wish that, I wish that, as a board collectively, we wouldn't be so excited about, you know, saying, yeah, we're going to pay your sticker price, and, and find out what the buy-in from the other side is. I mean, if we walk away from this deal today, somebody is going to be, well, by God, that's too big of an opportunity, we can't let it go away, we're going to do something about it, we're all going to chip in, we're all going to do something. But not if we're ready to stroke the check, if we just give you what you want, then what do we get out of, I mean, what did we get out of that?
My jo, my job to work with you is to find a co-title and deliver the same value that I'm explaining to you guys, right? This is not something that we, this is something we do on a regular basis, right, making sure we're finding the partner. They do it because of the value that comes with it, not because they're trying to, you know, they can do it for the good of the county, at the end of the day, everybody has a business decision to make of whether it's good for their bottom line or not, and the return that they're getting out of it. We'd have a very similar conversation with each one of those partners, and go dive in and see who makes the most sense. Again, you, you see the partners that have come on board on other PGA Tour events, we've, we've been very successful from that standpoint, we don't, we have a full schedule on, on all of our tours, you, you see what we're delivering and the partners that are engaging with us. So we're bullish on being able to find it, especially alongside each one of you, to help us get there. So we know we can get there, I understand it's a big ask to, from a beginning standpoint, to get it off the ground, but we've seen that be successful in other markets as well. Once you have something to go sell, we go and sell it with you.
Staying in line with the car analogy, are we at the point where you go ask your manager on a piece of paper, and then y'all come back? So is that, is that where we're at?
You met my manager, right? He was here, we had some good conversation, and I called him before I came in here as well, right? So I, I, we can use that analogy, I, hopefully I don't look like a used car salesman, if I do, I need to, I need to, I need to improve, and I'm sorry if anyone is in the car industry as well.
But I think if you could put some of Commissioner Drake's concerns in there, ours, Commissioner Glad, everybody up here to take that number back, or those, you know, descriptions that we would like to see, and then come back with another number, I mean, is that too far-fetched to, to ask for?
It, it's not, but I know the number that's going to come back. It, it's the same.
So you know, you said that you could probably guaran, guarantee, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you said four years you could probably do, three years would be questioned.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm pretty confident in the four years to three years, we could, we could probably find a way to get there. To our conversation earlier, I think it's better served to have a longer-term agreement, I'll stand firm on that, but I'm open to talking about that with you to understand where that lands.
That's part of that piece of paper that I wanted you to take to your manager.
So, and he'll, and he'll say the same thing, I asked him, you know, as soon as we came up here, and look at, and his boss too, right, where do we need to be for these? And those are things that we're okay talking about, and the price is just not. So I can do that, it would be, I could give you the answer by the end of the meeting, right? It's, it's going to come back the same way. So I, I, again, I want this to be successful, we know what it takes to do that, we run a lot of golf tournaments, we, we've been doing this for a long time, you made, Commissioner, you made a comment about, you know, can't, I can't guarantee success. You made, Commissioner, you made a comment about, you know, can't, I can't guarantee success. History proves a lot of things, right? We've been doing this a long time. We have 40-plus events on our tour. We see the success there, right? There are long-term partnerships that have continued on and continue renewing. So I know the success comes. It just kind of gets it started. So I, I understand the, the analogy, what you're, what you're asking and we're, we're happy to have those conversations around some of those topics. I just don't want to put an unrealistic expectation in front of anyone that a different number will come back.
Right. I'd, I'd just like to get my toes wet before I dive all the way in.
Understand.
Especially with that kind of money.
Understand.
Well, I think that the big elephant in, in the room is who would be our co-sponsor. And so, you know, I'm sure we all have a few ideas of, of possibilities there. So is that something that we could, that you would work towards or you, Matt, would work towards and, and come back and let us know? I mean, I, I don't want to kick this down the road, you know, too far, but if we could possibly bring it back at our next meeting and, and give us the potential of, of partnerships and see if, see if we can move forward with that. That way we're not striking the check for the whole amount. Is everybody good with that?
But why would they if, I mean, if they know it's going to get, are you ready to walk away from the deal? Because if, if, if they can tell-
Let's give them an opportunity.
Okay, well, that's good. But unless you're ready to walk away from the deal, that number, I mean, ask Clay, he does this every day. That number's not going to change. Not, not much. It, it may be something where you look like you get something, but you, you really don't.
If we know it's $6 million and we know that if we have possibility that we can get somebody to co-sponsor with us that would pick up half of that tab, then, then that reduces, you know, our outgo.
But what I'm getting at is, you're, you're going to, you're going to provide, you're going to go ahead and bite off the bullet and then you're, and then you're going to ask people to come in and defray the cost.
No, that's not what I said. I said, go out there and ask them first, get a commitment, and then come back to us.
She's asking our, if I follow correctly, the chair's asking our staff to identify
Possible sponsors.
Possible co-sponsors and at what level and bring that back to us using what he's proposed as, or what he claims are their fixed terms. What I would say for the board today is option one is to vote down. You can't vote up because we don't have a contract in front of you to approve. Option two is some form of continued negotiation. I definitely think that would be consistent with what Commissioner Johns is saying. And then I think as part of that, I would hope the direction would be to staff, to allow your staff to continue discussing with the PGA team the total number of years, the total number of dollars, the price escalators, and what our ability to select our own co-sponsor would look like. Those are things we need to know. Certainly, I've heard him say six million's a fixed number and I would say that they want a longer-term commitment. Well, these are things that until we know how much skin we're willing to put into the game, it's going to be very difficult for your staff to go and negotiate. Keep using the car buying analogy, it's imperfect, but you know how much money you're willing to spend. Or perhaps, perhaps you know exactly how much you have to spend. So once we know that kind of at an internal level, that will help, I think, with that front as well.
Is the escalator clauses something that could be negotiated?
Of course. Yeah, that, so that's one that we've talked about as well. There's, and you guys know this better than anybody, probably with the price increases of operating anything. We'd like there to be some sort of escalator there. I've seen it go down to four, if I'm being very honest. I've seen it discussed at three and depending on the length of term and all these other elements, there's, that's a, that's a point for conversation. It falls very similar to how the years are discussed. But we know what it takes in year one. There just needs to be some, some support from Mike and his team as things increase in price to make sure that sustains over the years.
So what I would say to the board is unless the decision is to get out of this deal today and say, we're not going to do it and just go ahead and give them a no vote, the direction would be to work, have staff look at identifying co-sponsors and look at identifying, and come back to the board with that information internally. We can't do an executive session. But come back to the board, discuss that and put together a proposal that this board can then vote on as a counterproposal. Candidly, I see no hope of negotiating a deal like this in real time, live here at a board meeting. In a pu- and, and it's not that it's in a public setting, but in a public board meeting, you're not even able to give this guy a chance to go back and talk to his people. Y'all aren't able to go in the back and sit down and talk. You're not able to do that outside of a board meeting. But let your staff come up with, this is what we'd like to see. Then you voted up or down and then they can make their decision, yes or no. We're not going to reach a settlement on any kind of contract negotiation like this here in public.
Do you need a direction or a motion on that?
A direction's fine. I don't see a motion necessary unless the motion is to reject the opportunity and end it all. Then in that case, I'd ask for a motion.
I don't think it's, you go ahead, Matt. I don't think it's to reject it. I don't believe it.
And I was just going to, just to put on the record, I think this is a lot of good dialogue. In terms of co-sponsorships, you know, that's something I've been reaching out to entities and having those conversations. And a lot of what I'm getting is, you know, it's really hard at this point for us to want to commit to something that we don't even know you're doing. We don't have, you know, nothing's been approved, nothing's been agreed to. We don't know where it's at. We don't know when it is. So a lot of it's really been a non-starter for a lot of folks who I've reached out to, to ask about becoming co-sponsors. And then some of the folks that, you know, have expressed some interest, it's really been year or two or after is where they've expressed that they might be willing to, to hop on board. But that's kind of what I'm hearing thus far.
Okay, well, I don't believe it's a non-starter, so.
Oh, sure, I'm just, just conveying what, you know, what's been shared with me.
But I mean, I think that you could, you could let them know that, that, you know, and at a minimum of three years, I think, is what we're talking about. And so, and, and we know it's $6 million. So if, if someone wants to, that's going to benefit greatly from the event, might want to, you know, help make this happen because I understand completely that, you know, we, it would be good to have a partnership. And so, so maybe we can check a few things. I'm sure we could probably each give you a few ideas of who you can go talk to that you may not have spoken to yet or maybe you have.
And that's a conversation that Charles and I have been having is, you know, we're willing to have those conversations. We just kind of need to, you know, settle in on, in a direction to go that seems kind of from a unified front.
What golf course is the arrow pointing at at this moment?
I mean, I think, you know, what-
That'd be the first one I'd pick up the phone to.
Right. I mean, I think that's part of the conversation and Charles can probably explain the process a little bit better. You know, I believe their proc- their process is they identify the title sponsor. Then they work with that title sponsor to then identify the course. So I mean, I think that's really, ultimately that balls in, in our court in terms of, you know, being part of that dialogue and part of that conversation. You know, understanding what facilities have the ability to, you know, handle an event like this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So let me shift gears real quick and go back to another situation where we voted on something like this. On the, the Baby Bear project, okay? What, what did we get out of that? Because it's been two years now that we invested in Baby Bear.
Paper Bear.
And Paper Bear, Baby Bear, Boo Bear, Gummy Bear, whatever. We spent, we spent real numbers. And I remember asking and, and begging for like, show us where we're going to get some return on this and let's put some guarantees in place.
Sure.
And I was, I was on an island by myself. But now that two years has elapsed and we're on record for spending $400,000 on that project, can you update me, because we're getting ready to spend 30 million, similar scenario, can you tell me what we got out of that $400,000 on Papa Bear?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, the money we contributed to that was for them to finish the animation and finish the actual filming of, of the movie. And, you know, from our standpoint, you know, we, there's not a lot we can do until the movie itself is actually out there and available for public consumption. We can't market something that is not somewhere where people can go watch it, right? So until it gets, you know, in theaters or until it's on a streaming service or until it's on a platform where it can actually be viewed, you know, we can't really promote that component. I mean, I think that's a big key is that understanding that, you know, that was been our point all along is until it exists somewhere, there's not a whole lot we can do to promote and market it.
Do you think we'll get our money back on that?
I think it depends on where, where the film ultimately lives and, and where, you know, we can promote and talk about it. I mean, I think, you know, they held a screening over the weekend. And what I've heard so far is great reviews from the folks that went and saw it. I know that the guys are still working hard to identify distribution channels and mechanisms of where they can show the film. So I, I think it's, you know, you're taking a stab in the dark of whether you can, you know, get your return on something that you haven't had an opportunity to really publish yet.
Well, that's, that's where I'm driving this home is that we're, we're operating under thesis. We're operating under theory. And so the day that that Bear project was brought to us, oh, it was packaged up beautifully with children and a little ribbon and, and it was a well, well-done presentation. But the same things that we, we were selling theories and potential and naming and branding and communities and this, that and the other. Today, we're doing, we're going through that same exercise and it's, the, the, the presentation is equally masterful. It's beautiful. I, I think, you know, you know, you've probably read Art of the Deal, I'm, I'm guessing. But, but we're in this, we're in the same, we're in the same sphere of making a monumental decision and we're, we're still practicing it. I put it on the agenda for the TDC to consider having someone do an isolated study, not a generic study, not a, not, not a study that, that kind of identified generalities. I wanted a deep dive, someone that does this kind of thing for a living to do an economic impact statement that dove down into empirical, using empirical data that would give us a definitive marker of what this type of investment would look like. And it was going to cost around 20 grand.
Yes, sir.
And no, I, I mean, unfortunately, I wasn't there that day, but nobody else wanted to do that. So I, I, I think it would be worth spending the, the money and they could probably do it very quick in giving us some data on, you know, somebody that identifies with what our market looks like, what we have, what we're selling, the dates, the, the type of customer quality and all these things. I think it's worth spending the money to at least have something to look at before we make, you know, a, a decision as big as this one.
I mean, I know that proposal still exists from tourism economics. If that's something that the board ultimately decides they would like for us to do, I don't mind reaching out and having that conversation again.
How much is it going to cost?
It was $20,000.
$20,000? $20,000 is not much money when you're talking about 6 million times five. I, I think that'd be a good thing to get those figures.
Have you had anybody researching those figures? I mean, I, I think the difference between the Paper Bear and this is that you've been doing this for years and years and years and years and years and you have the backup information to support what, what you're telling us. And Paper Bear project was something new, came out of nowhere and, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with Commissioner Drake on, on that. But it is what it is. We made a mistake. So I personally don't think this one is a mistake, but I do think that it would be beneficial to see if some, somebody would want to go into partnership with us. So.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
So I just want to get this straight. We're going to ask our marketing department to go hire a marketing department to tell us what we need to do.
So this would be a actual organization that specializes in economic impact studies for tourism entities?
Okay, did we, did we look at, I mean, we asked for three quotes, I think, on other things. Did we ask for three quotes on anybody else? Or is this just one entity that does this?
I mean, there's multiple entities that can do economic impact studies. This was just the one that I was asked to reach out to and see if it'd be something they were able to do.
You were asked to reach out on this particular project?
Yes. I was asked to reach out to them to see if they'd be able to perform an economic impact study. Yes, ma'am.
So what kind of timeframe are we looking at for something like that?
I mean, I can reach back out. I mean, at that point, they would have been able to do it in two or three weeks, give or take. It really just depends on what else they've got going on at the time. And but when I spoke to them, I think it was 20 days, give or take. I mean, we've also had our, we've had Downs and St. Germain look at this. We've had Zender look at it. And they've put together some, you know, generalized ROI figures as well and some economic impact figures as well that, you know, similarly are close to what Charles had shared. They're more in the 12 million range. Jumping up into 13s in year three, four, and five in terms of the economic impact. And then they had basically each year for the five-year commitment, a little over 6 million ROI.
So we've already had a marketing firm do this?
So we've had our internal agency, Downs and St. Germain Research, put some figures together.
And, and you've worked with them for a while, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you discredit any of their findings?
No, sir, absolutely not.
So you would be in benefit of getting a second opinion at a $20,000 cost?
I mean, I don't think a second opinion hurts if that's what the board wants to do. This is, once again, a substantial commitment. I mean, we are talking 30-plus million dollars.
I just wanted to see, I just wanted to see where you were at.
Yeah.
So you said that, that they, they're, they came up with a $13 million figure?
Yes, ma'am.
On year one?
So 12, six, year one, 12, eight, year two, 13, one, 13, four, and then 13, six in the three subsequent years.
Okay, so that would-
So out the door, they had done about, they determined a 65.69 million estimated economic impact and an ROI of 32.5.
I want to know-
I, go ahead.
What, what I want to know is, I want to know the, the, the delta between, we're, we're going to have people come in here that weekend, okay? So they're, they're going to be here. They're going to be patronizing the restaurants. They're going to be shopping at Grand Boulevard. They're going to be doing all of that anyway. So what I, the, what we have to try to figure out is what is the benefit in adding on this expenditure for those same dates? I mean, we're already getting the tourists. We're getting the travelers. We're getting the heads, the beds. The restaurants are going to be, get utilized. But by bringing in this customer, there has to be a delta of difference, of positive, to, to where it justifies the $6 million.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I, what we had the conversation at the TDC level was, you know, they had specified in their recommendation that they would prefer to have a September tournament, understanding that that's a little bit more of a need period for them. So I think, you know, that was straight from, you know, our bed tax collectors telling us that September was a timeframe that made sense for them to do a fall tournament. And as part of their recommendation, they had essentially said, you know, no less than two-year and no more than a five-year commitment. It's kind of what they thought, you know, based on the conversations they had.
So they think they can benefit from this by having it in September more so than any other time?
Yes, ma'am.
And that it would make a difference?
Yes, ma'am. That's what they had shared with us.
Thank you.
And that was part of their recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so we know that, that the TDC and bed packs collectors are in favor of this? They approved it?
Yeah, certainly. So what I have is recommendation for a September event with PGA for no less than two years, no more than five years with a member of the TDC on the committee that handles negotiations and staff to pursue a co-sponsor. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that you, that you already talked about having a co-sponsor?
Oh, certainly, yeah. I've been working the phone since that meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, why don't we just follow through with that? You continue doing what you're doing and, and let us know what your results are. I mean, I, I just don't know that- I mean, I, I just don't know that we need to spend the time and the, and the money to go out and have another, um, study done on how much money we would make when we've already got one, that we're already paying to do things like that, and we've already got that information.
I'm happy to do whatever the will of the board is.
I wasn't aware that you had done such a study, but I would sure like to see the results.
Me too.
So why don't we do that? Why don't you just have, come to each commissioner and show us, you know, what you've got, and then reach out to potential sponsors, and then let's reconvene this at the next meeting and see where, see where we're at.
And do you all want that at the next BCC meeting or the next South End meeting? Just so we're clear.
Probably South End.
Okay. I just want to make sure we get it on the right time.
That'll give you, that'll give you time, that'll give you time to get it done. I, I hate the, the time, the, the lag of, we're waiting another month.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Charles, could I ask you something? I'm, I'm a little bit hard of hearing. I got my hearing aids in, but I won't hear you from a little... When do you, when's, when's the drop dead date for, for the PGA?
Um, I would say we need to announce this by, you know, no, we try, we try and have a 14-month selling cycle for our first year's event, right? So I'd really like to be able to announce this. Let's call it into July.
Okay.
Right? So I'd, you know...
Okay.
I, I don't know a ton about how the contract process works with your legal team. We're happy to move it as quickly as we can from our side. Um, but that's, that's where we'd like to get to.
Madam Chair, does that include, um, his negotiations coming back with that motion? I mean, he's gonna come back and tell us, what, three, four years?
Right, the, the options, the options, yes.
So you'll, you'll come back with some of that too, so we can see, you know, your, your car manager?
I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, if you wanted in writing from exactly what I said today, I'm happy to. No, yes, sir.
It can be on the back of a receipt or something, just light it over to us and...
Well, to the TDC Council's point, they recommended no less, no less than two years? Or, did you say no less than two years? Is that right? Okay.
That's what the motion...
Okay. Yeah. So if you could just give us something from maybe three, four, and five years?
Yeah. Yep. Those, those are, I can, I can provide those options, um, and kind of the, the willingness for us to, to talk about different areas. Um, uh, I've provided also, each one of you should have the proposal that we put in front of you, which is a detailed word document of everything that's included here. Um, those are, that is what we would start the contract process with, right? So we, we put that out in front of you, just so you're not surprised by anything that's in the agreement when we come to an agreement. Um, obviously work with your legal team as well to, to draw that agreement up. Um, we would, you know, I'm happy to start that process if it helps, if it helps you guys make those decisions. We can start that process leaving the room today, um, and kind of get a contract in place to where you can negotiate off of that as well. Uh, but it'd be coming off of that proposal, uh, that you're working on as well.
What do you think?
And, and we would, we would be happy, we have multiple tournaments. Uh, we drafted as if it were, you know, so it's similar to all of the other tournaments we have in place, and we're happy to get a version of that to your team.
They go and get it to us. We'll start our review, and then we can still handle the negotiation of the substantive terms.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
No, of course. Happy to help. Anything we can do to keep pushing this forward, um, happy to do that. Um, you guys all have my contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions or thoughts or additional comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all that you're doing and, and looking forward to it.
Perfect. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Uh, yes, and we'll, we'll take...
Welcome back. The meeting is back in order. We are on item number 32. And Matt, would you mind coming back to the podium?
I'm gonna...
You're gonna do this one?
Present that for him.
Okay.
Approximately six weeks ago, this board took up a conversation and a discussion, I believe it was on April the 8th, regarding the Tourism Department and several items associated with Tourism Department. I believe it was Commissioner Drake that asked for it to be continued until all commissioners could adequately contemplate the changes being discussed and bring it back to today's meeting. So, for your consideration today, we have three items relative to Tourism Department, and we'll take them in order. First would be a discussion and request on, request for direction on reestablishing the Executive Director position. So, when you do that, the second item is a discussion and request for direction on the organizational structure. And then, thirdly, discussion and request for direction on what the hiring process would look like. So, I trust that each of you have had the opportunity to contemplate this issue, and with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to start this discussion?
I will.
Okay.
Number one, if it's the board's decision that we need to reestablish the Executive Director position, I think we need to take it...
They can't hear you.
I think we need to take that through the budget process. As far as the other two, as, I think we need to let those lie until we get approval of the budget to hire somebody, because there's no sense changing direction of the organizational structure until we have at least our first meeting in July on the budget process. Because if it's not the board's wishes and it doesn't get through the budget process, there's no sense in us doing the rest. So, I would suggest if it's the board's wishes, then that we start with the budget process, because it's gonna cost money to do it, and we need a full understanding of how much. And so, you know, like I say, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Devin, do you have any information on this?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning. Welcome. I was just gonna ask you, if you had any information, do you know if in fact there is a full-time position?
There is currently not an FTE that's budgeted. I'm not sure what the board would like, if this would be a contractual position. To Mr. Anderson's point, the budget process would be an opportunity in which that you could request an FTE to be put in that budget. There is not currently one there, though, at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, Commissioner Gladwell.
Well, just as a, for discussion, I'm not opposed or in favor of this position per se. What I will say is, to the point of Commissioner Anderson, such a position would probably cost between $250,000 and $300,000, which is a substantial amount of money, and something that, I mean, that's money that could be used elsewhere. So, my, I guess the question would then be, what would this position do to put heads in beds? What would this position do to make things more efficient? And why do we need another bureaucratic position? In today's Doge environment, it seems like it's sort of counterproductive to be contemplating adding more bureaucracy, when we really don't know if it's even gonna put $1 or one head in one bed. It just, there's been no preparation as far as what this position would do to help our Tourism Department. So, I'm not in favor of spending 300, upwards of $300,000 if there's not a clear indication that this is gonna add value to the county operation. So, I guess I got more questions, and I don't have any answers, but I do think that the budget process would be where these questions could be answered.
Thank you. I would like to ask one of the TDC council members if they wouldn't mind to come up and tell us their thoughts.
Amy Wise Kobel. Good afternoon. And I think maybe we just start with the first question, is what does it do to put heads in beds? What would this position do? Well, I'll tell you, I'm in general management. So, I got a Director of Sales and Marketing that puts heads in beds. I got a Director of Finance that runs the financials. I got a Director of Operations that runs the day-to-day operations. I got a Director of Reservations. A strategic leader pulls $60 million together, points it in the right direction, helps everybody. We doubled our bed tax collections and went from three positions to two, almost in the exact same year. That is not a logical business decision for the people of Walton County. I'm sorry. Tourism deserves a voice straight to the BCC. The county administrator, with all due respect, has plenty to handle and then some. The amount of items facing tourism, numbers are down. Private beach PR, the legislation is probably not going to help us, because now everybody's turning it up over. Now, it's easier to do beach re-nourishment. So, don't think that PR is going to get more positive about private beach. What we see right now, it's not. The PGA opportunity, my frustration level with the PGA opportunity was that all of the time that you just took, a very competent group of people asked all of the exact same questions and made a recommendation, because we knew. We knew if it came to you like it came to us, you couldn't make a decision. You gotta go into contract negotiations. You've got to get the specifics on the table, which is exactly what my motion recommended was. Let's have this stuff for the BCC ready to go, so that they can then make a decision. Now, we've had to push it four more weeks, and the one thing I'm gonna say is, because y'all know, I've been one that's been accused, oh, South End, North End, I'm trying to do so much better. But if we are one county, we're probably not gonna be able to continue to push every South End decision to a South End meeting, because what are we doing? We're slowing our county's progress by doing things like that, in my humble opinion. You know, but agreed, we didn't get a lot of detail together, but that in itself, guys, is a huge responsibility to work with the PGA. I mean, we've got the sink the boat for $1 million, the short-term rental ordinance. I have the utmost respect for Josh, was glad to hear him speak today, love seeing all the progress. I can tell you, Homeowners Collection was one of the first companies complying it, and we are still waiting, as we have been for five months, to have the glitches working in the system that allows us to check out and pay this county the money that we owe you. And we have been willing to do it. My Director of Sales email, basically Anne Compliance is what she's now called, emails every single week, just so that we don't get hand slap for not having done it. So, there are issues to work out there. And again, anything affecting tourism, sitting outside of tourism and in code, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We talk about a beach ordinance. Do you know the number one thing that's probably gonna affect tourism, as Mr. Drake you so eloquently said? At the end of the day, there's a number one driver to this area, and it's beaches and sun. So, if you pass ordinances relative to the beach and you don't involve tourism, so, all of this said, to wrap up, there seems like there is a major disconnect between the BCC and the TDC. And all I've ever wanted to do is try and bring that back, so that we are an asset to you, so that you have what you need to make a decision. We gave you our thoughts on the golf tournament. It was to absolutely go to contract negotiations, so that when we had hoped it came before you, you would know, okay? You're talking about a three-year term for XYZ. Ladies and gentlemen, you may make a decision based on the information we have tried to help you get. So, I can just simply say, again, I've been very active in forming the 38 Rental Owners Operators Alliance. That group is fully in support. We do represent just shy of 2,000 properties up and down 38. All of us wanna be good neighbors. We created the Good Neighbor Initiative with the TDC. We want to do our part, but we feel like this is an important link between the Board of County Commissioners and the Walton County Tourist Development Council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate that. A lot of really good information there. And so, what I got from that is that you believe, in the past, as far as I know in the past, we always had an Executive Director, correct?
Correct. And I apologize for not having waited for questions.
That's okay. So, if we've always had one, and we haven't had one, and it was due to someone being let go, and we've kind of stayed in this scenario that we're in for quite some time, I can see there's been a lot of frustration between bed tax collectors, and there's kind of a loss somewhere along the line in us getting the information that you're wanting us to get. I think we do need to work together, because you know, like to everyone's point, the beach is our big selling point.
Well, and I absolutely wanna stop right here and say, I have the utmost respect for Matt and Brian. I have said it over and over.
I do too.
And I believe it with every bit of my being. They are doing a great job. I just think it's a support mechanism that all of us need.
Absolutely. And I don't disagree. I think that, you know, working directly for the BCC would be helpful as well. So...
Any other questions?
Any questions? Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
I mean, I kind of agree that we need to find that dollar amount somewhere, and I don't know if we're putting the cart before the horse. Can we state that we agree that we need to have this position, and then the next step would be go to the budget process? Or do we have to wait until the budget process comes to initiate this position?
So, I'll play Melissa's role and ask everybody to give me the courtesy that Melissa says, no, that wasn't how I would say it, or no, he's wrong, that we'll let Melissa be right when she comes back. You can do either way. Certainly, the issue is there's not an FTE. That has to be funded. That can be done through a budget amendment, if you wish to do so, or it can be done as part of the budget process. That's ultimately your call. I will defer to Melissa, though, completely, about whether there's sufficient money in the TDC's existing budget right now or not. There may well be money, but no FTE, so we can discuss that. But if the board says they wanna do this, the board can vote to reestablish the position, understanding they still have to go through the process of funding. You've gotta do the two. There's no doubt about that.
That would just begin the process.
Correct.
So, I'd like to make that motion to reestablish.
And then fund it through the budget process.
We have a motion to reestablish the Executive Director position for the TDC, and then move it through the budget process. Do we have a second?
Second, I wanna make sure I understand what we're doing here. I think I understood the direction that Commissioner Anderson was going, was that you weren't opposed to it.
Not opposed.
That you wanted it to be contemplated during the budget process.
Right.
Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Well, yes and no. What's happening, if this motion passes, there will be an Executive Director position that'll be established. Melissa's gonna come back, whether you do it as part of the budget process, or whether you do it as a budget amendment to go forward with that. You'll still have to discuss the hiring process. You'll still have to discuss the organization structure. Whether you do that today or later date, it's on your agenda today, so you can do it as early as today. But this motion would effectively say there is going to be an Executive Director position, and then we're going to handle the funding logistics as part of a budget amendment or the budget process. So, if the discussion was we wanna wait and see whether we're going to do this in the budget process, that is not what is being done by this motion.
Okay. I do have, I support the concept of an Executive Director position, and I always have. I just wanna get, make sure that the pathway to establishing that, and then its functionality is, they're done in the right way, and that they're gonna work complimentary. But the legislature is still not, they have not finalized what the budget looks like for the next fiscal year. And some of that is being contemplated to use TDC monies to, one idea is to use TDC dollars to replace potential property tax cuts. So, that may not be something that happens this year. It may be something that happens in the future, or it may be something that does not happen at all. But it would be kind of a, I would think it would be a little bit kind of a slap in the face to the legislature if we went ahead and actually got before, we didn't wait to see what they were gonna do, and we went forward and did this. I think that the optics are bad. So, I think Commissioner Anderson is headed in the right direction. It accomplishes three things. One, it potentially puts that back on the table. It puts it in the, within the timeframe of the budget process to establish the FTE, and then it gives us enough time to find out, you know, to hear, you know, what the legislature's gonna do and the direction that they're gonna take. And then it also gives us time to work out number two and number three on the organization structure and the hiring process. So, if that were the motion, I would support that. Would you amend your motion?
Sure. Oh, I didn't make it. Sorry, Devin.
No, it's all right. And I actually get what you guys are saying, but we have a habit of kicking the can down the road, and, you know, this was brought up six weeks ago, and then we came back to now, and now we're gonna kick it down to budget. I mean, the TDC spoke very loud and clear that they wanted this. So, I mean, I think you're talking about a slap in the face. I think we'd be slapping them in the face by kicking this can down the road even further. You were talking about FTEs and budgeting and all this stuff. If you remember right from the last meeting, we've held north of a half million dollars in one particular department on FTEs that we never even, you know, got, or happened, and didn't even advertise. So, I mean, I think we need to practice what we preach at times, too. So, I mean, I don't wanna amend my order if it fails, and you wanna make your own order. Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson, would a substitute motion be in order?
Well, it's in order if somebody makes in seconds. That's the way the rules work.
I would make a substitute motion that we hold this in abeyance to the budget process and clear direction from Tallahassee is developed.
Is there a second on that substitute motion?
I second.
So, we have the substitute motion to...
And Madam Chair, let me be plain here. I'm not against hiring a director. I just, I'm sorry. I'm not against hiring a director, but I, first of all, I do wanna know what it costs, and I know the money would come out of the PD's teeth. But I think if we're doing this, then we need to start working on it, so it'll be ready for the budget process. But I'm not ready to vote to hire one until I find out how much it's gonna cost. And I was disappointed when we fired the last director, as you all know. But I do, I don't think this is kicking the can down the road. We just went over an hour and a half on finances for the TD, I mean, for the PGA. But we do need to have an idea how much it's gonna cost, and, you know, saying that they can request an FTE is true. They can, and that person can feel this. But let's be honest here. It's not like a regular FTE that goes to work for the TDC. This is a big salary, and I think it's, needs to be a big salary if we're gonna get somebody good. But I would like to know truly what it's gonna cost. And I think, you know, we can take money out, but I know Mr. Drake hates that, and I don't blame you. I'm not picking on you. But I think it needs to go through the budget process, and then those questions will be answered.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I got one more.
Okay.
So, with my motion, I guess, a moot point now, but I didn't say we were hiring them at a dollar amount at that time. I requested that we show good faith to the TDC board who requested to have this position reinstated. That was my motion, and then we tackle the dollar amount at budget time, along with these other items. So, I don't agree with the subsequent motion, so thank you.
Would the audi, I'm sorry.
I'm not far against the proposal, but I do wanna hear more about, I mean, I wanna know that we're getting the bang for our buck, and I wanna know that we are, I wanna know what it costs, and I wanna know where, what value this is going to add to our tourism efforts. So, I just wanna know more information, I guess, is the bottom line.
Well, I think that we set the salary, so we would set that, as far as I know. I don't think that there's any other formula, unless we go out and find out what other people are being paid.
I don't think my motion denied any of that. You know, of course, I wanna know what we're gonna pay for something. Of course, I wanna know ROI. I speak up on that all the time up here. I'm just stating that we need the position, and this is just stating that we agree that we need to reinstate the position, and let's start the negotiations from that point. You guys want to just go ahead and push it down? You guys want to just go ahead and push it down, push it down the road until, when's the budget? July, August?
It'll be starting in July.
So, you know, I guess we kick it down, kick it down the road.
Mr. Curry.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Curry, I've heard you on many occasions and agree with you on financial stuff. Same with Mr. Drake. I've, I've agreed with, with most of the things he's said. I agree with most of the things that Mr. Curry has said on financial issues. And I also agree with Mr. Drake. Mr. Drake's a strict budget guy. But I think, I didn't even think about waiting on the legislature, but that's another point. The TDC may need to hire a, a director. But if this budget, if, 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 the budget goes through with the state where they're taking money from the TDCs to lower property taxes, that's going to be a lot of money out of the TDC. And I'm just not comfortable doing anything until we find out that. And that should be fairly soon, should it, Commissioner Drake? I, I mean, you know, we've seen crazier things that the legislature has done and that we, that hurt us tremendously through the years. And so you never know what's going to happen. I trust our representatives and our senators. But we have got to know if that's going to pass because that's going to be a devastating blow to the funds of the TDC.
Well, the, the other part of that, which is extremely concerning is that there is a substantial number of people in this, in Tallahassee who would like to abolish TDCs, period, statewide. So it's prudent that we not do anything to irritate or poke the bear, so to speak, until we see how that's going to go. Because they're talking about 75% of the TDT revenue would be going towards property taxes relief. So as Commissioner Anderson said, that's, that's a serious problem. And we need to tread lightly on how we're going to respond.
Well, honestly, I don't think that we, it's all hypothetical somewhat because we haven't gotten anywhere on either of those at this point. And should we just wait and continue to wait and see what's going to happen and see what's going to happen? I mean, if that doesn't work, maybe something down the road might happen. You know, I just don't know that we should continue to wait. I think that the TDC committee has spoken loud and clear that they would like to have a director that, that works directly for the BCC. And, and they explained why, the benefits of having that position. And obviously, it's been a very beneficial position in the past because we've, we've always had one. So why would we have always had one if we didn't need one? You know, I mean, that's a very important position. I don't know if there are any other counties that don't have a TDC director. I mean, I don't know. But I, I, I agree with Commissioner Curry in that I, I believe that rather than kicking the can down the road, I would like to see that we go ahead and, and, and start moving forward in the right direction and then discuss the organizational structure. But that, that's my feeling. So we, we already have a motion and a second on the floor.
One more question, please, please. What does the TDC board form and what do they do? Do they advise us?
They do.
Okay. And, and by telling them, nah, we don't think your decision is viable? Why do we need a TDC then? Well, if we're not going to listen to them, then it's a moot point.
Mr. Adkinson.
Sure, Tony, I was...
I'm sorry. Mr. Curry, go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were finning. What is the job, what is the primary job of the TDC council?
Well, the council's required to meet and they are required to adopt the tourist development plan that they presented to you that continues to review the expenditures and revenue from the tourist development trust and at least quarterly the expenditure reports that they receive from the government board about their use of their money. So their primary functions are establish the tourist development plan, which is how that money is going to be spent, which then does get approved by the board, and then to make recommendations to you regarding that plan and the expenditures thereon.
So their, their main job is financial oversight?
Yeah, well, the adoption of tourist development plan is beyond that. Their only going job month to month is, or quarter to quarter, is financial oversight. They do recommend tourist development plan for this board to do something that is inconsistent with that plan and requires a supermajority vote by state statute.
Commissioner Drake?
I would just say to Commissioner Curry respectfully, you have three votes openly and potentially five to establish an executive director. Three people have spoken in favor of it today, and all five have shown an interest. It, it seems like the conversation is positive that what we're discussing is the, the timeliness and the considerations of what's going on at the state level and then making it a part of the, of the budget process. You're almost there. It's just, I think it shows a little bit of fiscal prudence in working out the... This is what's so frustrating to me is that being a part of this board is there, there are things that are, that are enjoyable. But it's like, I'm, I'm trying to make contributions just like everybody else is making their contributions. But what I'm hoping to see, and Commissioner Curry, I think that sometimes you're, you're on the same page with me, is that in, in the past, and I'm not talking about with our current commissioners, but I mean, like, let's go back years and years and years, maybe decades ago, or maybe not decades ago, but a few short years. It seemed like the tendency was to spend and to work out the details later. And so what I'm trying to do is work out the details prior and then adequately spend. And I think that that's, that's what I'm hopeful in my contribution that I give to the board is that that's kind of how we establish our spending culture, is, is working out the details, being prudent, making, making all the necessary considerations, and then execute. It just, it bothers me to execute and then go back and, and try to figure out how to make it work. So, so what I see is you, you've got a goal with your motion is that you want to get the position established. You have three people that are on record that say that right now they agree. And then you have two others that say, hey, I don't disagree and are making positive comments. I mean, I think that's a, a signal that we're about to get where you want us to be.
I just, I mean, if, are we going to leave here knowing that we reestablished this position? No, anything can change in the next two months. We could have another vote during budget time, and there's no, there's no, you know, having a, a director at that point. So, I mean, if, if everybody wants to roll the dice for a few more weeks, I, I guess so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments from the audience? Anyone want to speak to this? Yes. Hi.
Hi, Tiffany Edwards. I am the treasurer for the TDC, and I'm the one who originally made this motion from the council to come before you. I'm also the newest member of the council. And as treasurer, I've been able to see a little bit more of how our spending is going. And I think that, to your point, Commissioner Drake, that we're spending and working out the details later at our level of the council. And so our staff is amazing, but there is so much more that is expected of them in the bandwidth. And we really need that strategic plan. Currently, we, and I know I mentioned this the last time, we're spending $125,000 with a strategic analysis that we will be having in the next month or so. And that will set us forward, and we'll be working through those pillars. But I would ask that, that we have an executive director to help follow through with those strategic initiatives and guide it. I would also say that an executive director could fulfill that strategic plan, should we have that in the future. I want to also make sure, you know, we have our budget workshop tomorrow. I'd ask for anyone to come and, and listen and participate as well. I do know, looking at what has been proposed for our budget that we'll be working through, is there not an opportunity that we could use some of our TDC money to pay for an executive director?
You, you will be. It'll be 100% from the TDC.
Okay. And so tomorrow, that, would we then potentially make that suggestion in the hopes that y'all would be reviewing that in July?
That would be correct. If that's what the board wishes to do.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I want to thank Commissioner Anderson and Gladwell for meeting with me. At our last meeting, you both, when asked, you both said that you'd be willing to meet with me. And you, you and your staff got me on the calendar very quickly, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
I, I, if I were in your position, I would suggest that tomorrow at your budget workshop, that you make sure that this position is added into that budget. Because that's the proper way to do this kind of stuff, is to you start with y'all and you put it in your budget, and then it goes down the process. So I would strongly recommend that tomorrow, y'all make a motion or, I don't know if you make a motion at a workshop, but I would strong...
That, that this will be their workshop to establish their budget.
I would strongly recommend you get it in.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Tabitha?
Tabitha Howard, H O W A R D. Yes, I was actually looking back. So it was May the 11th, 2021. I was here that day and spoke, actually. And I was shocked that Jay was fired. I was hoping, though, that things would be a little bit different with the budget. Because if y'all recall, at that time, they were going to build the great big $40 million thing. And then also, that's when we had learned with our, what we were spending on advertising. We were spending way too much. We didn't have to spend that much. The money could have gone elsewhere. But I was there that day, and I was upset. I actually left, and Donna, you called me to let me know, oh, my gosh, Mike just fired her. Or, you know, because that happened. Y'all had a break or something, and I just left the meeting. But he was fired that day, and, but we do need a director. And Mike Barker took over that position somewhat at that time. And I've, it got a little interesting because he had said that Clay, or Chaz, I'm sorry, Chaz, he wrote him, left him an email saying that he could be the director. We don't need that. We need a professional. We need someone with this experience, and we need a professional. And if it costs 200, 250, that's what we need.
Thank you.
Walton County needs it.
Thank you.
The other counties have a good director.
Ms. Harris?
First off, first off, I think $300,250 is absurd for an executive director. So that's the first thing I'm going to tell y'all. I don't think we ever paid, the last one we had, anywhere near that. And he did a good job till Mike Barker decided he didn't want him anymore. But my goodness, y'all are sitting up here, and y'all were just about to vote to have a $6 million golf tournament. And now we're saying, we don't know if we're even going to have any money. We don't know what the legislature's going to do. We don't know this. We don't know that. Before we could spend 300, which is an exorbitant amount for that job, but before we spend that, we've got to know we've got the money. But you weren't worried about where to get the damn money when you were going to spend $6 million? I mean, some of y'all haven't ever had to run a business and make a payroll. But I'm telling y'all, y'all need to listen to the experts of these people on the TDC board because they run businesses. They bring the bed tax money in. Without them, you're screwed on bed tax money. I mean, you don't have any bed tax money. The numbers are down this year, and they're getting worse every, every month. All right, June, we were all talking about, June looks awful. So before you do a golf tournament, before you say no to an executive director, what you need, you can't have a golf tournament without an executive director. And you need one in place that knows what they're doing if we have the money to have a golf tournament, if the, the governor doesn't decide to take all our TDC money. But y'all weren't worried about that on the golf tournament, that maybe he was going to take 75% of our money. You just now got worried about it.
I was.
I know.
Anyone else?
I actually wasn't referring to you. You'd make more sense today than anybody on the whole board, except Dan Hur. And Dan Curry, y'all are, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. And it is to wait until we have the budget meetings to determine whether or not we're going to add an executive director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so two and three, what?
Well, with items two and three, the whole thing, we'll just treat the whole thing as abated, is what we will do. So we, rather than taking separate motions, we'll treat the whole issue as abated.
Okay. All right, then we're at 33, and that is you, Ms. Radkinson.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. The next item on your agenda is me advising you, pursuant to Florida statute 286.011 sub 8, I'm in need of the board's advice concerning litigation strategy and the type of expenses to be incurred in trust clear at all the Walton County, the Walton County Circuit Court case number 2018 CA 057, formerly known as Weinshanker versus Walton County. The property owner, Weinshanker, is no longer the owner of that property. Rather, it is trust clear now. I am requesting we enter into an attorney-client session so that I may receive that advice. And I'm requesting approval to schedule and advertise a special meeting to hold that. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Next item's an update on our meeting procedures. I want to say thank you to the commissioners who have sent me their feedback regarding what they would like to see regarding meeting procedures, decorum matters, board participation, and public participation. We are at the point, though, where I'm either going to need to have the board give me direction today that you want me to assemble what I've received thus far and present you with a draft set of meeting procedures, which I am fine to do and certainly can do. But understand, I would be presenting you a document whole cloth that has been drafted with what has been, at this point, somewhat limited board input for you to consider at either a board meeting or a workshop. And then you would have that opportunity to digest and go back. Or alternatively, is this something where the board wants to schedule a workshop, talk through a variety of issues, and then I draft based on that? Or third, does the board just say, no, we want some more time to continue getting you information of what we would like to see from the variety of meeting procedures we use? Frankly, the easiest for me, of course, is for me to write something and present it back to you, and I'm glad to do that. But I also don't want to do that when I don't have full feedback from the board, nor do I want the public or anyone else to be confused that this is anything other than a starting point. Commissioner Drake, yes, sir?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You, you, you were answering my question as I was flagging you down over there. My suggestion would be put together a working draft, something that, you, you kind of know what everybody wants right now. If you put together a, a working draft and get it to each of us, then we can all mark it up. And then we can bring up our suggestions at, at, at a formal meeting. And then maybe we can hash it out with one another and then figure out how to blend together all of our ideas and then just pass out one, one big, one big beautiful piece of legislation.
Good, glad to do that. Under your policy, technically, staff's not supposed to whole cloth draft documents without your permission. That's why I'm asking. So if there are no objections, that's fine. I will say, and I do want, whether you want me to do it or whether you want to have some comments on this, Madam Chair. The chair and I have spoken about some of this. And I'm not going to single out any individuals that we've spoken to with commissioners, staff, or otherwise. But some of the suggestions that have been brought up actually are already in our current rules. And so in talking to the chair, I, I don't know that it might not be helpful if I cede some of my time under this item to either let you or if you want me to comment on it, comment on some of the rules that are already in our existing policies that, or in our existing meeting procedures that may already be there but not have been necessarily followed at all times previously. Did you want to talk about that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I would like to talk about that. Thank you.
I'll turn it to her, and that's all I had on that item. Thank you for the direction.
I, I did send a few items in and, and am very open to other options and different procedure policy, things like that. But I wanted the, you all to know that I know there's been a lot of concern about whether or not you all have the opportunity to speak to the board. And so just to reconfirm that, yes, in fact, at the very beginning of the meeting, we always offer the opportunity. If you're not going to be here and you want to speak on something, you have the opportunity to speak then. Also, if, once an agenda item comes forth and you have a motion and a second, and only once you have a motion or, and, and a second... At the end of the meeting, there's another opportunity for you to speak as well, up to three minutes again. And you also have the citizens' request, which you can work with admin, and you can upload your, your documents, and that is not a question and answer period, it's not a time to come up and ask us questions, it's, it's a point where you can come up and you can tell us what your issues are and what your concerns are, and that way, staff will know that, what they need to research, because they're not going to know right away what you're, you know, what you're wanting, and it's really not fair to put them on the spot like that. So you come and you tell us what it is that you want us to know, and then, staff, or we will get back with you after the information is obtained. Also, I wanted to let you know that, when you come up to the podium, once you relinquish the podium, once you leave the podium, it's policy that, that you don't come back to the podium, not on that item. You wait, if there's another item coming up, that you can come up to the podium on the, on another item. But when, once you leave the podium, you, you've relinquished the podium. So those are the basic rules. There really aren't any changes, it's just, I, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. Nothing different, it's just that, we, you know, we're all on the same page. So those are the, the basic rules, as far as what you all and the opportunities that you have to speak to us. And at, you know, if there's a time when you're speaking for a group of people, and you request to have a little bit longer than the three minutes, that's, that's an option too. It doesn't mean that you naturally automatically get 10 minutes, it means you get up to 10 minutes, and, and that's based on whoever the chairs at the time, what they're authorizing. So hopefully, that helps, and, and you know that you do have plenty of opportunity in these meetings to speak. So that's all I've got on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item's item 35. That's an update on county ordinance, county administrator ordinance and confirmation process. Because in this case, you have previously given me direction to draft a document and bring something back based on the prior things we've done, I will be providing each of you a working draft copy. Your copies are highlighted, there's yellow highlighting in there. I am welcome, of course, to any and all feedback you wish to give me about any part of it. But the parts I've highlighted for your convenience, board members, are the areas that I need the most feedback on, and so please, try to prioritize that to me. With that being said, to give every one of you enough time to review it, get with me, determine, do we need to talk about it before there being a full public hearing for adoption? The ask I have for you today is to give me permission to schedule and advertise a public hearing for adoption at the second meeting in June for the ordinance. That'll give me enough time to get it advertised. You'll come out of here with over 30 days to have seen this and talk about it, and then, if we need to continue it, we can continue it to a date certain at our first meeting in June. But that's what my initial request is, let me go and get this thing advertised. If you want to hold off, I think there's ample time, though, based on what's included in here, to discuss this matter, and discuss how these processes would work. So you will have a working draft today, but I do need permission to start the advertising process for a meeting, and if you want it to be your first meeting in July, I'm fine with that, too.
Motion to get legal the authority to schedule a public hearing and make it the last meeting in July, which would be the South Walton meeting in June, not July.
We can do either one.
Which one did you say?
I said June, but I said you could go to the first meeting in July, if you prefer.
I'd rather the second meeting in Ju- June, which would be the South Walton meeting in June.
Yeah. Second half.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to bring that back to the second meeting in June down here at this location. Any comments, Commissioner Drake?
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Atkinson, could, could you put together a draft, and, and I may be out here on an island by myself, but my, what I envision in the confirmation process would be like, very simplistic, that maybe it works something like the consent agenda, or, or where, once the, the county manager has made the decision to hire someone, then it's automatic, like it would be a consent item, unless a commissioner wanted to put a hold on it. So kind of, you know how it works in the US Senate, if one senator has an objection, they can place a hold on that nomination, and then they have their, they have their time to work that issue out. So we might could create some efficiencies if we went very simplistically, went down that road very simplistic, with a simplistic approach of, if the, if the hiring decision is a no-brainer, there's no controversy, it's been vetted through HR, whatever, then it just, it happens, it comes on the consent agenda, and there's no problems, it's just automatic. But any commissioner that wants to place a hold on that person, they can place a hold, and then it, then the meeting is formalized, and then they can state their objections, whether we do it in executive session, or, or whether we do it, we can't do it openly, right?
Well, we can't do it in executive session, but I'll tell you this, I think you'd be very happy when you look at section 2-17 on page six, rolling into page seven, of what I'm going to hand y'all when you leave the meeting today. I'll skim it briefly, because it's not that long, it's one single section, so I think I've captured the gist of what you're saying with what I'm already proposing for the confirmation process, and that is for all positions requiring confirmation by the Board of County Commissioners. And by the way, that's a big thing I need your input on, is who will be subject to confirmation, we'll take that up at a later date. The county administrators shall cause to be advertised, consistent with all rules, policies, and procedures of the county, a job posting for said position with all standard hiring practices to be followed, unless a specific hiring process is established by this board. So for instance, you create the TDC executive director position, and you want the TDC council to participate as a screening committee, as it had dur- during the last executive director hire, in that case, that will be a different process. Who those department heads will be, but everybody gets a copy when they leave today, so we'll be back in June if this motion passes.
Okay, I'd just like to say that I, I personally don't like the idea of the department heads being on the consent agenda. I think it's something that needs to be confirmed by the board. In Escambia County, their county administrator selects employees and supervises all personnel, fills all vacancies, positions, or employment of all departments under the jurisdiction of the board, other than the office of the county attorney. Provided, however, the employment of all deputy county administrators, assistant county administrators, and department heads shall require confirmation by the board, so they do also the assistant county administrator and the deputy county administrator. And most, from what I have found, most other counties do have, have them confirmed by the board, so I, I just don't think that we need to have them on the consent agenda.
This is confirmation, I do want to be clear, and by the way, I have spoken to numerous other counties, I think you'll be happy to read paragraph 11 on page five, which reads nearly verbatim to what you just read.
Okay.
I liberally plagiarized from Escambia and similar other counties. What I would say, though, is, in talking to numerous other counties, the issue has been, if everybody on the board tells the administrator, hey, we like this person, great, get him approved, that feedback is happening outside of a board meeting, it potentially becomes a sunshine issue, does it go on the consent agenda or not? So the best guidance in talking to a number of other local governments I've received is to write it in, that it can be a consent agenda approval, and then, just like every other item, a board member can say, look, I'm not comfortable with this person, I want to pull it off and talk about it. But for ones where nobody has a problem, your confirmation is by consent agenda, the board, though, has that opportunity, when those positions come up, to determine whether they wish to do the interviews or not. What I would say is, I think the danger you get into, that some of our better labor law practitioners have cautioned me with, is what happens if the board doesn't participate in interviews, and then gets into what is a quasi-interview in a public meeting after the fact? It creates a lot of liability that we want to avoid. So I want you to be clear, the idea of the consent agenda is not to eliminate the confirmation process, it's only to streamline it when there is not a concern for the proposed hire, after the board has had a chance to vet it. And, and I do, in my recollection, after, and I've talked to several in Escambia, that they have done consent agenda approvals for certain hires in the past. They don't do it for everybody, I want to be clear, but when I directly asked that question, the answer I got was, I recall us doing those on some, so. This gives you the flexibility and the option at the board level.
It'll be interesting to read what you've got there. Thank you very much.
I think you'll find it matches up very similar to what you're looking at.
Okay. All right. That's it.
I need a, I just need the vote.
Okay. Any comments from the audience?
This is just scheduling the public hearings, though.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have, and we have no public hearings today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Melissa, are you going to present?
Providing that our little, uh, didn't mess up.
This is about a, a rescue device that, Melissa, originally, when I first got elected, came and talked to me about, and then Dave came and saw me, and then I went and saw it at the Freeport merchants' meeting, so I, I felt this was something that we could bring before the board. It's all yours.
Good morning, afternoon, sorry. Melissa Ward, and just so that we cover this, our presentation, I hope y'all can see it as well. So Rotary Club, most of you are aware, Rotary International is that, it's an international association, meant to, in all of the communities around the world, do some good, right? That's basically what we do. In Walton County, we have several Rotary Clubs. We have a Rotary Club of Pheonix Springs, that president is Carrie Schofield, she wasn't able to be with us today. And in mid-central area, we have Mid Bay Bridge Rotary Club, the president is Michelle Jananzo, I don't think I pronounced that right, but she is, she also was not able to attend, but Mr. Underwood is in that club, and he is with us today, and he has been helping, to be clear, he has been pushing and pushing and pushing on this endeavor as much as anyone, and maybe more so. And I, Melissa Ward, I'm the president of the Rotary Club of South Walton. And what we, I'm trying to get this to, do I just push the button? Maybe I do a side off. Okay. So is it a, this button or the center? Never mind, I figured it out. Sorry, I'm mistaken. So Rotary Club is, our endeavor here today is a district-wide event, meaning that District 60, 6940 is proposing this all along the coast, coast of the Gulf. And the clubs that are also, or the other locations where this has already been brought up, Escambia County, now these sub-tabs on this is not, they are, just those locales. In Escambia County, it means that Escambia County, as well as Navarre, Perdido Key, and Pensacola, have agreed to the installation. Bay County, Panama City Beach, agreed to the installation. Okaloosa County and Destin, as separate entities, agreed to the installation. Eglin is also working with the endeavor as well, and then Walton County, that's you all, and then the city of Freeport, just a few weeks ago, agreed that we could install them at the locations where they have swimming, so lakes and rivers and such. Our request to you, as we go through this presentation, is remember, what we're asking for is a collaboration to allow us to install these at locations where people are in the water. The Rescue Tube Foundation specific, their goal, of course, is just to save lives, this is what this is all about, and it's worldwide, and it's an endeavor that started in Hawaii. And so, it's hard for me to read that, I'm going to have to read for mine, if you don't mind. The reason that we do this, what is our motivation to have these placed on our local beaches and lakes and areas? There are an estimated 236,000 drowning deaths per year, year worldwide. Drowning is the third leading cause of unintentional deaths year, worldwide. Attempting a water rescue is dangerous for both the person who's attempting to save the life, as the person who's drowning himself. And the large expanses of beach of Florida are largely unprotected. Now, we do have some lifeguards at certain areas, but it's not the whole 26 miles. And drowning is the number one cause of death in children between the ages of one and four. Number one. So in 2022, there were 464 accidental drowning deaths in Florida. So these are all numbers that most people, we don't talk about them a lot, and we don't talk about them because it's, well, because it's sad and it's upsetting, but we do talk about it in, in terms of life safety. The facts of this particular product, the, behind the rescue tubes, there are 600-plus rescue tubes stationed in the US and Canada. There are 200-plus known rescues using the tubes. All of the known rescues were successful, and none of them include, had any injury to the person who's doing the rescue. That's important, because you, you would be surprised to know, there's a lot of people who are, they go out, like something happens, you, as a concerned citizen, you might go out into the water to try to help them, but if you're in an undertow area, you could just as well drown as they could. In the process of saving a life, if you have training in this, they'll tell you, there's a certain way to do it and a certain way not to do it, be careful, because they're fighting for their life, so they could hurt you in the process. By using the rescue tube, you decrease that, and what they've shown is that, that they're not getting injured while they're trying to save these lives, and they're having better I didn't bring the entire story about Hawaii, but there's a beautiful article, if you guys want to have us back, we'll prevent, present you with that article to read on your own time, so that you can discuss it, it's amazing what they've done. It's 25 years of history and study on this particular item, starting in Hawaii. After 25 years of working with these tubes, they have data that show that this is very successful. This is what the PR system looks like. I'm going to ask David to kind of give you the heads up on this. This is the flotation device, obviously, strapped to a pole. Easily, anybody could use it. The sign is identifier, plus it has information, emergency information. It has a long cord on it, so you can throw it out to the person, ask them to grab it. At the end of this presentation, I'm going to show you a clip from Fox News, where in Gulf Breeze, it saved a life just recently, this was just aired, that's at the end, it's about 16 seconds. 25 years of data before and after the installation of the PRTs in Hawaii, no reduction in rescuer deaths in the areas without PRTs, and 100% reduction in rescuer deaths in areas where PRTs. So where they had other options, and people were out there trying to save lives, those numbers of the rescuer being injured or, or dying, is the same, but where they had the PRTs, was a 100% reduction. So the project plan, to put it out in full scale, the city of Freeport has voted for us to allow the, to allow us to install them in their locations. These were, this was done when they had a presentation at the FMA meetings, the Merchants' Association meetings, and they were, part of the presentation was about having business owners sponsor a PRT. So a sponsor, the installation of a PRT is $245. The installation and a maintenance for about five years is $500 total, not maintenance plus 245, but this total will be $500. So they're getting sponsorships from businesses, Rotary Clubs all over the district are getting sponsorships for these. We are also having fundraisers. If we, so our position here today is to ask you for permission to be able to put these on the beach, and to put them on the bay, and to put them anywhere anybody's getting in the water, so even a coastal dune lake, close to a boardwalk, in case there's an urgent situation. We request the permission, and then we work with staff to find the right location, and how we, and where, we're going to map it out, so it's very clear. And then, we are, so the Rotary Club grants that we get through Rotary International, we are a hands-on institution. We put our people to work, we put them together, and then, because of, I believe it was the fire department's requirement, they need to be installed by personnel that's under the county commission, but we put them together, and then we maintain them, all right? That's important for us, because it's part of our hands-on project. The PRT system, we are presenting it to the Community Associations Institute, and within the next month, I hope, we're still trying to get on their agenda, to be able to also address this problem on private beaches where HOAs are in control. So this is to, our goal is to cover all the access points along the 26 miles of Walton County, okay? So I just want to make sure that was clear. The cost, as you can see on your screen, one of the, it breaks down to the cost of a 12-foot, 4x4 vinyl sleeve and cap, the sign itself, the hardware and the straps, and then the tube, and so the total apparatus is $245. This is a little bit, there's a lot of- the sign itself, the hardware and the straps, and then the tube. And so the total apparatus is two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. This is a little bit, there's a lot of information there. I went through the TDC's beach access site. Regional beach accesses, there are nine. At two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, or I'm sorry, at the total five-hundred, it's four-thousand dollars. The neighborhood beach access is forty-eight of them. There, at the total five-hundred dollars, it's twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty. I rounded up to five-hundred. And the bay and lake access, eleven access points, again, forty-eight, ninety-five. But at the sixty-eight locations for just the installation is sixteen-thousand-six-hundred. Now, that's not the accurate number and I'll tell you why. The sixty-eight locations includes the areas where there are lifeguards, where we have been asked not to do that. So we will exclude those. Our goal is to start with your regional beach accesses, the nine first, and then work through the list. Okay? So where does our funding come from? Again, our funding comes from, we have a, we're preparing a Rotary International grant and these are, we can do a district-wide grant or we can do an individual club grant. St. Joe grant application, we hope to have prepared and get a meeting with them in the next thirty days. We met with them last time, but we missed the deadline to submit for that. And then business sponsorships, as I mentioned, any business could do a sponsorship and they could have a logo on the sign that says, you know, that they like hand-earned all did. And the last one, I believe, was brought up in a prior meeting. This is not one that I was aware of before, but somebody had suggested possibly the Recreation Fund. That's if you guys wanted to make a donation for a particular area or whatever. That is not one that I'm familiar with on how that works, so I'm gonna address that unless you wanna discuss it at a later date. That is not, does not have to be discussed today. Today, we are not asking for money, just to be clear. So the maintenance and information, it's important to note that Rotary Club, again, is a hands-on club. In addition to that, our goal is to have other people, especially our youth, our high schoolers, to be working in their public and their community. It helps them and it helps us and it helps them grow up and understanding to give back is a central part of our human life, okay? So we have the district who, and in the communities like Destin, they go out, they've already got some out and they go out and they have a plan to regularly visit them and check on them, make sure they're okay. And we will do the same. Now, we will be asking for membership volunteers, that our club is very small. We are, my past president, her name was, her name is Barb Herman, and she's fantastic. She says, "We are small but mighty." So what we do is we put out the word to friends of Rotary and ask them, "Volunteer for this particular day of the month and we'll get you on the schedule to run through the project." We are, our goal is to have thirty volunteers by the end of this year who rotate, looking, just going out there, making sure it's still there and then reporting back to us. We will be able to report to you that particular process or to whoever you designate as the person we would communicate with, should you vote to let us install these on the beach. So the maintenance, and this again, I liberally stole this from Dion Moniz, who is our area governor. He's out of Destin and Herondale. Member checks on the PRTs every four to six weeks and prior to a major storm's influx, and we know Memorial Day was gonna be big, we would've done that before Memorial Day got here. And after a significant storm, to ensure it hasn't been washed away or anything hasn't happened. Signage provides contact number and citizens to call and report damaged stations. And then annual working party for larger repairs in case we have to do a certain section that has to be completed. This is what our sign looks like. Everyone for, of course, instead of saying Destin, it'll say South Walton or Freeport or Mid Bay Bridge. So funding is our largest gap at the moment, but we are working steadily to have sponsorships and to work with St. Joe and other entities in order to be able to fund the first ten PRTs for South Walton. That's my flow, we're trying to get ten funded, okay? And if we can't do it by having somebody give sponsorships or some other method, we'll do several fundraisers. So we have that money to be able to fund the first ten. We're submitting a grant with St. Joe in approximately a month, which I told you, we're scheduling our meeting with CAI. That's our other obj, objective, and to get them interested in doing the private beaches. Now, thi, I don't know how to do this part, could y'all turn that on? This is a sixteen-minute video of what I was trying to tell you about the, next one. Oh, this will be, I don't know if it's gonna work.
It sounds like a great plan, I mean, it's almost a no-brainer because it's safety and saving lives is, you know.
Update to an incredible story we first told you about here on Fox Ten yesterday. A teenage girl caught a rip current on Pensacola Beach when fisherman Andrew Smith attached a life preserver to his fishing rod. He flew it out to her and ultimately saved her life. That scary yet powerful moment on your screen captured by beach lover Robert Nae. Now, get this, that yellow flotation device was one of several life preservers scattered on Pensacola Beach, all donated by the Gulf Breeze Rotary Club. According to the Rotary's website, volunteers installed five new rescue tube stations along the beach on April fifteenth. And exactly one month later, one of those tubes fulfilled their mission to prevent the unthinkable. Now, the Rotary's took to social media today after the rescue, saying, quote, "These bright yellow tubes placed along our beaches are more than just equipment, they're lifelines." And according to the Rotary's website, they plan on installing more devices on Pensacola Beach in the future.
Wow.
So what do you need from us?
Permission. Permission.
Motion to get permission.
We have a motion and a second.
I do have something to say, though.
Go ahead.
And maybe Clay can help me on this, too. If it comes to a point where the donations aren't coming in, what would we have to do to maybe take some of the vending money that we have been collecting to maybe put towards some of this?
That's as simple as giving direction for that as part of this budget or giving Melissa direction to bring back a budget amendment to spend it because we're segregating those funds as it is right now.
Okay.
Or we could use our plat fees, correct Devon?
I do not believe that direct plat fee fund would be appropriate for this expenditure.
Yeah, I think, let me say this.
Even if it's at a park?
Well, so here's the concern. If we use it for this as a standalone expenditure, probably not. Now, were it part of an overall park improvement and they add in a station for these that's not necessarily what they're proposing, then very well it could be, but this by itself probably is not gonna get us to where we need to be for rec plat fees. I'm never gonna say it couldn't be included in part of an overall park rehab or refurbish or a new park build, but for right now, those would be my big concerns with it as well.
But those funds that we're collecting for the vending, would have to be no problem.
I see no problem with that.
Okay, wonderful.
You good with that Devon?
We have a motion and a second, any comment from the audience? Ms. Harris, please come to the, please come up.
Suzanne Harris, Florida. I'm interested in getting some for Edgewater and Edgewater paying for it, but I need to ask you a question. What do we do when these crazy kids are on spring break and they're running up and down the beach stealing them every night? Who pays to replace them? Cause I, you know, or do we, you know, I'm afraid of the liability and that's one thing I'd wanna ask Clay. If we took them in, like when our, we don't have lifeguards, we have beach attendants, cause all they do is serve chairs. So if we took them in at night and then some kid got in at seven o'clock and we didn't have the tube there, Clay, would we get sued? I mean, that's my only problem.
You're probably get-
Cause Edgewater would need, we have three-hundred-and-sixty feet of beach, so we'd need two or three. But I just, I just have a few questions.
You're probably getting sued either way is the short answer in that scenario. Would this increase your liability?
I'd rather the sue be than the sue are.
What I, what I would say is, would this increase or decrease your liability? I would be more concerned with, once you put them there, what your insurer has to say about your obligation to maintain them and during what periods of time than I would pure legal liability.
Okay, y'all don't have any information on people that have had them at condos that get stolen?
I do not today. I'll do some research.
Check into that, Melissa.
Yes, ma'am.
Shipman's got my number, won't you?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
How much did you say a sponsorship costs?
Well, the, the tube itself, the, to build it, to create it, it's two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And you add another two-hundred dollars for maintenance for the first five years because the parts are so cheap. So four-hundred-and-forty-five, we've rounded up to five-hundred, have a little wiggle room.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll sponsor one.
Thank you, absolutely, we appreciate it and we'll take it.
I'll have to bring a check by your office, I don't have my check with me.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And we wanna thank you very much for hearing us, we appreciate your time, thank you so much.
It was very interesting, very, very interesting. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very, very much, appreciate your work on this, it's great, great presentation.
You gonna be here a little bit?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, we've been moved to the last of the agenda, I'm here with Mr. Shipman, I'll be here.
Melissa.
Yes, sir.
Call me tomorrow and remind me, okay, to get you that check.
Yes, sir, I won't forget, sir, thank you.
I know you won't.
Okay, Mr. Curry.
All right, just wanted to kinda get an update on the Eagle Springs phase building maintenance, or the maintenance building, where we're at. I did notice that an item was taken off and that was one of my items that I wanted to speak about, was the addition, additional work for the engineering plans that were gonna cost in excess of twenty thousand dollars. And I talked to Stan and staff on that on Thursday and I'm glad that you guys worked that out to where we're gonna do that internally now. I think, I really think that's gonna be a benefit. We, we ask Public Works to do stuff in-house, we ask Parks and Rec to do stuff in-house, everybody does it. So I, I think this is great on the engineering part, especially when I'm looking at some budget numbers and, you know, we've spent fifteen million dollars or going to at the end of four years. And if we have some of these little maintenance building projects that we can do internally, that would be outstanding. So I just wanted to see, Matt, were you okay to give like a little update on where we're at?
Commissioner Curry, can I just interfere for just a second? Not knowing if we're going to vote, vote on this.
No, this is an update.
Okay, cause I turned in the proper paperwork.
Oh, yeah, no, this is just an update.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the project, so the project is ready to go out to bid from a procurement standpoint. During the process to get it ready, was determined that the sewer design, sewer connection design needed to be updated, which meant we had to go back to the engineering firm to ask for a change order on what the cost would be, so we got that. And then last week, Mr. Sunday had asked Chance to take a look over that change order and see if it's something that we might could do in-house and that's what, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna do it in-house, probably do the connection itself in-house construction, which would eliminate the need for us to go back out to the engineering company for a change order. So I will know more tomorrow about how long it will take or if we even need to get that sewer connection redesign done in-house before we put it out to bid. But it's ready to go from a procurement standpoint.
Yeah, just, and I know, me and Commissioner Gladwell laughed, I don't know, it was a couple meetings ago on how fast government works. But, you know, we started this in April of, what, twenty-one, twenty-two? And this is the frustration part on my end, that we've, we're gonna be spending up near a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and we haven't put a shovel in the ground yet. And it's, and primarily, we could have done this, and I asked Mr. Stan, we could have done this in-house to begin with. And I hope in the future that we can take some of these smaller projects that are for us, you know, be it, I don't know, a sidewalk, a maintenance building, we can start doing some of those things in-house to maybe, you know, kinda curb our budget a little bit and tighten the belt and maybe move ahead the process a little bit quicker, that's all. Because I brought this up in November with all these numbers and everything that I asked everybody to bring me back and then we've had meetings after meetings and, and, you know, I wasn't included and I guess I don't have to be included. But now those things have changed and now we're on a different direction and I'm just curious at where we're gonna land at the price and if we're even gonna be able to afford an ADA park or a basketball court or volleyball, sand volleyball. I mean, it's been, what, eight, nine months later and, you know, this is where we're at. I mean, we're no further than we were in November. That, I just wanna express my frustrations and maybe Mr. Gladwell's right, you know, that's just the speed of government. I don't, I don't like for that to be the answer, so.
Do you think you're frustrated with this?
I'm sure you've got some more.
We've been on this since 2021 and hadn't turned a shovel yet. And I asked Mr. Supple a while ago, did I need to come out there with my shovel? Cause we need to get on with it. But, and I, I would just say, just as, as we're looking towards budget, these projects could be done in-house if we had crews. And facilities maintenance has got a second construction crew tentatively in the budget and I would suggest y'all, since I can say it and without getting in sunshine problems, I suggest everybody look at it because there is a lot of stuff we could get done a lot quicker and a lot cheaper if we do it in-house. But to do it in-house, you gotta have bodies.
Oh, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
I would encourage y'all, when you're looking at the proposed budget, to look carefully.
I gotcha. And that's all I wanted, I just kinda wanted to know where we're at. I mean, is there any way we can throw a snowball from here and hit something to where we know where we're gonna be at in six months? Four months, three months? You said you put it out for bid, so what is that, what is that process?
It's ready to go out for bid, I think it's what, thirty days?
Yeah, one of the things that we discovered is when the engineer record designed it, in our opinion, it was overdesigned. And so we've got two options. We can either put it out to bid with some alternates, such that we can change the interior design at construction and control costs that way. Or some of our staff can make those changes to, to, to the design itself, removing some of the bathrooms, removing some of the interior design, if you will. So that's kinda where we're at right now, not to mention the sewer connection.
It's just, you know, when I look at a maintenance building, I'm looking at maybe a couple offices, an eye-wash station, you know, a couple restrooms and that's it. I mean, you're talking three-hundred thousand dollars for some trim work on the inside. I don't think we need, you know, crown molding and, so.
Yeah, so we decided internally that our staff is gonna make those changes to the, to the plans.
Crown molding.
Probably faster and cheaper.
Well, I mean, that's three-hundred thousand dollars of internal.
It seemed like it was kind of a runaway project there, so I'm glad.
Well, I just, I just wanted an update, I wanna know where we're at. I mean, a lot of people, when I put this out there, especially with the ADA facility, Mr. Gladwell said he'd second it or vote for it if we added some volleyball stuff. So I figured I wanted to give him an update on, we're just volleyball and pickleball and all that stuff, so.
And unfortunately, we need to see what the cost of the building is so we can see what we have left.
We did promise people several years ago now that we would put basketball, tennis and volleyball courts out there. And, you know, that promise, I still hold that promise to be in effect. Silly man.
So we can-
Keep that under control.
And pickleball.
Yes, yep. All right, so I mean, that's, I guess I can ask you guys or keep updating every month or two, see where we're at. Hopefully, it's a shovel in the ground soon. I'm ready for my next one, there was no motion or direction. Okay. Next one. All right, I was at, at the meeting, obviously, a couple weeks ago and it kinda bugged me that, not really bugged me, it caught my, caught me in question that we don't provide public parking for private entities. So this property came to mind, but I didn't have any of this at the time, so I didn't wanna, wanna make sure I, I got my facts straight as one commissioner had already told me before. So I went and got some maps, I went and went out there myself and looked. My whole thing on this, at bare minimum, we at least need to have some kind of home har, home, hold harmless or a liability agreement between these restaurants and the public parking that we built on county land to, I guess, to help out with their overflow. We have, you can scoot the, these light posts are not ours. These, these black posts that have the bulbs in them are not ours. Uh, we have, you can scoot the, uh, these light posts are not ours, these, these black posts that have the bulbs in them are not ours. Uh, these rope lights going through our trees are not ours, there's a light that's going across the sidewalk. Um, like I said, I know I'm a tall guy, but that light bulb is right at my head. Um, and the way they fixed that was they wrap it around one of the black light, and I, when I say we, it wasn't the county, this is, this is a private entity. Um, this is the pole right across from that, um, light pole and the sidewalk, right next to the sidewalk. I don't think any of this would pass anybody's code, but I could be wrong. Um, I just think there's a lot of liability here, and, uh, here's a good picture right here, you got the upper socket that don't even have a light bulb in it, so it just collects water. Uh, both bulbs are busted, now this is on county property. Um, so, and the extension cord you see around the top is what's holding the lights going across the sidewalk. So, if we scroll on up a little bit more, this cable is hanging out of the ground, I don't know where it leads, but it goes into the ground. Scroll up a little bit more, these are, we, the county put in these, um, parking stops, these concrete stops, so, roughly when I was out there, I don't know, I've been out there four or five times, just to look at the, the flow and how the, and how the people park, you could roughly get about eighteen parking spots out of there, uh, more if it's unorganized. Here's the unorganized, uh, portion, um, poor guy won't be getting out for a little while. Um, but, and here's an entrance that I'm not sure who paid for, I've asked, I've asked, but I haven't got a response yet from staff, who paid for that entrance, that paved entrance that goes through the county property onto the, uh, private property that's in the back. Uh, I can scroll on a little bit more, and one of my concerns when I met staff out there along with the business owner was I was afraid that some of these big limbs with moss and everything else on them, and these wires would fall and hit someone or something. I go out there the next day, and here's the limb within ten feet of that truck, and you can barely see the sidewalk right there on the, on the left. Um, keep on going, here is the property line, if you look to the left, that's the private entity property, to the right is ours. Um, I just made that makeshift arrow, there's another survey stake with an orange at the end of that arrow, so everything on the right side is county-owned maintained parking for these two facilities. You can scroll up a little bit more. Uh, here, this is the area that I'm talking about, uh, the top picture is the, the property in question. And, and on the, this is, I don't know, kinda strange, but it also shows across the street that we own an acre um, of easement over there as well, I, I've been told that that's wrong, but, uh, scroll on up. Um, like I said, the cone is where the parking is, and you can see that the two establishments, there's nothing else that people would park there and go do, other than really going to the restaurant, I'd say ninety-five percent of the people go to the restaurants that are there. Uh, we put a crosswalk in, we put sidewalks in, yeah, you can scroll on, that's the same one, just showing the, all right? And those are, that's the, the two properties that that entrance leads to. So, I'm not sure how this person would get to those properties if we didn't put that, um, entrance in. Now, I'm asking these questions because I'm concerned with the liability portion of all this. I don't think it would ask too much to have the, the person remove the pole that's on county property with that modern art masterpiece and put it on his property, and take the lighting and, uh, all the streetlight lamping that's private off a county property. And I talked to Stan, and I talked to, um, a few other ones out there, we put in, I think Chance was out there, we put in via Chelco three lights along that sidewalk, since we did put that in, it is a safety concern, those little, those little wannabe light bulbs don't work a whole lot, so, I'm, I'm, basically, I guess I'm, I'm asking Clay, um, how can we, I don't know, make an agreement of some sort to, to make sure all his stuff is on his property, and if we, if he wants to continue to use that parking area, that we have some kind of hold harmless or a cert, or us being on his cert?
So, certainly, uh, the board and the past has done right-of-way agreements, I think everything you're describing could be part of a right-of-way agreement. Uh, I don't believe one exists on this parcel, so it would not be reinventing the wheel to adopt one, if that's what the county wants us to do. In terms of your liability, of course, you do have limited liability under Florida sovereign immunity, which limits the total exposure that anyone can claim against the government, um, relative to that, Florida's parking lot laws and liabilities generally work the same for privately-held property and publicly-owned property, or at least governmentally-owned property, I should say. So, I mean, certainly two people getting into an accident there, if they just back into each other, that doesn't pass through to the private property owner or us in most cases, doesn't mean somebody may not try. In terms of the location of utilities, certainly, um, location of utilities and right-of-way is not at all uncommon, but I think you, as you indicated, met with the business owner out there. Uh, I believe there is a willingness to have these conversations about what it would look like to bring as much of that into conformity with what you're proposing as possible, so, based on those conversations, what you've told me, if it is the direction and guidance of the board, we can do that. The board would ultimately need to approve those agreements if they are entered into.
I mean, I, I like the aspect of having some kind of agreement, um, you know, I'm gonna take the parking away from, from the guy, um, but I, I don't like the way it is right now, the way it's set up. Um, it's a madhouse out there, you can't even get into the public parking area, or our easement parking, whatever name you wanna call it. Um, I just think an agreement would be nice to have, and then also just have his electrical items put on his property, and then we can add the three Chelco lights along the sidewalk at our expense for safety reasons.
If that, if that's the direction, staff will be glad to meet with the property owner and bring back right-of-way agreement that covers all that, if that's what the board is comfortable with.
I, I, I'm okay with that, but I would, I mean, Mr. Blue's here, so let's call him up and ask him, it's fine with me.
Thank you. For the record, Lloyd Blue, uh, I am the property owner, uh, of both properties that we're talking about. Commissioner Curry, I have to tell you, I'm a little bit disappointed in you, you know? Um, uh, we met out on the site, and we discussed a number of things. And so, I, I noticed that most of the things that you and I talked about, as far as, uh, issues that, uh, would disagree with your presentation just now, weren't mentioned, but let's back up for just a second. Number one, uh, in twenty-ten, when the county needed to buy this property in order to do the right-of-way, they couldn't make a deal to do it, I bought the property and then sold the county the property for the right-of-way improvements that DOT required in order to put a traffic light there, at no profit to me. And so, the county has a narrow strip of right-of-way, that property, when it was purchased, was limited to right-of-way and right-of-way only. And just like all the other right-of-way in this county, unless the county has made a determination that there's a safety factor, the public is allowed to park on it. And as I told you when we met out there, the, the county has seven parking spaces that they improved, I have over two hundred. I can assure you that my businesses don't need the county parking. What that parking does do is in the mornings, uh, since our, uh, patrons don't come there until eleven o'clock, the ma, the majority of that space is used by either mothers carpooling or workers carpooling. And so, those seven spaces that the county has, which, by the way, I didn't ask the county to improve those seven parking spaces. Those parking spaces that are improved on the county's narrow strip there were approved by this county commission in August of twenty-ten as part of a two-stage, uh, plan to improve that intersection. The driveway that's in there, the only parcel of property, when Chad Holly was paved, the only private property that didn't have the driveway into their property paved by the county was this piece. I didn't ask for it to be paved, the county approved it in their twenty-ten, uh, uh, improvement agreement to pave it. Didn't ask for it, it only like, uh, uh, is a driveway like everybody else on Chad Holly that was done. So, you know, uh, it, it was nothing that we asked to do. You make it sound like, doing that presentation, that suddenly something is going on that, uh, you know, for the benefit of me and my property. I didn't ask for it, the county designed it, the county built it, the county put it there. It will not matter to my businesses if those seven parking spaces go away, but what will matter is the mothers that meet there and carpool at seven o'clock in the morning, the drivers that come down and move and do that. As I told you that day when we met, do a survey any day that you wanna do that survey, and there'll be more than seven parking spaces within my two hundred that are not being used by people that are going to the restaurants. They are being used by the public for their own needs, they go to the park from there, they leave there to ride their bicycles there, they go forward. Utilities in the right-of-way, when that, this property was purchased in twenty-ten, that power pole was already there. Utilities all over this county are in there. If you wanna look for another example of lighting on county property paid for by the owners, you need to look no further than Seaside, all of that lighting, you know, in Seaside, that's in the right-of-way, is paid for by them. But it's in the county right-of-way, and so this is no different. The parking that's there is no different, the county ordinance says that you can park in the county, it doesn't say you cannot, it doesn't say you can park in the right-of-way, what it says is that the county will designate areas where you can't park. And it's specifically in ordinance twenty-two, uh, ten, uh, twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash seven says that if you're on a two-lane road, you can park along the road, but you have to be sixteen inches from your wheel to the curb. It says that in areas that the county has designated that it's unsafe to park there, you can't park there. So, all in South Walton, people are parking, you know, in the right-of-way, and they're following the county ordinances, just like we are following there. Let's go back to you, you talking about the lights and the safety issue. Those, those lights are not put up just being hung by the strings that they're on. There are stainless steel cables wrapped around the different, uh, uh, trees in order to not damage the trees, that those lights are suspended to, before that stainless steel cable will come down, those trees will have to come down, so the lights are not gonna be an issue if we reach a catastrophic event that does that. As far as liability, since twenty-fourteen, ten years ago, we took out a policy to ensure the county under general liability for any liability that occurs. And those have been sent to the county every year, I have copies here verifying that that insurance policy was put in effect in twenty-fourteen and was effective and in place as of last week when I made the request, you know? I don't know how many other places down here that use county right-of-way that have an insurance policy in place, but I do, and I'm happy to provide that to you. So, you know, uh, uh, the, the power pole, I told you when we met out there, I would have a licensed electrician come out and verify that it was, it met code. That electrician has been out there, they made some suggestions that the GFI breaker was weak, it was functional, but we had it replaced. They made a suggestion that the ground wires were not, you know, in the best of condition after all these years. We paid to have those replaced, they've already been replaced. The bulbs you talked about, those have all been replaced, we were just waiting on them to arrive. So, if, you know, there's something that, uh, as Clay said, if you wanna do something in a, an agreement, I told you when we were out there that I would do that, I was happy to do that. And I don't know why, while you were doing the whole little, um, uh, benefit, uh, show in here, you neglected to mention that I was out there, everything that you asked me to do, I said we would be happy to do. We have insurance, we only have, the county only did seven parking spaces there, I didn't ask for them, and the county commission approved them. And I think you could get Chance or whoever from the county to verify, I didn't ask for the driveway, but it's the same one that they put in for everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Blue, I appreciate that.
I went out there on several occasions, and there's more than seven parking spots. Um, at one time, there was eighteen in our, uh, newly surveyed, uh, area that Chance, I believe, called somebody out there to do. Uh, when I was out there, I don't think we talked about hold harmless or certificate holder, uh, for insurance purposes, so that's why I brought this up.
Would you like a copy of the insurance certificate?
I'd love one, I thought, uh, Mr. Atkinson stated that there was nothing on file, is there anything on file that he's talking about?
We've never seen one, I know when you copied, when you were copying me on the emails with HR, they said it's fact insured is all they had. So, our risk manager didn't have it, but I, if that's the case, we'll gladly look if it's there, but that was not what risk management showed.
Okay. Can you have Mr. Atkinson look at that real quick before he moves away? I just wanna see if it's legit.
Clay, if you'll look.
Are we named?
It says that, it lists Walton County as their certificate holder, and it lists in the body about halfway up that the certificate o, uh, holder is.
Yeah, bo, both of these show certificate holder Walton County BCC, name of insured is the Great Southern Cafe LLC. Parking lot, additional name insured North Beach of South Walton LLC. Parking lot at southwest corner of US Highway three thirty-one and Chad Holly Road with a parcel ID, we'll match all that up.
Okay, if that's in, in fact true, then, then I have nobody to look at but staff for not giving me that information, and I'll apologize to you.
Thank you.
These appear to be, now, both these policy dates, I will say, are May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Would you like, uh?
I'm just saying, that's what I've been presented, so, I mean.
Well, hang, hang on just a second. Here's a letter from the insurance company that says that that same policy has been in effect since twenty twenty-four.
Since twenty twenty-four?
Twenty fourteen.
Can you please confirm how many years this policy's been in effect? Looks like it says added to policy twenty, the part of the email I have says added to policy twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, and that's an email to Brian Salter from Hackershire, the Great Southern Cafe, so.
And I can also supply you with information that shows that, uh, uh, that the one that I have in my file was where we filed, we've been filing it annually, and, uh, in twenty nineteen, I know that, uh, I saw the copy of the transmittal letter of that same policy coverage to the county.
Just make sure providing it to our risk management is gonna be the key, 'cause that's who needs to be receiving it. And that's who handles all the insured, so, if it's, if we're the additional insured and we've been covered, we're covered. But that is not what our insurer, that's what not risk management or fact has indicated they had on file.
And, and that would be my problem that, um, I have issues with, if staff's not giving me the correct information, then I'll have to deal with that myself. Um, I, I, I still don't, um, like the, the pole and, and the, the, the modern art masterpiece that's on it, as we explained, but if you're saying a electrician. But if you're saying a electrician approved that picture, because I went out there Saturday or Sunday and it was all the same. So if, if something was, was fit, because I even, I even reached up, I'm tall enough to reach up there and put my finger in the socket, which I shouldn't have did, to see if there was water in there. So I mean, if you did it yesterday, great. I applaud you. Thank you. But as of 48 hours ago, it wasn't done.
Well, we only met, you know, a few.
Two weeks, a week and a half, two weeks ago?
Yeah, a week and a half ago. And I told you that I would move with all due speed and I have moved with all due speed and it's been corrected.
So the bulbs are back in, the globes are back in.
The globes are back on, the improvements that I told you to the light panel. And also I told you that if the commission, that the county asked me to move the pole, even though I didn't think that it was appropriate, you know, or I didn't think it was a requirement, that I would move it, just like when the chairman asked me what I pay for the crossing lights there. I didn't hesitate and say I would pay the $10,000 to put the crossing lights in, which I did. I just don't like being, you know, it appearing as though we're taking advantage of the county, which we're not, and that somehow it endures to some inappropriate benefit to us, which it doesn't.
Well, what sparked this conversation was that we, we as a diocese stood up here a couple meetings ago and said that we do not provide public parking for private entities. And apparently we do, and I just want to make sure the county is covered.
Well, you do. And it's in the ordinances that unless it's restricted by the county manager or his designee, the county is allowed to park in the right of way, which this property by deed restriction is nothing but right of way, then you're allowed to park in the right of way.
But I don't think we put up a bunch of concrete stops in every right of way, do we?
I didn't ask for those concrete stops to be put in there, Commissioner. That's the point.
Well, I think, I think the liability portion has been answered. I mean, if, if all this checks out, then I'm fine with that as being a cert holder. You know, and it's up to the.
Yeah, we're named as an additional insured. We'll get it with risk management, make sure we figure out why they don't have that on file. Because fact has to have a copy of that as our insurer. If we have coverages of that nature, we have to be providing it to fact. The fact that they say we have not been is a problem.
And, and, and that would cover private streetlights on easements? Just want to make sure.
We'll verify. Yeah, it's, it's a simple phone call to insurance to make sure what, to what extends provided.
I just want to make sure because I'm sure we're going to have a bunch of streetlights on county right of ways from here forward.
I'd like to say quickly, thank you for doing that. I know you did do that crosswalk light and that, that was very much needed there. So thank, thank you for doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Blue, you did say this all transpired in 2010?
What?
The, the land, the, the land sale and all in 2010.
Yeah.
And then the subsequent improvements was in 2014, 10 years ago?
Yes.
I need to call for a break. Sorry.
I would just like to point out, none of us up here was anywhere around that time.
Absolutely.
Five minute recess.
You know, and I think that Commissioner Curry.
The chair, the chair's asking for a five minute recess.
We've got some people that need a break right now.
Okay.
If you want to come over here, Mr. Blue, if you want to come over here, Mr. Blue, I'll talk to you.
Sure.
Okay, we are back in order and we are still on Commissioner Curry.
All right, let's see here. Item thirty-nine, I had, a while back, there were some issues with who owns what road, who maintains what road, is it HOA, is it city, is it, that was good, HOA, is it city, and all that good stuff. So, I had asked if there was a way that we could drill down or make a GIS mapping that anybody could get on there and see and say, okay, I got a pothole in the middle of my road, who do I, who do I go tell this to, or whatever. It's easier for them to drill down, they say, oh, that's a county road, or hey, that's a city road. So, I think, is Harold, if you want to come up here and just say a few things about the map, I know it's not good to go yet, and all that, but if you could explain it a little bit and, and see how we can drill down to a certain area and, and all that good stuff.
He's bringing reinforcements.
Harold Biglin for the record.
Hello.
Thank you, Harold.
Basically, county maintained roads, we, we get the list from Public Works and Scott provides that. Actually, we've been doing this since probably about two thousand and ten, all the county maintained roads and a GIS. So, it's, goes back to who, like in the city or in the county or, or a state, who maintains those roads. So, we met, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, and updated the list to be, try to get it more functional as well, you know, and color-coded it, because I remember the, I think you made the, probably about a month ago.
Pretty close.
And so, we tried to do that and we got it, it's a work in progress. But Kevin Laird is working on that and
Perfect.
Doing a great job in doing, but we also tied the inter-local agreements, like the Freeport, City of Freeport.
Perfect.
Also working with Defeniac and also Paxton as well. Again, we're not completed with all of that, but we're trying to do that, so.
I like it.
Scott might be able to answer any other questions on that.
And I'll just ask, while we're doing this, Commissioner Curry, and I spoke about it when he put this on the agenda, I would very much, if this is something the board follows through with, getting the specific detail granularity about the length and width of the roads that we have either built or maintained for purposes of ninety-five-three-sixty-one Florida statute, which automatically acts to transfer title to the county of roads we have constructed or maintained for a specific period of time, all we are required to do is file a map with the clerk of court that contains certain information. My understanding, the reason we have not ever done that in the past, we've never had this comprehensive of a listing done. So, if this can be done, I would like to see, especially outside of the municipal boundaries, but even in, within, if the county constructed the roads, we look at trying to do this and do a full recorded map series under ninety-five-three-sixty-one that can then be updated on an annual basis or thereafter. That would greatly resolve questions we have where people say, well, why are you out there working on that road? Well, we have prescriptive rights. Well, if we don't have a court order, we don't have prescriptive rights yet. Ninety-five-three-sixty-one is designed to solve that problem. We have recorded some of those maps, I know Mr. Kerway is familiar with. So, Harold, as you bring that forward, and Scott, if you can just keep that in touch with our office, we would very much like to prepare those maps, present the whole sequence to the board for approval and get those recorded. This is something that probably would have alleviated thirty years of headache for county road rights.
I don't agree, we need a motion for that?
Not, not at this time, we just need them to keep moving forward unless the board says otherwise.
Keep on going, sounds great.
I like it, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate all your hard work, you, you do fantastic work out there, I appreciate the maps you provide and everything. So, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When I first got in office in late sixteen, I was given a big, big book, book that had every county road and every, you know, if it was, a road was county or, or private. So, that helped me tremendously, but I, I'm sure it's way out of date now.
Two thousand and six.
Not, not by any fault of yours, Harold.
Well, we do, when we do have those books, Commissioner, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we have those lists, but every time we get into an argument about who owns what, who maintains what for roadway and litigation, we can't advance the ninety-five-three-sixty-one argument in full because we've never recorded the map, which is what the statute requires, just having the list isn't there. So, doing this exercise of GIS is going to pay great dividends. I, I think we'll probably eliminate one of Buddy's recurring headaches if we can do it, I seen some of their smiling, so.
Buddy, you might want to talk to your executive or your assistant about his stress code violations.
All right, a last one, I just wanted to get an update on Grady Brown, I've been asked a lot, you know, where are we at with the process, and I, I know this process is going to take a while, we have insurance involved and, and all this good stuff, but I want to see if Admin could give us a little, a little where we're at, where are we going, how are we going to get there? To include the other parks, since we know that this was a server-initiated fire, have we updated all the other facilities to be vented correctly or vented at all? What have we done to the other facilities, so on and so forth?
Yes, sir, so I'll start with Grady Brown Park. As you know, the facility itself that was on fire and extensively damaged has been secured, has been secured in such a way to make it safe, such that citizens can access the remainder of the park safely. FMIT, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, has opened up two claims on it. It has been investigated by the State Fire Marshal's Office, we don't yet have their report, we, we expect that in thirty to forty-five days. They have ruled out arson as being the cause, they have not named the cause, but the origin of the fire was in or around the server itself.
Okay.
Which obviously probably overheated, caused the fire. Going back to the insurance claim, the adjuster's been on site, we should have his report in a week or two. And as I said, FMIT has opened up two claims, one for the building, one for any excess damages. So, we're kind of, once we get the reports back, we're kind of at a point, we need to make a decision, or this board does, do we want to put this out for bid and go through the procurement process ourselves? Or FMIT has a process where you basically turn it over to them and they handle it turnkey from start to finish, the whole procurement, construction, start to finish. So, that's, that's an option, or we can go through our own procedures.
And through my reading of our, our ordinances, or the, what is this, the fire schedule and tables, or fee scheduling tables and fire prevention and all that, I, I said, I guess something dumb, but I thought we could probably put some kind of fire suppression system in there, but I guess the square footage is too small, but I like Mary's idea where she came up with the, can we look at something like that in the future, get a cost of the, what'd you call them, Mary, the fireballs or the, the balloons or whatever it is?
So, I'll ask Chief Voss to come forward and, and as, as he is, we have been around and identified the other facilities that contain a server. None of them were exuding the heat that this particular one obviously did. But we've had the Sheriff's Office evaluate them as well, and I think you guys have already installed these, these suppression devices, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Tracy Voss, Walton County Sheriff's Office, that is correct. Madam Chair, we have gone to at least three of the parks and as those have been identified that we need to go to, if we haven't gotten to them yet, as of this day, we will. And we've put a, a canister, a, a heat-activated canister device that puts a chemical into the compartment that puts out any fire. So, essentially, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a water-activated, or it's not a water, it's not a sprinkler, it's, it's a canister of a, of a chemical that essentially competes for oxygen in the air and puts the fire out. And it's activated by heat in the room, so once it reaches a certain threshold, then that system activates. And we've already placed those in at least three of the areas where we know we have servers now.
Did the server belong to the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it did, I believe it was our VMS, the Video Monitoring System, I believe is what, what they're called. I don't think there, as we typically understand, servers as the big data servers, it was something like that, but not quite on the same scale.
The only other, and, and this is probably not a question for you, but the only other thing that I did discover when I was going through these ordinances with fire prevention and protection, chapter ten looks like the most recent is nineteen ninety-six. How often do we go through these to update any of this, do we know?
We started an update on that in, in late twenty-twenty-three, November, December of twenty-twenty-three, prepared, revised ordinances. I know the new Fire Marshal, Mr. Radney, had been working with county admin sometime in the late twenty-four is the last it is. So, we have looked at it, but we have, it has not been presented to the board for adoption. But there are draft versions.
Can I ask why?
I defer to Mr. Sunday, I know we drafted what was asked and last we heard was Mr. Radney, the Fire Marshal.
I'm just curious.
We'll be getting with admin, is all I'm saying, so that's, yeah, I, I don't know where it left after that.
So, there, there's a couple of ordinances, one is to do with the building inspections. There's, there's another to do with evacuation routes, we marked that one up, I believe we marked the building inspection one up. The, Mr. Radney has the evacuation one, we're waiting on that back to finalize, and I'm not sure where we're at on the building inspection, do you know, Chief?
The last I understand from Matt Richardson at County Attorney's Office was we were waiting for building inspection to update their code. So, one of the things that we did in the fire code is we updated that from the previous version of the nineteen ninety-six or whatever that version was, the Florida Fire Code, we updated it to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four, whatever the latest Florida Fire Code is, to, to be reflected in the ordinance. The Building Department had the same problem, they were using old codes, so they had to update a substantial portion of, their portion of that ordinance to reflect the most recent code updates by the legislature as well. So, and I'm not sure where we are with that, if that has been done yet.
So, I just want to be clear, we, we have no documents ready to present to the board at this time, there's nothing that's been completed to where we need to do anything, there's no documents.
We, we've got some documents, they're not in their final, final version for presentation.
So, they're not ready to be presented?
They're not, they're not, but I will follow up with the building official and see what needs to, to happen to finalize that.
All right.
Mr. Curry, as I understand it, the, I reviewed and approved the last version of the fire prevention side of it, so I think that one is, I think that's airtight, Mr. Sunday, I'm not sure. But I, the last version I saw, I approved, so I think that we were waiting on those other few pieces, so wherever we are with those, that's, I think we're close.
Okay, I was just curious, I saw nineteen ninety-six and I'm like, I'm sure a few things have changed since nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, I think, I think we're making progress, I know a lot of things have changed. This came up to us from Commissioner McCormick a few years ago, we've been working on it, and I think, I think we're almost there.
I just want to make sure there's nothing waiting on us, you know, if it needs to be presented, let's bring it up.
We're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm done, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay, thank you very much for all of that, very insightful. Commissioner Gladwell, did you have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Drake, did you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'm, yes, thank you. The last couple of meetings we've had come up, mention of some positions that were available in the county, and we get these emails oftentimes that remind us of open positions, or we see it on social media that there are open positions. My question is, is, in, in some of those positions that are open, that haven't been filled, or maybe they've been advertised for a while and the job requirements or the description, maybe there's like twenty-five different things on there, on the description, and there are people that maybe work in the county, or maybe they live here locally, that might, would apply, but they don't match up like one hundred percent to one hundred percent. Is there a process that would allow for consideration of applicants that don't meet all one hundred percent of the requirements? Maybe if they're, they meet like eighty-five percent, is there a, a methodology that can be utilized to compensate for experience or, or, or time in another field?
Sir, certainly that can be done at the time the jobs are created or posted, if they are given alternatives to requirements. If they are preference elements, then certainly anything can be substituted for preference.
So, there is a pathway, if there's talent out there that's available for these positions and it, it, let's, I'll just say like, on the far end of the spectrum, let's say somebody only meets fifty percent of the requirements, but they're, they're, they would be a good fit, and maybe they, maybe they're identified as a, as a, as a good applicant. Is there a pathway for someone like that, or is that?
I think that's part of the ongoing process that the administrator works with, with HR, to determine the needs for those positions, if we're having trouble getting them hired, as well as for advancement opportunities of in-house county employees to allow those opportunities. So, while those are not job descriptions, if we're talking about positions that don't report to the board, that's basically an internal discussion that Admin can have with HR at any given time to look at those, and then while it's never going to be recommended to hire a wholly unqualified candidate over a more qualified candidate for potential exposure issues, there's always discretion within department heads and the administrator, if they believe a candidate meets and exceeds their expectations, but may, may not have every bit of that on paper. And there are ways we go about that.
Okay.
If that happens, we can work through that on a case-by-case basis.
Commissioner, there, there is a caveat with each job description that allows for a combination of education, experience, and training to substitute for some of the minimum qualifications, but again, that's a subjective analysis.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Can I ask one thing on his, his, I promise it'll be quick. So, when it comes to the interviewing process, if, I don't know if he's still here or not.
I don't think so.
Do they work with applicants, or it's a this day and that's it kind of scenario, when it comes to an interview?
Generally speaking, they pick two or three dates to choose from. Some of that's going to depend on the amount of applicants, where the applicants are coming from, if they're from out of town. But they generally give about two to three options for dates to choose from, and then they work with a group of applicants to, to, to best accommodate everybody that they can.
But you would agree that having a potential applicant interview from their current employer via Zoom or via electronically while they're working is not a great idea, because we wouldn't want our employees doing that, correct?
I, I would recommend anybody applying for a job does that in their off time.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Oh, no, he answered the floor, perfect, perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, you're up.
Yes, I have had many calls on shades for the sports com, the Walton Sports Complex, which is the one at Dune Lake, and for purchase of sun shades. And I ask Joe, would you like to come up? I asked Joe to look into it, and he brought me back some, some numbers. And I'd like to make a motion for the South Walton Sports Complex through my rec plat fees, have a hundred and twenty-four, no more than a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to put some shade. And
Second.
And, and I, I think that we need to do that, and Commissioner Johns, I'm not stepping into your territory, but I asked him if he would get some numbers for Helen McCall.
Perfect, yes, he showed me this as well.
I couldn't call you and ask you that, because we would have to vote on it, but, so, I'd like to go ahead and get this started. Didn't realize how hot it was till my little grandson played T-ball this year, and it is brutal. So, I would like, if the Lord so wishes, to allow me to do that to the South Walton.
We have your motion, and Commissioner Gladwell has seconded that, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you very much.
There is one thing I would like to say, though.
Okay, go ahead.
Joe Robato, Parks and Rec, the cantilever shades for Sports Complex, they're, they're going to be very nice, they're cantilevered over the bleachers, they will have that same forest green color that goes with everything else there.
I'm fine with that.
In regards to Helen McCall, I would actually caution, because of the cost of these, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We are going to start that new expansion.
Right.
I think it would be prudent for us to wait, and we can actually put these in while we're doing that expansion, which is going to be so much easier.
Yeah, well, we'll probably have to tear them down if we put them in now.
Right, so I mean, there's, there's no point wasting that money.
But they're in the future.
Okay.
But yes, it's something that is definitely needed.
When is that expansion starting?
It is supposed to be going out for bid, the first bid had to go out for the project at three ninety-three for the right turn lane, and then it's going to come after that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's what I was told by, by engineering.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Joe, thank, thank you for your work and thank you for your help on this project.
It's my pleasure.
Did you have anything else?
That's it, sorry.
I'm up, I guess I will go ahead and start with number twenty-nine, I think it was, which is the Casa Michelle property, or Magnolia, excuse me, Casa Magnolia. I was not at that meeting and neither was Commissioner Drake. I kind of stumbled on this and, and realized, I had a lot of questions about what happened at that meeting, because I watched the meeting and there was no mention of a, a hybrid use of our land development code in order to avoid paying, what it appears to me, avoid paying Mr. Shipman, I have not called you to the podium yet, please. Okay, this is a piece of property, it's ten point six-nine acres, it goes from the Gulf of Mexico to Highway ninety-eight. And the, the plat fees that were required for that property were seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. There's also a five hundred dollar nine-one-one charge, which is standard for, for pretty much everybody, I believe. There was also a proportionate fair share contribution of three hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Now, on our staff reports, it all, it states on all of our staff reports that this has to be paid prior to coming to the board. It says, the recreation plat fee and the amount I just mentioned is required in compliance with policy R two point one point nine of the comp plan and section three point oh-three, point oh-two F one of the LDC, based on the current certified tax rule, which is subject to recalculation at the time of payment, and is due prior to the Board of County Commissioner meeting for the plat. I have nothing that shows that, that any of those funds were paid, the only check that I have that we received was a little over six thousand, I believe it was in twenty-twenty-two for the DO. In watching the meeting, there wasn't anything that said anything about contributing property in exchange for paying these fees. It's a single four, or excuse me, the plat was for thirty-four single-family residents and two commercial out parcels. Everything in the documents as far as the staff report goes on to say that it's thirty-four single-family residential lots, two thousand square feet of commercial use, eight hundred square feet of storage use, and eighteen hundred square foot clubhouse and pool amenity, and up to ten thousand square feet of future retail use and associated infrastructure. Well, there was no mention whatsoever of these fees not being paid, and there wasn't any mention, I don't believe, from Mr. Shipman, the only mention at all was about dedicating the property, the areas to the HOA. And when asked if the public would have any beach access, the response was no. And the only time that anything was brought up about the, the property being provided to the county was when Commissioner Anderson asked that question.
Could I ask you something?
Yes.
Did you say in there proportional fair share?
But that's, I know that's an old term, but that's what it, that's what it said in there, but that's an old term.
We're not still charging.
No, we're not, we're, it's a mobility.
They should have had a, so how much?
It's a DO well prior to the repeal of proportionate fair share.
So, they would have had it.
So they would have had it.
I believe that is accurate. I'm not going back to look. That's why you would likely have seen it. Um, because it looks like the development order on this goes back to December of 2023.
And the, the, um,
So just, just to make sure, they owe, they should have paid 307.
Well, I'm more concerned about the 776,000 of plat fees.
The 300 shouldn't be as easy as.
Right, right.
7959 quarters required to mitigate traffic concurrency deficiency. It was a special consideration as a plat fee.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
That was in your staff report for the project.
So according to everything I've seen, um, the hybrid that apparently has never been used before, um, would give you an opportunity to, um, give the county 5% of the property. This property is 10.69 acres. 5% would be half an acre. The property that they're planning to give the county is less than half an acre. It should be more than half an acre. It doesn't fit the criteria. Plus, the payment was supposed to be made before it came to the board and that was not done. So I was not there. Commissioner Drake was not there. Commissioner Anderson told me that he did not know that that was ha, had happened and had he known, he would not have voted for it. And so I'm asking that, that we recall that whole, um, meeting and we re, rehab, have that re, rebrought up to the board because this is basically, in my opinion, it's just taking 776,000 dollars that would have been district, for plat fees for Parks and Recs. And, and where is it? Or, or am I missing something? Is the check on the way? But it's supposed to be paid before it gets, goes to the board.
And I did, I did. Somebody explain what a hybrid.
I would be happy to.
Somebody from, I'd ask somebody from, planning to go first since they're the ones who administrate.
Steven Shone, would you mind explaining that?
And just to be clear, I did not sign the plat when it was offered to me to do so because of, uh, this outcome. This would be on the record.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, or evening, as it were. Um, so the, the way that I understand it, uh, is that, um, instead of allowing the applicant to either dedicate the entirety of what was required, which I believe is 0.51 acres, um, or paying the rec fee in its entirety, which as you mentioned earlier, is three quarters of a million dollars. Um, what the applicant, um, and planning staff and some of our legal folks, I believe, came to an agreement or an understanding of is that the applicant would dedicate, uh, .43 acres and would pay the difference as their rec fee component. So the hybridization would be doing both.
Where is that in the code?
So there, it's not explicitly in the code. It's not prohibited in the code. Uh, there is a component under our greenways section that does explicitly allow for the hybridization or the, the, the use of both rec fees and dedication.
Has it ever been used before?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Does this fall under the greenways, Mr. Shone?
This is not a greenway. Sorry, no.
So then.
No. It's not. I mean, in other words, it's not in the code explicitly for this situation.
It, it's not in the code allowing it outside of a greenway, but it's not prohibited outside of a greenway either.
Now, that's.
It's either you're pregnant or you're kind of pregnant. I mean, you can't have both.
Sure.
I'm, uh, I'm, I'm a little shocked. I mean, I'm a little concerned that, I'm not going to the pregnant thing, but really, it's not prohibited, so it's okay? I mean, it's not prohibited that I get out there and take off like a flying jet off the, but that's not very smart.
No, sir.
I, I mean.
The, so i- if I may, if I may just step back a little bit, um, I was, I was hopeful that, uh, Mr. Carpenter would be here to explain things a little probably better than I have because I wasn't part of those conversations. So, um, I, I, I hear the, uh, the, the sounds of, of conversation behind me. Um, maybe they have a better idea of what actually transpired and what was discussed there.
Well, uh, let me just say also that Mr. Sunday was told the day before this meeting was taking place, that it was going to be postponed until the next meeting. He in turn told other people that it was postponed. However, conversations took place the night before and the morning of that meeting to come up with this hybrid that's never been used before.
Uh, I'm, I'm, again, ma'am, I'm not aware of, of the timelines.
I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that. It's, it's stated clearly in the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I hate putting you on the spot because I don't think, but nevertheless, you're the only victim I have.
Sir.
So why wasn't this hybrid stuff brought up in that meeting?
Okay.
Now, I'll be the first to say, we, I'll take my share of responsibility for this because we blew through that meeting in 21 minutes. And that was five items, I think it was. So five minutes of item ain't enough time to talk about these things. I understand that. I'll take my, I mean, I'll, I'll take my part of the blame for that. But somebody should have said something about this hybrid thing that now nobody's ever heard of. I, I mean, you don't have to answer that, but.
There's something.
And I, I, I really can't. I, I wasn't, I wasn't here. I wasn't part of the conversations. Uh, I just relayed my understanding of the situation.
Well, my, my ask is, um, is that somebody make a motion that we re, readdress that?
Hold on. I, I, there's some things I'm going to add into that. If there's any more board discussion, I'd like us to make sure the board gets all their questions answered to staff. And then I am going to make some suggestions about how we may need to move forward. Um, reconsidering the plat approval itself is probably not what I'm going to recommend. That's why I'm asking you to hold off, but I want to make sure we get any other questions or concerns answered for the board before I try to offer any guidance. Because we do have some remedies, but we have to be careful that we don't exceed our authority under approving a plat. Technically, this was not a condition of plat approval. It was a condition of it getting to our agenda. That's the problem. So I want to be very careful how we structure that. But commissioners, do you, is anybody else have any questions for staff or anyone else?
Um, I just, I want to second what Mr. Gladwell said. I mean, we've never used this before, apparently, and it's just kind of convenient that we didn't bring it up during that meeting.
I would like on behalf of the applicant to have an opportunity to speak about.
I didn't call on him.
Mr. Shipman, I'll give you a couple of minutes. Come on.
Well, let me.
Sorry.
I, I just want to ask Mr. Ed. We, this was a plat approval. We approved that plat.
Yes, sir.
By a 3O vote.
Yes, sir.
So the, the fact that two commissioners weren't here doesn't really change the fact that three commissioners voted for it.
No, that plat is approved.
So is there any, is there any historical precedent for undoing?
Because, so, so ultimately.
And if so, what?
So I'm going to put it, I'm going to, about to, Mr. Shipman, if you will, I'm going to put Mr. Shone on the spot. Stephen, sorry, buddy. Going to bring you up here. I'm going to put a few things on the record because I'm going to be candid. Even if there were historical precedent, I'm not sure I would let you do it. That's the problem. Mr. Shone, in terms of plat approvals, these would be fees that would be due prior to the meeting. They are not fees that are required to be paid upon the approval of the plat, correct?
Historically, there is a memorandum at the Plan Department that requires fees to, to be paid. Um, memos to be created prior to taking it to the board. Uh, there have been exceptions. This is a relatively new, um, rule internal to the department. It's not a codified requirement, uh, that these things occur before the board. Uh, here's the item. Um, it, again, it was a memorandum that was released by the director, uh, that these things were taken care of prior to. Uh, there have been situations where that was waived. Um, because ultimately, um, staff can hold on to the plat, uh, and not release it until those fees are paid, um, for recording, I mean. Um, so it, it, it is typically what we like to see, but it's not what, what happens every time.
So with regard to where we are, I want to address this for the board's benefit. I think I know this answer, so I may get surprised. I may not.
What if we just have them pay the fees?
Well, we're going to get there. That's right. I want to get, I want to get there to make sure we can. At this point, after plat approval, what are the county's next required or available steps of approval related to this project, Mr. Shone?
We would, uh, ensure that all fees are collected, uh, and the memo is created. Uh, we would work with our records, uh.
So, so I'm, I'm being even more grander.
Okay.
You've got a DO issued, you've got a plat approved. What other approvals get issued by Walton County post plat approval?
Building permit.
Okay. And a certificate of occupancy?
Correct.
So board, my recommendation to you today in this scenario is that the board's a prior approval of the Casa Magnolia subdivision plat included a staff report that indicated that the amount of, and let's hope all these other fees have been paid, Mr. Shone, because I'm not referencing them, but I think we can all say all fees. Do you, not, so not even the prop fair share?
No.
So let's just make it clear that the special considerations under the section plat fees on page three of eight of the staff report, page six of 59 of the board packet that day, including 307,950 dollars and 94 cents for a traffic concurrency deficiency, 776 dollars, 272 dollars and 76 cents for recreational plat fees, and a $500 nine, $500 911 address fee have to be paid prior to the BCC meeting that the board would specifically today, rather than recall the plat, because again, I don't think we have the legal authority to do that, move forward with signing the plat, direct Mr. Curry, who was the chair at that meeting, as the vice chair to execute the plat with the express condition that this issue of the rec fee being either reduced or otherwise fully waived or other, be brought back to the board for an independent consideration prior to the issuances of any building permits or COs. And that would be consistent with the Florida Impact Fee Act.
I, I would like to say that, that Mr. Curry hold off on signing the plat until the fees are paid.
I don't believe we have the legal right to withhold a plat signature.
It states on our document right here that they're not supposed to bring it to the board until it's paid.
I, I concur with that, but plat approvals are governed by Florida statute and plat, and there is nothing in Florida law that allows the board to condition approval on something that's not written in an ordinance.
Well, can then we, can we make sure that there's no going forward with any building or anything else until?
That's what I'm saying. Building permits, before any building permits are issued or any certificates of occupancy.
But not waiving these, these funds.
No, not at all. What I'm saying is we have to s, agree, put it a record of the board today. We are going to go ahead and sign the plat, but that no building permits would be issued until this matter is fully resolved.
When you say fully resolved.
By this board. The board has to approve what is happening with the plat fee.
So what we're talking about is a difference in 750,000.
700, why, how many?
Seventy-six. 776,000 dollars.
And what was the other figure? 3,000?
307,950.
No, no, no. The, the, what the plat fee would be under this hybrid thing.
Mr. Shone?
I believe it was in the neighborhood of 5,500 dollars.
5,500 dollars.
So 771,000 dollars.
I'm just going to say District 2, we don't have to worry about 700,000 dollar plat.
But I, I would, and, and I understand that my advice here is something that probably no one's satisfied with, but I will tell you, if we, if we decline to approve a plat, after we've already issued approval and found it complied with state statute and the comprehensive plan, we've got a big problem. Two, we've had, the, the rec fee, and Mr. Shone and I've talked about this independent of this specific project, the rec fee is effectively an impact fee in the way you do it. Florida Impact Fee says you cannot require an impact fee to be paid prior to the time of building permit. I understand we've told them that. We've said this for years. I understand that's how it's worked, but as of the updated Florida Impact Fee Act and the series of amendments that have gone into effect over the last several years, we lack the ability to deny plat approval on an impact fee, but we can deny building permit approval.
Then why do we have it on our form?
I can't find where that's in the ordinance.
It says it right here.
Well, I know it says it in the form, but I'm telling you, I can't find that in our ordinance. And I think Mr. Shone said the same thing. The ordinance does not actually require this to be paid prior to the meeting for the plat. We don't have the law that says that. This is just one of these, Commissioner Curry's going to reach over and smack me. One of these unwritten, unwritten policies that he keeps asking, be, well, why is it unwritten?
Exactly.
I wish I knew. I wish I knew. But what I can tell you is, I can't, board, I would be remiss if I did not say, I think we are acting outside of our statutory authority to rescind the plat or withhold signature on the plat. I recognize that is not satisfying to anybody involved in this, but I am asking the board to please move forward with the plat, but expressly state and put an issuance to both planning and building that no building permits be issued for this plat until the board has officially resolved this issue. Be it the collection of fee, be it you choosing to agree to this hybrid model, I'm not hearing a lot of support for that, mind you, but whatever, until you satisfy this issue for this million plus dollars of money that is, we thought we were getting, at that point in time, you still hold the ability not to let them get building permits.
Well, we can do that right now, can't we?
Yes, we can. That you can do.
I'm motion. But I think I have an opportunity to speak.
When it's seconded, right?
Yes.
After it's seconded. Okay. We have a motion to have, and we have a motion and a second. Okay. Yes.
Mr. Furts?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
But, but when I, while he's still running up here. So, Mr. Ed, what you're saying is, is the signature on that plat is a ministerial action. And so the vice chair is basically required, correct?
Correct. And the board's approval of that plat was barely more than ministerial because they complied with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan provisions for submitting us a plat that was entitled to government approval and accreditation under Florida statute. That's the problem. This was not a condition of plat approval anywhere within our ordinances. And Mr. Shone has confirmed that for you. That's why I asked him those questions. And he said something different, I would have gladly said, hold it up. But I can't find it and your expert by designation of the code has no record of it.
I, I just don't like how in, in a court of law, you're supposed to have all the evidence so people can, can make the correct decision on a data given. We weren't given all that data. So that's, that's my issue with this. I mean, if it was, if it was no big deal and it's a hybrid's a hybrid, whatever, it should have been mentioned. It should have been discussed and we should have heard it.
I agree with everything the board's saying, and I think this was absolutely outside the process we should follow. What I don't want is one mistake or worse to be compounded by this board's action to result in litigation that we are, I'm not going to say hopelessly unable to win, but probably fighting upstream.
Well, I'm okay with, I'm okay with him, with him signing that as long as.
The building permits.
Yes.
Well, I would, I would say, um, I would say I agree with you, but, uh, what is the, the saying? Caveat in.
Caveat intra-bidere.
But, I mean, it's our responsibility to make sure we, we have the facts. And, and the one thing, you know, I've always prided myself is that I'm prepared for meetings. I've, and in this case, I'm didn't, and I'm, it's my fault just as much.
Well, your, your staff report said it was paid.
Well, there was, there was nothing in the.
Or at least implied it was paid.
Well, that's a problem.
Yeah, your sta, your staff report said and is due prior to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the plat. Based on that, I don't know how anybody sitting here at this dais could have ever assumed anything otherwise than it was paid. It wouldn't be before you otherwise.
I mean, I hate to say it, but are we supposed to get into the day-to-day and ask for checks every time we come in here? Hey, did they pay this? Hey, did they pay that? We, we entrust staff for that.
I agree with you. And, and.
Can we hear from the applicant?
I'm sorry.
No.
It's embarrassing.
I know.
All right.
Okay.
And it's unfortunate that Mr. Carpenter is not here because Mr. Carpenter was the one involved, although Brooke is here and she was involved too. Long before we ever came in front of you, the issue that was delaying it is Mr. Carpenter didn't like the way the plat labeled things that were not part of the lots on the plat. The plat, we handed it out, the plat is the last tab in your little notebook. Mr. Carpenter kept insisting, because we labeled everything on this plat that's not an individual lot as POA owned. as P.O.A. owned, Property Owners Association. Because under the law, somebody has to own it. So if it's not gonna be owned by an individual owner, for example, the beach, then the property owner has, association has to own it. Mr. Carpenter and I went round and round and round about that. And eventually, we agreed, and if you watch the meeting, that came up. I believe Mr. Anderson asked me about it, where I changed the plat to read in the beginning, "All property in the plat not otherwise labeled belongs to the property association." That seemed to be the focus of the meeting. On that plat, we also had labeled the park at the front. The park at the front and this hybrid system came about, if you'll turn to tab one, the planning lawyer and I discussed this, and I wrote her a letter, and we had a meeting where I discussed, there's a couple of things at play here. You first go to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, and I referenced R dash two point one point nine. I probably should have also referenced R dash two point one point ten. But both of them provide that because the county wants to have this system of recreation, that a landowner, when you develop a property, the landowner can choose. They can either give you property equivalent to five percent of the gross area, or they can buy it, they can pay you, and it's based on six percent of the value of the undeveloped lot, land. Or they can give you a piece of property somewhere else to build a park. The R dash two point one point one O pertains to when a minimum of six point two-five acres of recreation and open space per one thousand people. And that is the goal of the county, to provide that recreation. After-
I'll give you thirty more seconds.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I'm not-
No, we're simply talking about the plat fees not being paid.
Well, I, I, Madam Chair, I'd like to hear.
Okay, but the meeting-
I think I get to explain it.
The meeting that you were not at, I was not at, but I did watch, all of that, you, you went over all of that information at the meeting, that what you didn't go over?
No, I didn't.
You went over the sign, because that was the heartburn that Mac had.
No, I did not go over the interplay between the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, which you've yet to talk about. And you're talking about imposing something on someone who came before you to have a plat imposed, and now you want to take it away, and you want to deny them an opportunity?
Two, to be clear, the Board's motion does not take the plat away. That's why I'm very clear, that's not something we can do.
Look, we donated, we gave a plat that has a park in it.
It's not large enough, it doesn't, it doesn't qualify under our, under that hybrid that's never been used before.
Well, I disagree. If you give me an opportunity to explain the interplay between the LDC and the comprehensive plan, I'll explain why it does.
Well, according to our staff report, it states on this that it is, according to policy R two point one point nine of the comp plan and Section three point oh-three oh-two F one of the LDC. And that's all it states on here. It doesn't give us any other options.
And it doesn't even bother to address five point oh-three point oh-five, which you asked about a minute ago, and I want to address something on that. Five point oh-three point oh-five, the heading on this section is greenways and recreational concurrency requirements. The section discusses on the recreational concurrency requirements, how you comply with it. The recreational concurrency requirements are what, under the LDC, this section, Land Development Code, was adopted. The business of donating the property or buying it is provided for under the comprehensive plan.
Why didn't you mention that at the meeting?
Nobody asked about it.
Because nobody knew about it. How do you ask about something you don't know?
Commissioner, I came up here and I explained to the Commission that we were here for the plat, we had a plat. We had a plat that showed the amount, that showed the park, you know.
So, Mr. Shipman, why didn't you?
Did it show the hybrid? Did it show the hybrid?
Yes.
In there? To show that we were neglecting the seven hundred and seventy-six thousand to get this point for you.
Right, and Commissioner, what I'm trying to say is, if you had asked me at that meeting, which I think you're now asking me, the applicant would have a chance to explain why that applies, correct? So why don't you want me to explain why this hybrid applies?
Because the plat is already done. We've already been told that the plat has already been done, it's already been approved.
And now you want to undo it because it has a park in it?
No, that's not what we're saying, Mr. Shipman, that's not what we're saying.
No, I made clear, they're not able to undo the plat.
We're not undoing the plat.
Okay, well then, I don't understand why we're even discussing the fee.
We want the funds paid.
You want the funds for?
Our rec plat fees paid.
Okay, so you want the, you want the park that's in the plat that you approved, and you want fees?
You didn't bring up the park at all.
We can certainly replat and remove the park and do the fees, because that's what the Board expects.
I think, if you'll, if you'll allow me, so that we don't end up in court where you deny this due process.
Don't threaten me.
So if you would allow me to speak, I'd be happy to explain it to you. When you adopt a comprehensive plan, you adopt provisions of the LDC on how to implement it. The sections that we're talking about, the comprehensive plan two, R two point one point nine and R two point one point ten, when they were adopted, you then later adopted Section five point oh-three point oh-five, which addresses not only greenway corridors, but it addresses recreational concurrency requirements.
Mr. Shipman, did you or did you not say the day before this meeting that it was gonna be postponed till the following meeting?
I didn't say anything to you about postponing.
Not to me. Did you say it to anybody, staff?
No.
So where did Mr. Carpenter think that it was gonna be postponed and told Mr. Sunday that it was gonna be postponed?
Mr. Carpenter was trying to get us to give him the beach, and I told him we would not.
So you were in meetings with who that afternoon and the next morning, right before this meeting?
I didn't meet with anybody that afternoon or the next morning. I met with Mr. Carpenter and counsel for the Planning Department prior, I don't know what happened.
Well, they stated in the meeting that you all had conversation the night before and the morning of. That's what was stated.
The morning of, we discussed removing the words P.O.A. owned off the actual map. That was, that was the issue. It wasn't this. The issue was, on the plat, Mr. Carpenter didn't like where we labeled property that wasn't an individual lot or a park. We put on it P.O.A. owned, and we had it every place. We had it on the drainage, we had it on the beach.
But that's not our issue here right now. What our issue right now is our plat fees.
Right, and that wasn't an issue discussed with Mr. Carpenter immediately before the meeting either.
No, but he discussed it at the meeting with the Board members either.
You didn't ask.
Mr. Shipman, the problem is the Board's report that they had in their packet indicated that amount would be paid prior to the meeting. They had no reason to-
Well, they didn't get that from me.
No, they did get it from staff, and that's what their concern is. If the plat is approved, your client has a plat approved, he gets a signature on that plat, and then ultimately, like any other impact fee, we're going to have to deal with making sure we have full money paid before building permits.
And our position is, which you voted on, which I went over with your staff, not the day before, not the morning of, long before we got here.
You didn't mention that piece of property at that meeting at all.
We didn't mention anything about the recreation in there.
Exactly, that's my point.
And that's because, Commissioner, when we got up here, Mr. Carpenter got up, and all he talked about was not wanting P.O.A. labeled on the beach. And I responded in my, if you listened to the meeting, you would know.
I did, I did.
I got up and I responded. We changed it. We took P.O.A. off everything, and we put it in the front of it. I even said, I think this is an issue, this is a change without any real meaning. Mr. Anderson asked me if I was satisfied with the way that Mr. Carpenter wanted it labeled, and I said yes. And then you made a motion to approve. And by the way, I've had other matters before here where you made motions to approve and seconded it and voted on it without me saying anything else, because I'm certainly not gonna object if you're gonna do that. So that's how we got here. So now, if you want to know how did I get, arrive at the method of giving the park, it's because when you adopted the LDC, which you were required to do after the comprehensive plan, you had to have a method of complying with that comprehensive plan. It is never a choice of the county commission what, or to take the land or to take the money. That is the applicant's.
It's not the choice of the applicant to decide whether or not he's gonna pay the required fees.
He can dedicate five percent of the gross area, or he can pay six percent of the assessed value of the land. That's the comp plan.
And then when you go-
Right.
-to the LDC that implemented the section of the comprehensive plan, which you're required to do, that was in my letter to counsel.
We di- we disagree that five point oh-three oh-five applies, and Mr. Shaw just agreed that this does not fall under the greenway standards. That's the problem.
I, I disagree with you.
Well, that's fine, Mr. Shipman.
That's fine, you can disagree.
But in any event, you have now approved a plat.
We've already approved it. We're not denying that.
So you've approved it based on what we presented, which included this park.
You, you yourself did not say one word about that park.
And neither did you.
I wasn't here. You were.
Well, neither did any of the other Commissioners.
Board, I would ask that, as part of the motion, planning staff along with the County Attorney's Office and the administration meet with the applicant to determine any potential resolutions for the payment of these fees, and to have this back to the Board at its next regularly scheduled Board meeting. I do know that is a North Walton Board meeting, but I want to bring that back as quickly as possible, and I want to read one line to the Board on this issue. Well, I'm gonna read two, excuse me, I'm gonna read two lines. Again, it appears no action was ever taken to collect this, for reference, this fee as a rec plat fee. We find the failure to collect almost eight hundred thousand in recreation fees to be egregious and unacceptable. For those of you who are not familiar with what I just quoted, that is a grand jury finding against this county. So seeing that we have not collected another eight, almost eight hundred thousand, I don't want this Board sitting in front of a grand jury trying to explain why. And the last time that happened, by the way, we ended up with a planning director who is no longer the county planning director criminally charged. But the Board's the one who had the grand jury called against it. So right now, we're not gonna issue building permits until we have sorted this issue out, they get their plat approved, give us a chance to bring this back to you in, give or take, two weeks.
Can I ask?
Didn't we have a motion already?
Yes, but would you make that part of your motion, sir?
No, it was my motion.
Would you make it part of your motion? I got a head nod from that clerk.
But let me ask you this. Whose choice is it to pick either fee or land?
So it is up to the developer to, we, so the way it is worded, R two point one nine of the comprehensive plan, which is what does govern this, requires the developer to dedicate a minimum of five percent of the gross area. Now, I do agree with Commissioner Johns, I think this is slightly under it, but nonetheless, that's where it is. It says, alternatively, the developer of the development shall pay cash in the amount of six percent. So in other words, if you're not making the dedication of land, you've gotta pay the six percent. I find no basis for where the hybrid scenario comes from. And if it was going to be done, I think the only way it could be done is by Board approval. And that is my biggest concern here, is that no matter what, this Board did not approve what happened. I, I understand the developer thought one thing, and perhaps our staff led him to believe every single bit of this will be how it was done. But I'm gonna be very candid, it was on staff to tell you, and since staff didn't tell you, and you're the ones who are gonna be accountable? And if we get audited, and you've gotta go find a non-abject or general fund basis to repay seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars into an impact fee-bearing account for her district, that's where we may be, but we may also be under a grand jury again. Last time we didn't collect eight hundred thousand, that's what happened.
So if it's not up to, up to the county, why in the world would we want a half-acre park on U.S. ninety-eight? That don't make a lick of sense.
None, none.
And, I mean, really, we are, we're gonna have to take care of this thing in perpetuity, and it's not big enough to put two parking places and a bathroom on. I mean, thi- this is, this is, this is not in the county's best interest. We would be better off not having this ordinance than to, to have this happen.
And I will represent to you that Mr. Shaw and I have discussed the severe need to update recreational impact fees. Believe he'll be coming forward with, um, requests for some study work in the very near future to make sure we modernize this. And I do believe what you're discussing is gonna be part of the modernization process if I know any of the consulting companies that do impact fee determinations whatsoever.
I don't see where we need this park whatsoever, so this is a mess.
Madam Chair, Mr. Shipman, you said the Board should ask you, and perhaps you, we should have. But I'm, I'm the senior member of this Board. I've been in this office since six, late sixteen. I've never had this happen. I didn't know that, that you, because we've never done this. I was asking question to Mr. Carpenter about beach use, and this, this should have been brought up by y'all or staff. And I'm not blaming you, Stephen, I know you had nothing to do with it, but we-
Commissioner, you know-
And, and let me finish, please. And this is, this is the fault of the three of us that were here.
I've already took my medicine.
But none, none of us, and I don't think it would have mattered if Commissioner Johns would have been here or Commissioner Drake, none of us have ever had, had to think about asking a way, is this part of the, is this a hybrid or is this one? Because we've never done it in the eight and a half years I've been in the office. So, I mean, the developer has put us in a very bad situation. I'm not happy about it. I think that, that, I know coming forward, I will be more diligent, but it never occurred to me to say, hey, is this a hybrid? Because we've never done a hybrid.
Never even heard of it.
And so that's where our problem is. This, this was, this should have been discussed. Whether we asked the question or not, it was not discussed. It, it's, I mean, to me, you either have to get the five percent, or you have to pay the fee.
And Commissioner, ordinarily on these, if you think back on many of these, at least I've been in front of you for at least fif- last fifteen years, something like a park is rarely discussed. What gets discussed is things like, you know, is there a road? How many lots is it? Is the stormwater appropriate? We rarely discuss things like parks or recreation fees.
Because usually, you either pay the fee or you build the park. The park is insufficient to be built at the size it is. It's, it's, you know.
Useless.
It's useless. It's, it's, it doesn't matter even if it is useless, if it's the right amount of property. But I've never seen this happen in all the years I've been there. And, and I don't think you've ever done this before. I don't know why we were not told this, but it, it never came to any of our, our minds that you were doing anything other than building the proper park.
Well, I, I can assure you, as I provided with you in your packet, I, there were multiple discussions between the planning attorney and me, and the planning attorney and the Director, and we met, and we went over both provisions. And I wish Mac were here, because Mac actually said to me, when I presented it, that they have done this before.
Not that I'm aware of.
But he's not here.
Okay, no, I hate, Mac hasn't done it before either. He told me he had not done it. Stevens told me he's not done it. Tim Brown told me he's not done it. No, none of them have done it.
I can't tell you, Commissioner, I can tell you that Mac told me that in the meeting.
Okay, well, that, the, the real issue is for me, is I want my plat fees paid. That's what I want. And I think that was your initial motion, was to pay the plat fees.
We'll, we'll work, well, the, the motion was to hold the building permits until this matter-
I think that his- I think that his mo- what was your motion?
It was, it was Commissioner Glabber's motion.
Commissioner Glabber, what was your motion?
Well, we, we adapted it, and it was to hold the planning, to hold the fee
Hold the building permits.
Until
The fees were paid.
Either fees were paid, or staff could meet with, with the applicant.
And then the board has to approve whatever resolution is reached.
Why can't we just go ahead and say that they've paid the plat fees?
Because if they choose to do that, we're gonna have to do a replat if they wanna take their park back. I think I mentioned that earlier, and we certainly could do that, but I want us to be able to bring that back and have this done one time in full. I mean, you can say, we're gonna require you to pay the fees, they're gonna say, well, we dedicated the park, we're gonna go back and forth. I'm just asking us, allow us to bring it back to you in two weeks. They're not gonna be applying for a building permit in two weeks.
I will say this, Commissioner, 'cause I, you know, obviously, I like my client included in the conversation, but since you've approved a plat that has a piece of property dedicated to the county, and we're not here on revoting on the plat itself either, I guess, from looking at my client's perspective, and I mean this, I'm not trying to force, suggest you do something different, but one of three things will happen here. Either they'll agree that they take the property back and they pay you the fees, they, you agree to take the property and take it hybrid, or everybody ends up in litigation. I don't hope that doesn't happen, but I think what Mr. Atkinson is saying is, let's sit in a room with the client and talk about what the options are, because right now, you can't vote and say, we're not withdrawing the approval of the plat, but you're gonna pay the fees because you've taken a piece of property when you had voted on it.
Well, he knows paying the fees would solve it, I'll, I don't mean to bring too much levity to what is, in my opinion, a very serious issue, but the reason I'm asking that, Commissioner, is there's no physical way the county's gonna go get you seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and if he just says, I'm never applying for a building permit, he could drag it out, drag it out. I wanna make sure we get our money, is what I'm interested in, because, or that the board is happy with the outcome, whatever that is. That's all, that's why I'm asking, I can't go shake him from his feet and get the coins.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one thing, that's it. What can we do to not have this happen again? Can we add this? Can we add this to the sheet, where we have a little checkoff sheet? Okay, hybrid, no?
Fees have been paid would be the checkoff, Stephen, can you add that in, please, sir?
I, I will say that I think as part of our look at the rec fee and sort of a recreation master plan, that some of that sort of review process will be discussed, and how we move forward. Currently, Shane with Parks and Rec is reviewing all of our technical review applications and making comments on, on park dedication versus payment, things like that, so hopefully the situation, and as far as the hybridization is concerned, if it's not in a greenway, then I don't think staff will be entertaining that idea.
But Stephen, you can do the same thing they've asked before about sidewalk buyouts, which is there's going to be something in the report saying, this was dedicated in lieu of rec plat fees, this was paid for transportation fees, just a section that labels that in their staff report, what was done.
I was absolutely getting to that long-winded, like, but yes, we'll update the staff reports, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone in the, Mr. Shipman, I'm, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I'm sorry, but there's one complicating thing you'll have to address in your motion, because you also issued a development order, actually before the plat, and in the development order, you approved the park in your development order, which was done at a different meeting.
Well, we'll address that if we bring back.
We'll address that. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I wanna make sure I understand what exactly we're voting.
We're having them go, we're
Mr., let me, let me further, I got, Mr. Curry is the vice chair, was here at that meeting, chairing the meeting, will sign the plat, is his ministerial authority and duty as the chair, that the county planning department and building department instructed not to issue any building permits relative to this plat under this development order until the matter of the plat fees have been resolved to this board's satisfaction, and staff has been instructed to come back at the next meeting, the first meeting in June, with an update on what that looks like. If they wanna just come in and pay the fees, it's done, and they don't have to meet with us, but if they wanna take the park back, we'll come back with a replat, we'll take care of all of that, but we're coming back in two weeks with what a resolution looks like.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Did someone have their hand raised? Ms. Harris, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry, I didn't miss, I didn't see it the first time.
What a cluster. Dan, thank you so much, because Highway 98 is busy, and there's no light anywhere around the park. So whoever approved the park to start with, didn't go out and look at the property, so everybody needs to start doing all their homework, go look at the property, and see what you're doing. But if you put a bathroom there, and four parking places, there's no room for any park, any playground or anything, maybe a swing set, so traffic on 98's backed up forever. You're driving down 98, and your chances have to go to the bathroom. Okay, so you're gonna get off at the bathroom in front of these multi-million dollar houses, you're gonna have homeless sleeping there at night, 'cause we've already got homeless trying to sleep in Edgewater's parking garage, which is right down the street from the park. But, y'all have to do your homework, you gotta ask the right questions on these things, because no attorney is gonna just volunteer bad information. So y'all gotta ask the right questions. But years ago, Clay, and I've forgotten who it was, Clay, years ago, I went after y'all on, I went after y'all on about a half a million dollars worth of plat fees, because y'all just forgot to collect them, and the land sold to somebody else, so we couldn't bill the plat fees to the land that's up, to the new owner, and we just, poof, about a half a million dollars, just poofed out the window, because we weren't on top of getting things done. We've got a code book that's totally out of kilter, nobody can seem to get rewritten right. We've got a hybrid thing, none of y'all even knew about, and this is just a mess, but we cannot, I don't care what you do with that piece of property, if you get it, but you better not put a bathroom and four parking places on it and call that thing a park, because that is absurd. And to only think that you don't even know whether the meeting's being postponed or not being postponed, somebody, whoever told you, whether it was Stan or whoever, that it was being postponed, and then you went out of town thinking it was being postponed, 'cause that is your district, and that is my district. Now, I get pretty mad when the money out of my district's going anywhere, but I hope, Donna, if they had told you that it was gonna, a chance it would be owned, you would not have gone out of town, you would've stayed here to vote on what's going on in our district. But I'm telling you, this is a cluster, and everybody up there should be ashamed.
Barbara Morano, and I support your motion, but I also wrote you an email, and it ties into this, so forgive me, but give me a minute on this. The Bristol Development, they, there was an article, and look at your email that I sent, Bristol Group Revitalizes Walton County With The Jewel. They made an apartment complex on 98. They are quote-unquote gifting you a park. They are gifting you a park on 98. This is in the article, I sent you an email, I sent it to Clay, I talked with Stan for just a minute, I talked to Shane, he has no idea. This is part of that, what Mr. Shipman was saying, the applicant has a choice, either pay you, or give you a public benefit. It was my understanding, this was a public benefit for the, for the complex, but now, it looks like they're handing that over to the county, and the, Jason, if you wanna pull it up, it's fourteen turquoise way.
Barbara, that's a, that's a whole different, that's, we're not even talking about that property.
I know you're not, but, but what I'm saying is, the study of the rec fees is so important, because it's not just this project, it's a project going forward.
It is.
And you're going to inherit another park that you're not gonna know what to do with on 98, so.
We'll be aware, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion passes. Okay. Anybody need a break? Okay, the next thing I wanted to talk about was the Alderberry property. It's come back up again?
One more thing on that.
Sure.
Could we direct staff, legal, to bring us back something that gives the board the authority, or gives the board the right to pick whether we want the park, or whether we want the land, the money?
We'll do that as part of a rec plat fee review. Mr. Shone and I will bring that back as part of a review.
I ca- I agree, this cannot happen again, this is ridiculous.
I agree, a hundred percent.
The only thing I must say on that, I mean, I know we try to steer away from more government, is this adding more government to it, I mean, right now, we've been doing it this way for, what, since the, the first W in Walton, and now we wanna, and I totally agree with you, I think it needs to be here and made a decision up here. I just wanted to make sure.
I, I, without, I would ask the board, I would gladly come talk to all five of you individually, to give you some more context, other than to say, this is an impact fee, it should be treated like all impact fees are, and we must comply with the Florida Impact Fee Act. Therefore, we're going to make sure this is done correctly moving forward, and what Commissioner Glabber proposes is something that can be done correctly under the statute. There may be some things I didn't say there that I hope y'all took note of.
There may be a choice, we won't take no more parks. Half an acre park on 98, that's crazy.
So, so I have a...
Man, that's not worth it, the time, it's blow my nose.
Did you have something, Mr. Drake?
So I have a question. I don't know what the outcome of the, of the group meeting is going to be, I'm sure there's gonna be proposals on, on their side to cure the issue. My question is, is, it's been stated as fact both ways, that it's been done in the past, it hasn't been done in the past. What if it is determined that it has been done in the past? Where does that put us?
In my, in my opinion, Commissioner, this, if it's been, well, I don't believe that this is something that could be done without board approval, and I think specifically as to this issue, the board approval appeared to be contingent on the implicit, but fair assumption that this amount of money was paid prior to the board meeting. So whether they've done a hybrid, first off, I don't find a basis for doing a hybrid, but I will say this, I'm not gonna tell you that it couldn't be done in cases, because of the way the Florida Impact Fee Act is structured, so if it's been done in the last three or four years, it's entirely possible that it was legal. However, you're still the one who has to approve those dedications, you're still the one who has to understand what you're giving up or not, and I think the grand jury was very clear about that to a prior board, the board's the one who got held accountable for not collecting almost eight hundred thousand in rec plat fees, in those case, they were just miscalculations of math, they just left zeros off, and that got a grand jury on this board, so what I'd say is, if you can be held accountable for that, then you should be the one responsible for approving it. So I don't think it changes where we sit one way or the other, it may however, give you, if a proposal comes back for a hybrid consideration, on this specific project, it may give you something that makes you feel more comfortable about doing it, it may not. And I will certainly talk to Mr. Shone, we will see if there's any indication where this has been done in a non-Greenway corridor prior. And I, and I will say this, the approval has to be consistent with your agenda packet. If you're approving something that's not consistent with what's in your packet, there's no transparency. Well, it might as well be void on its face or not following sunshine at that point.
I agree, totally agree, thank you, thank you. Okay, my next item is the Alderberry property. I brought the Alderberry property up a few years ago, then they were going to develop it themselves, they've done a lot of work on it, and they have potentially offered it back up to us for the same price, which is twenty million dollars, but it's ninety-two acres on the bay in District Four. I'm going by memory, I don't have it in front of me, but I wanna say it's eleven hundred and fifty-two feet on the bay, and at the time, we were saying it was forty-five percent wetlands, but actually, it's twenty-six acres of wet, wetlands of the ninety-two acres, so twenty-six acres out of the ninety-two acres, so there's a lot of uplands on this property, and it's on the bay, and there's so many things we could do. In District Four, we don't have a community center, we don't have a senior center, we don't have a welcome center, we don't have anything. We have absolutely no place to meet whatsoever, every other district has multiple, and this is one area that could encompass potentially an aquatic swimming pool, which we don't have, and, and people have always asked about that, you know, we're on the beach, these children need to learn how to swim, lifeguards could practice there, there's so many different things we could do there, there could be swim meets, all sorts of things like that, and this location is ideal. It's off of 98, and you would be able to get through it through the backways of 98, hopefully, when we get the other roads completed that are in the process now. So it's something that would be easily accessible for people, we would have plenty of parking, we would have trailways, there would be potentially pickleball courts there, there's so much we could do with that. We're talking ninety-two acres of property on the bay, potentially even a marina, and you know, we have so many problems right now with all of these commercial vendors wanting to use Cessna landing, and it's just very chaotic, and it's just, you know, it's, it's not working properly. And if we had something like this with eleven hundred and fifty-two feet along the bay, there's potentially opportunities for us to, to lease something out, or something like that, we could make some money back from this property. And so I'm asking if we could have staff work with the seller and see what we can come up with. The last appraisals, they didn't encompass a lot of the items that are on that property. The owner has done an environmental assessment, he's done an archaeological phase one, he's done an updated survey, and an elevation survey, so all that information is readily available to us. So I would just like to ask that, that we go forward and look to see what we can do as far as funding. Brian Kellenberg's not here now, I think he walked out a little while ago, but he had mentioned a long time ago to me that, you know, we've got that parking lot in the middle of, between Watercolor and Seaside, that used to be for the Vanness Beach Walkover for the, you know, people to park to go to the beach. Well, we no longer have that beach access, and we're not having any paid parking going on there yet. I, I would like to sell that for the amount of money to buy the Alderberry property, sell the whole, the whole parking lot. That's one option. Another option, I think Melissa's not here, I don't know if Devon, if you have any ideas where that money could come from, but I think there might be a couple of different opportunities. I won't, I won't put you on the spot right now, I'll put you on the spot later. But I just want to see if we can move forward with that. This is truly, as I said before, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for District Four. We had an opportunity a while back, several years ago, to buy the golf garden, and unfortunately, we only got the back ten acres, and the front twenty-five acres are three hundred and twenty-something apartments being built, so...
I would ask, I certainly don't mind giving direction to staff to inquire, but I don't wanna tie the sale of a parking lot to the purchase of another.
Thank you, yeah, I don't either, I was just kinda throwing out some ideas, I appreciate that.
But I think there's other ways we could fund it.
How many, how many acres was it?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two acres, we wouldn't see monster homes on, right?
Right, right.
Direct away.
The possibility of putting, of building a marina is, is worth, is worth the effort.
Okay, would you please move forward with that? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'll try to be quick, I know it's late and we've been here a long time. Occupational license home permits, it's not a license. I found this on our website, it's on the county's website, and I've been talking about occupational licenses, or what they're called now as business tax receipt for a long time. I believe that since I've been talking about it, I think Paxton has gone forward with doing one, I know Freeport already does, Dufunyac Springs already does, and a few other places, but, and most everybody else in the whole state of Florida. But it says on our website that Walton County presently does not offer a business license or an occupational license, however, one may have wondered what to do if you wanted to work out of your home. A permit is required to work out of your home, and it's called a home occupation permit. A home occupation is a personal service business operated from a bona fide dwelling unit as a temporary accessory use subordinate and incidental to the dwelling, without change to the residential character of the home. It goes on to say... It goes on to say that, you know, minimal intensity not exceeding 25% of the gross floor area. And then it goes on to say, the proposed business cannot create additional traffic within the residential neighborhood, should not involve employees, and will not be allowed to change the residential nature of the structure or the appearance of the home or premise with visible evidence of home occupation. The reason that I'm bringing this up, and I do know this is on our website currently. I do know the information is not current, because the Florida statute has changed. However, I didn't know that we had a home permit. And so, in the south end, as I've said many, many times, we have a lot of businesses run out of homes. We have golf cart businesses galore on the south end. We have bicycle rentals. We have linen change. We have short-term rental people that take care of short-term rentals, so they bring all the junk from the short-term rental and leave it in the front yard there. And then when they, they get enough junk, then they have it picked up by somebody, or they try to get waste management to pick it up. Those are just some of the many, many things that go on, on a regular basis on the south end. And I'm glad to see that we have a permit, and I hope that we can enforce this permit. But we need to update some of the information on here, so that it will correlate with the Florida statute.
We'll start working on that, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Did you have anything?
I did, but if, if you're moving on, I'll, I'll let you be.
You're welcome to say something. No? Okay, never mind. Okay, it's getting late. Okay, all right. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we have a parking problem, as we all know. And in District Four, we have a terrible parking problem. And we had, on Driftwood, there's a lot that we bought probably 10 years ago, that we are just now getting ready to develop. And the problem is, we're closing it as of 2 June, which is right at the season. So all the people that have been parking on that dirt lot for years aren't going to have anywhere to park. And we have the Mead Park property that we purchased for a parking garage, but we haven't gotten to the point to build a parking garage yet. So my ask is, can we use that Mead property for people to park on there, even though it's not developed or anything like that? Can we use that for people to park so, because we don't have anywhere else for them to go? I mean, we're, we're on overload, and it'll be a danger to have them park on the streets and on the sidewalks and everywhere else they'll park. Because that parking lot that's on Driftwood holds at least, I want to say between 80 and 100 cars, I think, right now. And, and with it closing in just a couple of days, we've got to have somewhere for people to be able to park. So my ask is, can we use that Mead parking lot, parking, that Mead property that we bought for a parking lot, to allow people to park?
So it is, it is county-owned property. I would need to go out and look at it, or have public works staff go out and look at it. I'm sure there's probably some improvements that would need to be made to accommodate this request. But as a board, you can designate the property to, to be utilized however this board sees fit.
I, I do think we would, we would have to have some ADA work done on that property. Probably the best thing to do since it's purchased with TDC money is have Mr. Kellenberger bring us back a proposal, and, and conjunction with the administrator and public works.
Can we temporarily, until we get back with that, since this other one's going to be closing on the second, can we temporarily allow at least, part, part of, part of the issue is that one of the restaurants that ha, that has a parking area that we share with them, they have 11% of it, and the county has the rest of it. Well, when their, when their business opens up, the people are all using it to go to the beach, and they don't even have their 11%. So could we allow them to use that until?
Provided we can accommodate ADA, we absolutely can. We just need to make sure we're good with the Title II ADA requirements. Because when governments rent parking lots, we have to comply with ADA. So as long as we can do that, yes ma'am, we, that's not a problem.
And, and my only concern is safety issues and ADA. So if, if staff goes out there and looks at it and says, yes, it, it's going to be all right. I'd like Mr. Alford to be involved in that. I know you need another job, Brad.
Can we just give direction for that? And not, do we need a motion?
Yes, because they're going to have to bring us something back.
And, and I think, I think you're right. With that park closing till we, till we finish it, we need some places to park. But let's make sure it's safe and we're not going.
And we need to be legal.
Yeah. And we need to be legal.
Safe and legal.
So just direction right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone? Any, anyone in the public care to speak on any item? Okay, seeing one. Okay. And this is at the end? Yes. Public comment. Okay. State your name. Tabitha, Tabitha Howard. I live in Sandestin, and every, as everyone knows now, that I have very limited access to certain areas within Sandestin because of, well, I'm here. So a simple question, if tax dollars are used to bring in the PGA, the PGA thing, and also what, well, there's many events that happen in Sandestin that the TDC helps to sponsor. Curious if I would be allowed to attend. I do pay all my HOA dues and SOA dues. I have very limited access in Sandestin, so I was just curious if I would be allowed to attend with. That doesn't have anything to do with us, Tabitha? Well, no. It doesn't have anything to do with us. That's between you and Sandestin. But see, everything with Sandestin.
I don't think they decided on a golf course yet, from what they said.
Oh yeah, it could be Eagle Creek. Woo, that'd be awesome. Then everyone could go, oh.
But I'm, I'm intrigued by this scenario, because it kind of goes back to like the argument with beach restoration. Once public monies are used, then it defi, it statute looks at it differently. So if we're solely responsible for the funding for, for an activity that we pay for.
I'd like to know what activity that is. We don't fully pay for any activity. The TDC doesn't host events. They provide sponsorship dollars that are reimbursed marketing grants. So we're not funding an event. We are providing reimbursable marketing dollars. So, I mean, unfortunately.
Which is an S, I mean, that's what they're, they're, if we don't provide that funding, they're not going to.
No, they have already had to pay it. It's a reimbursement. They've already had to pay it. So they're choosing to apply for reimbursement, but no, they actually have to pay it without us. That's how all of our marketing sponsorships to the TDC work. Now, if there's an event that is a fully county-sponsored event, or that is but for the county's activity not happening, then yeah, there's a certain degree of public openness that's expected. Now, what are the terms and conditions of that? There can be a wide variety. And I think to Ms. Howard's point, if she is limited where she can go due to some issue between her and the SOA or otherwise.
It's not the SOA, it's Sandestin Investments. Tom Becknell, as a matter of fact.
So she has an issue with SDI?
It's Tom Becknell. I, that's what I hear.
Whomever it is, SDI, SOA, Becknell, whomever.
Sandestin Investments.
It's a civil dispute between her as an individual and them, in terms of if it is on private property. Yes, the in, the inclusion of government dollars can open up some aspects of private property, but it does not automatically turn all private property into fully public property.
Jason Daltrey that was here earlier with Sandestin's, I was hoping he would come up and speak. And this could have been addressed with him as well, since with the golfing thing happening there in Sandestin. Well, we, we need to determine where we're going to do it. If, first of all, if we're going to do it, and then where. Well, the Blue Marlins coming up on June the 18th through the 22nd. And see, last year I was there, and I was just standing outside, and that was the first body cam, you know. I was asked to leave by Tom Becknell. Actually, it's on the body cam, so I'm not saying anything. That's what the staff said, that it was directed by him. So I was just curious, because also Jason, you know, when I was at the beach, when I played that, and they wanted me to leave, but I was actually on my property. I didn't have to leave. And Jason made a point to let everyone know that I was banned from 172 properties. They all kind of laughed about it. And I don't know, just a lot of crazy stuff happening. So I was just wanting to know, because I live in Sandestin. And, you know, I measured, I'm 24 feet my back door is. See, I can't walk onto the golf course or to the bay anymore. And it's been about a year. And they discussed, everyone should just watch the body cam. But, oh, I didn't mean. But maybe we can figure that out and see if, you know, when tax dollar funds are used for certain events like that. And it's open to the public.
Tax dollars not fully take away their rights as a private organization. I believe this is a civil issue between you and SDI.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The meeting is adjourned.